Are we on? There we go. Hey, good afternoon. Welcome everyone to your city council meeting. It's May 27th, a little after 3 o'clock. We're going to go ahead and call ourselves to order. We appreciate everyone for attending here today. If you guys would rise and then remain standing after the invocation given by Ms. Margie Gonzalez, we'll do the pledges.
You can bow your heads and close your eyes if you'd like to. Lord, today we're so thankful that you woke us up this morning. Today I ask you to take your rightful place as Lord of Lords and King of Kings over this city council, over the city, over every home, over every church, everything that gets done in this city. Lord, take your place as the King of Kings. Lord, today I pray that your agenda would reign in this place, that your agenda would prevail over man's agenda. I pray, God, that you would remind us, Lord, that we're here because you allow us to be here. I pray that every leader would remember, Lord, that leadership is truly delegated from you, God. It comes from heaven, Lord, and I pray that we would be mindful of that. I pray that you would give every leader wisdom and discernment and integrity to do what is best according to your will, God. I bless their lives. I bless their homes as they are willing to serve us, Lord. And I pray, Lord, that you would just speak to them even at night as they sleep. God, would you open up their ears to hear your voice and would you cause their spirit to dream dreams, Lord, of you, Lord of revelation? Lord, I pray that you would help us as a city to function in unity because unity is what causes the blessing of heaven to be poured out upon a city. And Amarillo needs the blessing of heaven, God. And today you've heard my prayer and I know that you will answer, Lord, and I just pray that you would bless the proceedings again today in the name that is above every name, the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, ma'am. If you'll join me in the pledges, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And the Texas flag? Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Please be seated. All right, we do have a couple proclamations, so I've handed those off to the two gentlemen to my right. Counsel, if you guys will join me downstairs, we're going to go ahead and read those. Okay, anybody here for the motorcycle safety awareness? Y'all come on up. Okay. Whereas the city of Amarillo recognizes that motorcycle riding is a popular means of transportation and recreation for many residents, offering an economical and efficient means of travel that also contributes to the local economy. And whereas motorcycles are a common presence on Texas roadways throughout the year and the approach of summer marks a significant increase in both motorcycle travel and seasonal events that draw riders to our city and surrounding communities. And whereas motorcycle riders are much more vulnerable than automobile drivers with far less protection in the event of a crash and thus face significantly higher risk of injury or fatality. And whereas it is crucial that motorists and motorcyclists alike remain alert, avoid distractions, and share the road responsibly to ensure safety for all. And whereas organizations such as the Texas Department of Transportation, local motorcycle clubs, law enforcement agencies, and traffic safety advocates work diligently to promote awareness, rider education, proper licensing, and safe riding practices. And whereas practicing motorcycle safety is a shared responsibility and is essential to remind drivers to look twice and save a life. Now therefore, we mayor and city council members of the city of Amarillo, Texas do hereby proclaim the month of June 2025 is Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month.
First of all, we'd like to thank all of y'all for accepting the proclamation and putting it out for us. Allow us to have a month to bring the awareness of safety. Texas is in the top two in most dangerous states to ride a motorcycle. Some of the numbers are terrifying. We've since updated since the first year, update to May 20 of this year, we've had 574 fatalities in the state of Texas. That's 14.56 people killed per 10,000 registered motorcycle riders. And there's 450 registered, 450,000 registered motorcycle riders in the state of Texas. One of the biggest things that we run into being motorcycle riders is we have to ride looking at traffic. The reason the slogan came up, "Look Twice, Save a Life", because me personally, as a motorcycle rider, when I see that person looking for me, I'm trying to make sure I'm in a place that they can see me. Part of our job as motorcycle riders is to ride defensively. What we ask people driving in vehicles is take the time, get off the phones, watch what's going on. When you see riders riding in a group, usually it's for some type of run or fundraising event. Don't get in between them. Let them ride. There's, there's not enough room for a motorcycle and a car in the same lane. Motorcyclers pick one side or the other just for safety's sake. It gives us a way out. If we're stopping at a stoplight, a lot of times you'll see them pull over to one side. That's to try to keep from getting rear-ended. There's a whole lot of things that we do to try to protect ourselves and we're asking the public to help us protect ourselves and protect you because bikes are getting bigger and cars are getting smaller. Sorry about that. We really want to send a shout out to TexDOT. They came out, they're putting signs up to look twice, to save a life, share the road with motorcycles. It's extremely, extremely helpful having those big signs up because a lot of times people are driving, they start getting forgetful. A big sign lights up, that one time could save somebody's life. Some of the safety tips for drivers, look twice, check your blind spots before you change lanes, use your blinkers. Motorcycles look like they're not going very fast. When they're coming at you, people turn right in front of them. There's a lot of them don't even see us. Safe driving habits, put the phones down. Don't worry about John or what happened. Take the time, drive safe. And as far as motorcyclists, it's our job to do the same thing, be as safe as we can. Wear our safety equipment, leathers, stuff like that. The only other thing that I really want to bring out is it is so nice when we go around town and we do these rides and stuff and we see the people that are backing us. We raise money for everything, kids' events, Alzheimer's. We put runs on to raise money. And we all get out there, summertime, there's a lot more of us. So whatever you do, look out for us. One thing I can say, look twice, save a life. Thank y'all very much.
Julie, bring your gang up. Whereas Global Accessibility Awareness Day is observed each year to highlight the importance of digital access and inclusion for the more than 1 billion people worldwide living with disabilities. And whereas the city of Amarillo is committed to ensuring that all individuals, regardless of ability, have equitable access to information, technology, and services that support full participation in community life. And whereas technology continues to shape how we live, work, and connect, we recognize the need to remove digital barriers and promote accessible design in all public-facing platforms. And whereas by acknowledging Global Accessibility Awareness Day, Amarillo affirms its dedication to creating an inclusive, welcoming community that values accessibility as a core civic principle. Now therefore, we mayor and city council members of the city of Amarillo, Texas do hereby proclaim May 28th, 2025, as Global Accessibility Awareness Day in Amarillo and encourage residents, organizations, and businesses to support digital inclusion and accessibility for all.
Thank you for that. And we think the city of Amarillo, Sister Bear Foundation is a local nonprofit and we work with neurological injury and illness patients. As many of you know, we do not currently have a neurological rehabilitation center here in Amarillo. Our goal and our final aim is to make sure that that happens here because we believe that all of our friends, neighbors, and family should not have to go somewhere else for that neurological care. So in addition to the physical wellness that we work on and we're bringing that here, we also work in a lot of community advocacy roles and awareness. We are proud to say that one of our board members does sit on the city council's committee for the disability advocacy group. I have the honor of sitting on a state project, the Texas Disability Project, where we're working at state level of policies. So not only is Sister Bear working on physical wellness and bringing those pieces of rehab equipment here, we also include everything from mental health, community, therapeutic art. We have one of our therapy dogs up here with us today. We are looking at the holistic approach to the person, their caregivers, their family. And part of that includes, many of us from Sister Bear and our volunteers are working with our accessible parking enforcement through City Marshal's Office and we are very happy. Thank you for that. And the opportunity to help make sure that we are being inclusive and accessible for even the most vulnerable of our friends and neighbors in our community. So we are very grateful for this ability to spread this awareness. And next time that you see something, we actually have some really cool things that are coming up if you keep an eye on it because the city of Amarillo has stepped up and has created a task force that we've been able to be a part of. And they are very, very focused on making sure that not only do we have accessible parking, but that ramps and buildings and everything that we can do is accessible. You never know when it's going to be you or a family member that may need it, whether temporary or permanent disability. And when you've had that struggle, I see a lot of you nodding. You understand how that is a difficult thing. So we want to make sure that Amarillo is accessible and inclusive to everyone and we are grateful for you guys and your support as well as the city of Amarillo. Thank you, guys.
Okay. Thank you to everyone for letting us do that. Those proclamations are important. You know, we don't always get to say thank you to our City Marshal's Office and our City Marshal back there. And I know he's always on the receiving end of all of those emails because he, he does need to be the guy that enforces a lot of those nuisance issues. And so we all live in a much better city and we live around each other better as friends and neighbors when we have a strong city marshal. And so thank you to our Marshal's Office. This is one example of how he's working, very proactively. Sister Bear Foundation, Ms. Granger, and the rest of their team. So thank you, sir, for going that extra mile. Yeah. Okay, that takes us through 5A and 5B. Mr. City Manager, do I have any announcements today? Okay. We're going to move into public comment. And so would ask Ms. City Secretary if you'll read us into that.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for participating in today's city council meeting. Your input and your opinions are important to us and we're glad you're here to share them today. At each posted meeting, we invite our fellow community members to address city council regarding posted agenda items or topics related to city policy. Every speaker today will have three minutes to address the council. We ask that you stay within your three minutes allotted. When you come to the microphone today, please state your name and whether or not you live within the Amarillo city limits. If addressing council on an agenda item, please state your position so it may be reflected properly in the minutes. We do not have any public hearings scheduled today. Please remember, if you're speaking on an item that is not on today's agenda, council is limited in how they can interact with you on that item. They may respond with a statement of fact. They may ask that the topic be added to your future agenda or they may refer the matter to the city manager who can have staff step out and visit with you regarding your topic. So again, thank you for being here with us today. We're going to start momentarily with our first speaker, Beth Duke. And so as Beth makes her way up, let me get the timer up. And Beth, you may begin when you're ready.
Thank you, City Secretary. I'm Beth Duke with Center City of Amarillo and I came to share with you some great news from our second quarter report that I sent to the Texas Main Street and the National Main Street Organization. First, I want to thank everyone who was able to come out for the dedication of our Gateway Arches. That was a big collaboration between the city of Amarillo, the Center City Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone, all the city staff that worked on it, and Center City. And it's really a wonderful source of civic pride to me that now when people come into our downtown, they're going to see something beautiful and welcoming. Center City, you know, we have to raise a lot of our own support and we had our fourth quarter, we had our fourth Center City mural run back in March. We had 500 runners and we expect this to grow and grow. Only about 12 of them were doggies. The rest were people. The hoof print program, you've seen our quarter horses all around town. It's exciting. You know, this started in 2002 with 10 horses and now we have more than 120 and they've really become a symbol of Amarillo. I was happy to hear from the Sister Bear Foundation because the Polk Street streetscape, we only have about two half blocks to go. And this was part of a bond election passed in 2016 and we're almost there and it will make Polk Street, our beautiful main street, accessible from 2nd all the way to 10th. And I think it's just wonderful. So I want to tell you our wonderful reinvestment figures for the year, for the full calendar year of 2024. We had 85,783,937 noted reinvestment in your downtown. And before we had the tiers, it was almost flat. And it's exciting to me that, how far it's come. I couldn't be more proud of that. Now, happy news for anybody who has missed Donuts Downtown. At 15th and Washington, we have a new donut stop going in. It's called Got Donuts. So downtown will once again have donuts. So I think that's a happy, happy, good thing. Our downtown office space is filling up as well. We have about 350 Pan Texans now in the Happy State Bank Building plus about 50 employees from Gold Star Trust. And it's just exciting to me. I don't really have time for, for everything, but I want to tell you we had a partnership with Amtech on the design students who are working on designs for some of our historic buildings. And I also was very honored to be with First Lady Cecilia Abbott in Austin at the Real Places Convention. I'm on the Leadership Council for Texas Main Street and I was so honored because our representative Carolyn Fairley was there with us to, to catch that honor for our downtowns. Now, the best till last, I don't know, do I have 20 seconds? For straight year, we also received our national accreditation from the National Main Street. And this means that your downtown meets or exceeds all of the criteria to be a National Main Street city. And I know that's a lot, but I try to talk fast and not breathe. I'll breathe later. But I brought enough handouts for everyone because, you know, it's not really a meeting without handouts. If you have any questions about downtown, please let me know because if I don't know, you know I'll find out. So thanks again.
Ms. Beth, we always appreciate you. Thank you for all you do at Center City.
Next is Lavanda Mosley. And after Lavanda will be Dawn Collins.
Good afternoon. I'm Lavanda Mosley. I'm a taxpayer in the city of Amarillo and I'm here speaking on item 8L against the lease agreement with Tyler Street Resource Center. This is a 33,774 square foot building that the city will lease for one department, the Amarillo Community Development Department. I would have to ask, how many employees are in this department? How much square footage is needed for the city of Amarillo? Pratt has the value at $360,000 as of today for tax dollars and the city's going to pay, if my intel's right, about 4.1 million for a 10-year period on that building, which is $410,000 annually. Here's what I see. The city's going into philanthropically work. The city of Amarillo has and is partnering with the nonprofit Transformation Park and using tax dollars to fund this project. It is my understanding that the city cannot use tax dollars to support, improve, or assist on private property that is under the control of private or nonprofit ownership. If the city wants to lease the unoccupied space to Transformation Park, Transformation Park should pay their fair share in lease of the going rate of Amarillo commercial property. The city should not spend tax dollars on a nonprofit entity that may not even pay taxes to support individuals who do not, do not pay taxes in the city of Amarillo. As I understand it, the city moved individuals from private property last week to the nonprofit location of Transformation Park, which is again using tax dollars for private and nonprofit reasons. I'm going to ask the council to vote no to this lease. And if the vote is yes and passed, I'm sure the city attorney has confirmed that this will be a legal transaction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mosley. We'll pull item 8L so that we can further discuss that and vote on that individually.
Dawn Collins. And after Mr. Collins will be Barbara Cromer.
May I approach a bench? I realize that I don't have time to, but we'll be here already, so. Thank you.
Mayor and council, thanks for having me here today. My name is Dawn Collins. I'm president of Widows and Widow Service of Amarillo. We have 120 members. As the population of Amarillo continues to grow, the city continues to neglect the responsibility of every citizen equally. The senior demographic is among the largest demographics of the city with over 15% of the population qualifying as senior. The senior committee's needs are unique and is difficult, if not impossible, to be addressed by the Department of Park and Recreation. We, the senior citizens of Amarillo, propose the creation of Department of Senior Services with a budget independent of the Department of Park and Recreation with the purpose to address the needs of this community at the city and county level. A Department of Senior Services would identify, remedy, and maintain crucial areas of needing surrounding existing city facilities such as a civic center and the performing arts. For example, most facilities are desperate need of initial handrails as updating the interest accessibility. Currently, the city of Amarillo lacks far behind Texas cities of similar size and demographics who provide and fund and maintain a safe, accessible space to congregate for a specific purpose of simple socialization. A Department of Senior Service would demonstrate the city's commitment to its senior population. As the city continues to age, we need continuous to arise for a safe and affordable housing community. These allow seniors to continue to live independently. A Department of Senior Service would advocate through the city Department of Planning and Zoning for a mandatory medium number of senior units for any new multifamily housing development permits. Also, currently, the city of Amarillo lacks adequate transportation options for seniors. As noted before, As noted before, seniors are unique needs, trips to doctors, and other things. The current state of Amarillo Transit System is not set up to address these needs. Many stops do not have protection elements or are not convenient in all cases. The Department of Senior Services would provide the average component of the Amarillo City Transit System as well as explore other suitable public and private partners with companies that provide low-cost transportation called Viva. And this provides Uber lifts, which are cheaper, $2 to $3, services that are on demand as opposed to such ACT Connect as better equipped to address the often changing circumstances of the senior populations. We have taken care of the homeless. Now, it's time to take care of the seniors who have lived in Amarillo and paid taxes all their life. Thank you.
Barbara Cromer. And after Barbara will be Tim Benson.
Hello, my name is Barbara Cromer, and I'm actually representing the senior citizens of Amarillo, Texas. And as Dawn stated, I didn't know he was going to say that. But anyway, we have lived here longer. We have, we have lived here, we've bought homes here, we've paid taxes here, we've worked here, we vote here. And we have been neglected. And it is time that the city steps up and starts to help take care of us. And I am representing those people. And a lot of seniors, if you don't have a reason to get up and get ready and go somewhere, you keep your doors closed, you keep your curtains closed, you sit down, you watch TV, and you vegetate. And eventually, you end up in nursing homes, a lot of times, for many years. And that is much more expensive than doing something for us to keep us going while we still are. A lot of people nowadays, and especially seniors, don't even know their next-door neighbors anymore. You know, used to, you knew everybody. You walked in and out of each other's houses. It's not like that anymore. So we need a place, it is a necessity, that senior citizens have a place to congregate, to have activities, the, you know, and have nutritious meals. Most of us don't want to cook anymore, especially if you're single. And so we have potato chips and Little Debbie's and stuff like that instead of eating healthy. And I'll give an example, I use my husband and I as an example of what senior citizens need and what we do. My husband was pretty much a loner unless he was in a group, a small group. When we found out that at senior citizens, he could play pool six days a week, guess where he was six days a week? You can play pool without having to go to a bar where there's drinking and who knows what else. And we were able to go, two senior citizens together. I was, I belonged to four different clubs. He belonged to the pool club, period. And we went every day. You did your morning activities, whatever they were, including, you know, my different clubs. Then we would go eat lunch together in the eating area. And then we would go back and spend the rest of the afternoon going to, he, of course, was playing pool, I was doing other things. And then we could leave together. So you had a way to, to be somewhere, you socialized, you had friends. When he's in a small group, he was always the, the life of the party. He was witty, he, he just, and that, and unfortunately, he only lived for nine months after we joined senior citizens. But that was the best nine months of his life. And it, I still do activities that originated at senior citizens. But I can only do one because we don't have a multiple place of, place to go. So the bottom line is, we need to have funding for senior centers, senior activities. And we, you know, I'm involved in a lot of different groups trying to help raise funds, but it is very difficult to raise funds right now. And we need all the help we can get. And I don't know what my timeframe is, so it's probably extended. But I'm always there. You, I run into people every day, everywhere. And everybody asks me every day, what's happening with senior citizens? How, how close are we to having a place to go? And so I need you guys to help us and give me an answer to that. Thank you.
Tim Benson. And after Tim will be James Skank.
James, can you hear me? Okay. Hey, guys, I've been coming up here for probably 10 years plus to these meetings. This is the first time I've ever spoke. I want to get up here today because there's something on this agenda that hits home to me. Is we all need to put our differences aside. I'm here on speaking on behalf of the senior citizens. As we all get older, we've all had to deal with elderly parents. As we all know, the best way to keep elderly parents out of nursing homes is to keep them busy and active. But several years are back, but several years ago, our senior citizens lost their locations. Unless you can afford $8,000 to $10,000 a month to put your, put your parents in a nursing home, I believe this is the next best option for providing a place for them to stay active. So the problem I have is, we give $25 million a year to the EDC. We're going to end up giving $10 million to a homeless camp. We have found around $30 million that wasn't properly spent. We haven't given a dime to our seniors. It's time to start taking care of our senior citizens because we're all going to be there someday. I'm challenging every council member, if this comes up for a vote, to vote 5-0. Always remember, senior citizens are two words. They are seniors, and they're citizens who have paid taxes and paved the way for all of us. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Mr. Skank.
Yeah, thank you. James Skank in the city. Spelled my name right. I am. Is that good enough? Let's get down here. See what happens? When you get over here, you sort of get drowned it out. And you get right over here, and I could sing to you. Oh, wait a minute, you want me to do that? All good government begins at the local level. So does all bad government. And when we elect certain groups of representatives and things go haywire, we don't know which direction to go except to vote them out and move them on. One of the things that's gone on that happens with this group that I've really liked is they follow the money. And you do the budgeting, the hard budgeting, the part that goes, wow, why are we doing this? What, what does this actually do? We're in the early vote right now. And in a runoff. And voting, voting for Tom Sherlin is easy for me. And it's easy for most people that have followed him and watched him work. He's been doing the job every day, finding waste in government along with the rest of you. And it's easy to find that waste. And the top of that, doing something about it. The can has been kicked until this group showed up. Seeing that the basically hidden street funds, that was an amazing find, you know, because we had that money sitting there. And now we're getting back to work with it. And you can see it over time. A budget-minded approach is what Tom brings to the table of taxpayers' money. Pushing to increase police and fire, I know that's close to your heart. Development of what these folks are talking about, senior citizens. I know you're doing a lot of that on your own. You know, that's something that hasn't, council hasn't paid much money toward anything. And it's a, a thing that is questionable on some level how much taxpayers, all taxpayers should be involved in. Because there's some rich senior citizens out there that could really bone up and, and throw some money at helping you with your organization, Tom and Dawn. One thing in closing, Tom, you're a proven leader. I've watched you for at least a decade now. And, you know, it's amazing how you stepped into this role and started serving the citizens. I read on a social media where somebody that was for the, your opponent saying that, well, Tom should just be a customer service agent. And I thought, wait a minute, have you not been watching? He is. He's serving his customers. We're your customers. We're the citizens that you're using our money for. So, vote for Tom Sherlin.
Mayor, that concludes public comment.
Okay. I appreciate the public comment offered. As it is typical for this council, we appreciate those of you who attend and also watch online. We always like to offer an opportunity for anyone who hadn't signed up to raise their hand and speak. Do I have anyone here today that would like to offer a public comment? We'll start by Mr. Fisher here. Rev, we'll get to you right after Mike.
My name is Mike Fisher. I live in the city limits of Amarillo. Government deals for public safety are kind of like those safety scissors we used as kids. They don't cut anything, but they sure make you feel protected while wasting paper. The welfare of people in particular has always been the alibi of tyrants. And today, the city council is using public safety as the justification for signing a lease that will cost the taxpayers over $4 million to lease a building that it won't use, that it'll be a gift to someone else. This is the sequel to The Range. It's The Range Part Two. And it also has Laura Stor's name all over it. But this time, it literally will be on it. Her name and her husband's name are going to be on the building. I remember when Cole Stanley started his first term as mayor. And he said, the city needs to get out of the real estate business. Do you remember that? Have you lost your way? Because here we are today, watching the city become the landlord to another building while paying over $4 million for the privilege. In a lease with the Tyler Resource Center, we're going to pay $4 million bucks. We're going to lease it, and then we're not going to use it. And then we're going to let somebody else use it. And so there's no real benefit to the city or the taxpayers. We're going to say it's public safety because that's what the city manager's going to say. And that's what old McWilliams is going to come up with. Let's not pretend this is a gift in the form of a lease. It took you six months to figure it out. McWilliams, man, you're, six months. We're paying this attorney to finagle this gift in the form of a lease. It's a triple net lease requiring the city to pay for all related expenses. This will be like renting a house, letting the seller or the landlord of the house remain in the house, never moving into the house, but still paying the lease, the utilities, the taxes, the insurance, and even the maintenance. And at the end of the lease, you're left with a house that you probably paid twice as much for than you should have. And you never got to use it or benefit from because on this sublease deal, we're not going to make any money. Under Article III of the Texas Constitution, the city is prohibited from giving public funds to private entities. This lease appears to circumvent those laws by disguising a gift as a lease-to-own deal. If this lease were truly in the public's interest, it should have been put out to a competitive bidding. This isn't about public safety. It's about making a bad financial deal behind closed doors at the expense of the taxpayers. Thank you.
Mr. Fisher, as always, we appreciate you speaking here today. And we will address each and every one of those statements before we vote on that. We have the good Reverend in the back. If you'd come forward, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I'm Reverend Rupert Cecil Brashears Jr. And what I have to say, Mr. Mayor, is to you personally. First of all, I want to congratulate you on winning the mayorship again. And I want to prophesy to you, God is going to do for you exceedingly abundantly above all you ask or think because you're a good man. The Bible said, the steps of a good man are ordered by the Lord. And I want you to know, I appreciate everything that you're doing. You're not perfect, but you're a good man. God bless you.
Thank you, Reverend. Appreciate you. Ms. Cassie Green, I see your hand up if you'd join us at the mic.
Amen. So, and my name's Cassie Green. I'm an Amarillo citizen. And I would first of all like to hope that you guys all had a good Memorial Day weekend. And I would like to thank the service of Tim Reed and anyone else that I don't know who's been in the military, and especially Rich Gagnon, because, you know, thank you for your service. And also, I would like to say excellent job on the ordinance. It's really good, and it has teeth, really, really strong, sharp teeth. So I like it. And that being said, there are two spots, and if you guys, I don't know, like when y'all read it, that I wanted to address. It's Section 2, 2. And then also Section 2.6. But as far as Section 2.2, it says, um, can I read it or no? Am I not allowed? Okay. The city shall collect only the data necessary to deliver public services effectively and shall ensure that personal information is protected through clear, accessible privacy practices. Okay, so the word necessary seems ambiguous to me. If we could be more specific or just like do away with that, simply saying something like, the city will, upon the information collected, the data collected, the city will ensure that all personal information is protected, taking out that word necessary. Because I mean, who's to determine what's necessary? It's too general and ambiguous is what I think. And Section 2.6, also another word that's similar to, just, it's, it's not easily defined. Whenever possible. So if we could probably do away with that word, it says, whenever possible, the city shall maintain public accessible documentation of all digital systems and initiatives that interact with personal data. So just maybe scratch the word whenever possible. But that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cassie. I see Rich is taking notes over there. And I know he's been diligent on this, so we'll continue to get it. Yes, sir, if you don't mind coming forward and give us your name and if you live and reside within the city.
My name is Gerald Owens. I live at 501 West St. Francis. Been a member of the City of Amarillo for most of my life. Went to Pleasant Valley School, Horseman, served the North Side. You'll be receiving or already have received lots of information that we're trying to do on the North Side. But what I came to address is, for the last 20-plus years, I've not been able to receive a whole lot of assistance from the city at all. Over 70 years ago, or right at 70 years ago, y'all took us into the city. And at that time, we were supposed to have city water, city sewer, natural gas, all the other utilities. To this day, I still have no water, no sewer. I've gone to the city numerous times, built a new home there. I had to put in my own well, my own septic system, bought the four rental houses that belonged to my grandmother and my mother, and had to do the same thing because we have no city facilities. When I contacted the city about it, I've been told numerous times, we're not developing that area. And if I wanted to run a new sewer line down St. Francis Street to Dumars Expressway, I could pay $185,000 for it rather than my frontage foot. What I'm asking for the city is to look at us out there. Actually, look at us. If you go to the city, different people in the different plantings and what have you, and that's the same story they tell you every time. I was told that we would have new sewer, new water, natural gas when the road widened, when it came in, that the state of Texas would do it. We, of course, called on the state of Texas. We, of course, called on the state of Texas at one of our meetings there, and they told us, they said, "No. If it doesn't exist, we don't replace it." And they said, "You need to go back to the city." But like I said, every time I talk to the city, I get the same thing. "We're not developing that area." But I pay water drainage fees, I pay city taxes and everything else, but we don't have the benefits of it, and we need you guys to look at that and address it. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Do I have anyone else here who'd like to offer public comment today? Mr. Perez, if you'd come forward.
Just wanted to test out the microphone, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
No, actually, I wanted to, one, commend the 9E, the check register, being on the in here. Transparency is the biggest thing that we can have, given those that are serving, especially those that are serving, because you represent the folks to my right and left that manage the everyday workings of our city. Unfortunately, those that are voted in are the ones that get the brunt of the communication from the community for the actions of those guys to the right and left of me, men and women. I would be interested if, on that particular item, if there's a way to do a, to be more clarity on the, like a heat map, per se, the demographics of what is the city invested into, what locations, which areas are getting the most funding. Be very transparent on this. Where is all the money going? Just looking at the agenda item, everything is in Randall County. Well, most of it, shall I say, is in Randall County, all the parks, all those items. Of course, that's where we're going. That's where we're expanding. But unfortunately, as we see from Pleasant Valley, luckily being on the campaign trail, I've spent a lot of time on the Northern Side, and I don't see anything there. I don't even see maintaining of drainage ditches, not even maintaining. Of all things, maintenance of an annexed part of our city. And quite frankly, I think that's just wrong. You're taking money from citizens and not giving them anything back. Plain and simple. That's the way that... I just wish that most of y'all, I think most of y'all have seen that, most of y'all have heard that, I know that for a fact, as many times as we've talked, chatted a little bit here and there. And when it comes down to it, I look at is, this body here is holding those accountable to my right and left to ensure that all Amarillo citizens are treated equally and given what rightfully is theirs. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Yes, ma'am, if you want to come up. I saw you had your hand earlier, so...
Thank you. My name is Kathy Welch. I am a citizen of Amarillo. I've been a resident of Randall County for about 20-some-odd years and in Amarillo for five years. In all this time, I have been hearing that the senior citizens in our area are getting the short end of the stick. And those of you that know me, know me, that I edited that sentence. Likely, like others that have spoken out today, I am completely opposed to Item 8L. If the city really has $4 million to burn, then let's use it on our senior citizens, not on the homeless, most of which were shifting here from other cities. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have anyone else here today that would like to offer public comment? Yes, sir, Mr. Adair.
My name is John Adair, and several years back, I donated a piece of my land to be used by a nonprofit to help the homeless. And typically, I'm all in favor of helping the homeless, but we've kind of created a beast here. And when I say beast, it's a beast that is never, is going to continually be hungry. And the problem is Denver, Albuquerque, Oklahoma City, Dallas, Austin, everybody else has seen what we're doing. And what are their homeless getting? A free bus ticket to Amarillo. We've created a major beast here that is only going to grow, and Transformation Park is just continually going to ask for money, more, 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 every year. At some point, when are, when is it going to be enough? When have we, when are we going to give them enough taxpayer dollars? And when will they be able to sustain on their own? I think that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Do I have anyone else here who would like to offer public comment today? Okay, we're going to go ahead and move forward with the rest of our agenda. Thank you, guys, for everyone who spoke. We do have our consent agenda up next, and then we'll move into discussion. Counsel, do I have anything that you guys need to pull off for further discussion on the consent? No? Okay. I am going to pull Item 8L for that lease agreement, and then I'm also going to pull Item 8T. And so I have those two to pull, and then we consider a motion on the rest. I move to adopt the consent agenda, less 8L and 8T as presented. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes with a 5-0 vote. Item 8L, so that is a lease agreement and something that we can discuss fairly in-depth, really. And so it does go kind of to the core of, it is interesting, over the past four years of how I think the current can shift. Because four years ago, there was a lot of public comment and push of, you can't do nothing. You can't tell these people that they can't stand on the sidewalk, like it's not a crime to be poor. Do something, you know? And so Mr. Rittlesberger is doing something, a lot of somethings. And so, given that task and that vision, he researched and, you know, brought back a plan that looked like, you know, pallet or shelters, and it looks a lot like what Transformation Park represents here today. We had a philanthropic gift given at the time. We've got church, buy-in, nonprofits, community support. So now that we're doing it, I think that, you know, it is natural to continue to question, and I think we should, and I think we should always be in a position to improve what is that original idea. You know, for some, it almost sounds like you would like us to do nothing. I want you to understand how easy that would be from our side of the dais. "Oh, I don't deal with those emails anymore. I don't take those phone calls. Your business. I'm sorry, you can trespass them, but we have nowhere for them to go." Yeah, I get that you're moving your company here, and you don't like this, but, you know, there's nothing we can do. We've been told to stand down by the citizens. Crime, you know, when you allow for an element to kind of take root in a public space that goes without a willful hand of help that says, "Look, we really will try to help those that are willing to help themselves," then you allow for a criminal element to grow, and so you will see an increase in crime. You know, are we to tell our police officers, "Don't bother those guys over there because we've been told to do nothing?" So, in the aspect of do something and do nothing, somewhere in the middle of that is a good, logical, common sense answer. And so I would take you to the lease here, and I want to discuss it because I don't know that most of the public comment that I've heard is educated on what the lease is, what it represents, and how we're trying to spend your money. I also don't know that you guys are fully educated on the amount of monies that are being spent by the community itself. So, Mr. Path, I would ask, I mean, I think we knew this one was coming off, so how would you like to direct the conversation from here?
Sure, yes, I can start. I'm going to ask Jason Rittlesberger to join us as well, if you can come up, Jason. He can speak to more of the specifics behind what this operation will look like. But to talk to the lease itself, this is not to lease an existing building. This is to, this is, if we were to proceed with this, they would be building a new building across, I think, from the night facility right now. So, this would be leasing a to-be-built building. It'd be for 10 years. We would not make any payments until after the CEO has been issued, and so we would be inspecting the facility to our specifications, and then once that proves, we would then begin payments there. We would be leasing a portion of the building for community development offices. They currently office in the Sims Building. This would put them closer to that area, so it'd be a good thing for the community development. Also, then, the majority of the building would go to Transformation Park. We would be looking at doing a sublease to Transformation Park. The overall building cost, I think, is in the $10 million range, so we'd be paying about $4 million, which is going to go towards the Harrington Foundation's loan to the Tyler Resource Center for this construction. And so with that, Jason, if you want to come up and speak to more specifics about how the operation will work, I think we have some visitors here with us they can speak to from TRC as well, so...
I think it might help if you just asked me some questions, maybe I can kind of help clarify certain things.
Yeah, I'll get you going. So, let's talk about what we currently do, okay? So, there's two parts to this solution. I would like the community to engage on this in a day and a night. So, if you don't understand that you're trying to solve the whole problem, then you could easily focus on half of the problem. And so half of the problem is the day shelter, and the other half of the problem is the night shelter. And so this population that resides here, and we do see a transient community that comes in and through Amarillo, which our city marshals are helping to reach out to and to try to assist those people. If they have a need to go somewhere else, we make sure we help them get there. So, if you would address the day shelter, and, well, actually, let's start with the night shelter, kind of where we are right now, Transformation Park.
Okay. So, the night shelter is what everybody's seen in the news as far as what has been opened recently, where we have two different parts, where we have the safe space. That's a drop-in shelter where it's very low barrier, where folks can come in. It's, when I say low barrier, things like they can have a pet, they can have storage for lots of carts type thing. We can store carts. Also, they can come in and maybe they have a spouse that they want to stay with, that they can be there together, they're not separated. So, a lot of those low barriers, we'll have a, we have a metal detector, bag check system that goes through, so it's very safe to make sure there are no weapons, no alcohol, no drugs, those kinds of things. They have the ability to check those into their own locker, so that's kept outside of the facility. Once they come in, we've got lots of cameras and things like that to make sure that it's safe, as well as security staff. In that space, they'll work with case managers. Some of our coming-home staff actually spends time over there, working with those folks to then move them from street homelessness into, hopefully, into shelter at some point. So, that's where the next part comes in, the cabin community, where we have 45 cabins, individuals that are ready to move into those cabins, they're on a list, they work with our case managers, and then as those become available, we'll start moving them into the cabins. We again work with them, once they're in the cabins, to figure out what they need in order to move to permanent housing, whether that's a job, whether it's getting various programs that can help them as far as disability or whatever, make sure they have their IDs and all that kind of stuff, to then move them into permanent housing with assistance. So, that's the whole gamut of that night shelter is to go from complete homelessness all the way through to permanent housing. My department is very integral and part of that because we do provide coming-home services. So, we do outreach, we do housing navigation, help them find homes, and then we also provide case management once they're in home. So, it's a full deal where we want to make sure that they're successful all the way through. We don't want to just get them in a house and then them fail and be back out in two weeks. So, in cooperation with that, we want the day center. So, the day center was actually, the design very, from many years ago, we've been working on this for at least five years now. And so, the old Guyon Saunders Resource Center, which is also known as the Tyler Street Resource Center at 200 South Tyler, was originally built to be a resource center. It was not built to be a homeless day shelter. It was, it had multiple different resources that were there. Catholic charities was there, 211 was there, lots of different things that could serve people that are experiencing homelessness were housed in that building. The only places that homeless day center operations were, were in a small, one of the small waiting rooms. So, that was where they would go in a waiting room to go to the clinics and things like that. So, it wasn't built for, to be a day center, so... And it's now over 20-something years old now, so it's fallen apart, it's not, it's outlasted its ability. So, the Guyon Saunders Resource Center is a nonprofit. They have put together the plan to rebuild a new day center that's built for day shelter. And so they have, you know, come up with lots of fundraising in order to gain funding to do that. In the talks about doing that many years ago, we talked about it would make sense for community development to be a part of that. This is, this goes back several councils and city management, that it made sense for community development to be a part of that because we're very involved in what's going on. We want things to work nicely together, so we thought putting this together would be a good idea. So, that's been in the plans ever since we've had three or four different iterations of the design plan for the day center. We finally come up with the plan that we want so that it can work in concert with the night shelter, so that we'll have day center operations in the daytime. It's got places where we can have programs, classes. We've got healthcare that can come there, mental health services that can come there. They'll have office space in order to provide those things in that facility. In the night shelter, we don't have that space. It wasn't built for that. It was built to be a part of that, that whole system. So, the night shelter is for shelter to sleep. And so we'll also have a commercial kitchen in the day center. So, again, we'll have three meals that are going to be made and served in that day center. So, you can see that those two parts work together. So, altogether, that was the plan, is to put this whole system together. What happened is that the night shelter got funding first, broke ground, and it had a lot of momentum, and it's been built. The day center has run into this issue with the funding as far as the community development department to be a part of that, and so that's where this has come in, and it's been a little bit stalled before we could get this agreement going. So, the plan is that the Guyon Saunders Resource Center will build the new day center, and then once it's built, community development in the city will then lease for 10 years. After 10 years, our part is paid, and then it will be gifted back to the city. The entire facility will be given to the city, so then it'll be a $10 million plus asset for the city. Then we will then do the same thing we're doing with the night shelter, where we will lease to Transformation Park to perform the programs on top of that. So, they'll do all the programs in the facility. We're just there to make sure that it stays nice, that we've got a part in that, how this is operated. This is a City of Amarillo solution to homelessness. It's not just a nonprofit, it's not just the city. We had to come up with this idea years ago, to come up with something that would work. And this is, this is the plan we put together, and I think it's a good plan, and I think it's going to work. It's already showing a lot of promise at the night shelter. We've already, we've already taken, from our point in time count, we've already taken over 10% of our unsheltered homeless and got them into shelter already. So, as you can see, that's already doing a good thing.
So, if you could, tell me about community development. How are you funded?
So, community development, we are over 90%, closer to 95% to 99% grant-funded. Federal grants, state grants, local grants, and predominantly federal grants. So, we receive funding, we have the Housing Department, which is the HCV, Housing Choice Voucher Program. That's your, what folks have heard of, Section Eight Housing or HUD Housing. That is in my department, and it's only vouchers. We don't own property, we don't have public housing, but that's a big portion of what we get our funding from, and then we also get community development block grant funding. We are an entitlement community, so we receive over $2 million for CDBG and home grants. Those are grants that we can disseminate to nonprofits. We can give about 15% of that funding to nonprofits to do some of their, you know, programs. We also do, we've got a big park project that's coming up that we can help with park improvements, sidewalk improvements, various things like that. So, that's some of our funding, and then we also receive, like I say, local funding for various things. COC grant also, we receive more funding for that. It's, again, another federal grant, but that specifically goes towards helping folks experiencing homelessness, like outreach, assistance with housing, case management, things like that.
So, some of your, well, the federal funding that you get, you're in charge of and delegated the responsibility of distributing that into the community through nonprofit or philanthropic type entities?
Right. It's, and we actually serve in that capacity in a lot of those ways, because like the housing program, we are the agency that's disseminating it. Coming Home is basically a nonprofit that operates within my department. They receive a lot of the funding from the various sources to then perform those. the funding from the various sources to then perform those operations, like outreach, or navigation, or case management, things like that.
Right. And tell me, how many employees you currently have?
Roughly 45 is where I sit, 40 to 45, depending on if I'm fully staffed or not.
Where are those employees staffed?
They're all at the Sims Building right now.
Okay.
And we're on top of each other.
Are you in 3,000, 4,000 square feet over there, probably?
I wish I could tell you.
What's the square footage of, of the portion of the building that you're prepared to lease on the new facility? 7,000 feet, maybe?
I don't have, I don't have that number with me, but I know it's significantly larger. It's going to actually have twice as many offices that I have now. Right now, I have folks that are having to share, gosh, tiny spots, and my coming home team shares one large table, so they're all operating on laptops on their laps most of the time.
So, in marrying these two together, looking for balance here, I'd like to take our, our audience and those listening from the do-nothing side, which we literally would need then to reject the federal funding that comes to us as a municipality that is in charge of distribution. So that'd mean like your HUD housing and things like that. And then, not only would we need to do nothing there, we also need to do nothing, you know, in about 10 to 15 other programs that you're running, that all pay dividends. Now, we're going to pay for that on the other side, because for every action, there's a reaction, and so, if you are proactive on the front end, you may pay on the front side and realize a gain on the, on the back end of things. So, it does work the opposite. If we choose not to be proactive with this community, we will see more broken windows, and we will see the cost in some other areas of our society. Okay, so, we are trying to relocate 45 employees down to, is this Fifth and Bowie?
Correct.
Okay, so tell me, how much better can you perform your job if you are on that site? And what's the benefit of getting out of downtown and going to this area?
So, really, the benefit is putting us with the operations that are taking place there, that, that's, that's one of our big goals, is to take, again, folks all the way from homelessness into housing. That's the solution. It's not, you know, putting Band-Aids on it and having a shelter just for them to live in, and go back and forth. The solution is to get them all the way through the system into permanent housing, and so that's what I have to offer from there. Transformation Park is offering the emergency shelter as far as that safe space, then they're offering that transitional shelter as far as the cabins, and then it's the next part that's important, to then move them into permanent housing, and that's the part that my department is able to help with. If we have that right there together, it's going to work a lot smoother. We do it now, but it's, a lot of that is us sending folks over to where they're at. This is all brand new as far as that facility. It does work, and it can work, but we, like you say, we are outgrowing our place, we are on top of each other right now, so that, that has to be reconciled no matter what, the space issue. So, whether that's there or here in the city, New City Hall, we've got to have a new place.
So I want to, I want to let the council ask some questions as well, but I would like to get an answer from you. What do you say to people that tell you that you are creating a magnet, you're causing the problem? What we need to do is, we need to tell people, "No, get a job, we don't, we don't, we don't want you here, keep going." Like, what do you say to the people when you actually say, "You know, actually, not only is a good-hearted community of friends and neighbors, we should help people that are willing to help themselves, but we have the ability to." How are you not making the problem worse, sir?
So, my personal opinion is that we aren't making it worse, the problem is already there. Whatever traumas, whatever situations have created this for these folks, is already there. It's how we're able to respond to those, that, that's really the key to this, is just like you say, is it turn a blind eye and just hope that it's going to fix itself? Well, I've been, I'm over 50 years old, and it's not, certainly not gotten better in my old age now, so. My, my thing is that I feel like we've got to be compelled to try to do something. As a city, I think that that's part of our duties, is to do that, is to do something for the folks that are struggling. And, as far as, you know, us building something and everyone sending it over to us, that, that is the same thing I've heard from every place I've gone to visit, is that was the same thing that their citizens said to them. San Antonio, "We're going to build this Haven for Hope, now we've got this beautiful place, and now everybody from Amarillo is going to send everybody there." That's just not the truth. Do people come because they hear their services there, that they can get clean, and they can get into housing at some point? Well, I'm sure they would. We're talking, just like you said, transient folks that are moving all over the country all the time. They could be in California one day, in Florida the next day, they're that, they're that transient a lot of times. So, I think that it's incumbent upon us to do what we can for, for our humans that are, that are living in our city. I think that it's, I think that we're not, we're not doing the right things that we're expected to do if we just turn a blind eye to this. I've seen it in a lot of the cities where that's happening, where it's disgusting, it's stuff all over the streets, it's tents that are everywhere. We had this situation that got out of handover by the Resource Center recently. If you don't take care of those things, you don't have places to go to the restroom, you don't have places to throw away trash, it only gets worse. And, again, in my 24 years of policing, I've seen tent cities rise up within weeks, that have become outrageously unsafe. Whenever we talk about public safety, this is public safety. Those folks want to be safe, they want to live somewhere, they want to survive for the day. I want to help them figure out, how do they survive for the week? How do they then start looking for the future? The only way they can do that is to be in a safe, safe space, and that's what we've created.
Counsel, do you guys have a few questions for Mr. Riddlesberger? I've got, I want to tell kind of my side of it, of, you know, where I got involved over a year ago, but before we transition, any questions?
I've got just a couple, Mayor, if that's okay. On the night center, what is the range of capacity there? With, once all the services are up and operating, how many people on average could you serve? What would be the max number that you could serve on the night center?
Sure. So, on the cabins, we have 45 cabins, and some of those, depending on if they have a, you know, someone they want to live with, they can hold to, but if we just had singles in each one of them, that'd be 45. As far as the safe space, we've opened up the first 50, just to kind of get a feel for that. The staff is learning how to work with that number of people, so they're going to continue to increase that until they can kind of feel, "Hey, this might be our max, that we can, we can take." Originally, that, that safe space was built to be at least twice as big, but we had some issues with the land from BNSF Railroad that caused it to shrink, and so, we do, we have plans to build that larger in the future. So I'm hoping that we could get at least 100 in there, I'd love to see more, but I also want it, again, to be safe. I don't want to have people right on top of each other either, so.
And then what about the day center, once it completed? What would be the, kind of the capacity there to be able to serve people during the day?
Sure, and that's significantly larger, so we're looking at at least 150 to 200.
And then, just to be clear, because I think there was some confusion on this, the guy, the building that currently has Guyan Saunders Resource Center still on it, that's not the building that we're talking about?
No. Well, that building is, is currently already sold, it's been sold to another buyer a year or so ago, and they are just kindly allowing GSRC to continue to operate and have that day center in there until the new one is built. And so, once that's built, then their operations will move to the new building.
Okay. What is, what is generally the, and your, the services that you have, not just with what we're looking at here, but what are the age ranges, and is there a specific age range that you seem to serve more often?
As far as just my department, or the, for the homeless services?
Both.
So, as far as homeless services, I'll start with that first, is that it's typically your 40 to 60-year-old is your majority, but we're seeing a lot from the 60s and up, as far as the, a lot of older folks that are, that are utilizing a lot of our services. It's getting worse and worse, as rents are going higher and higher, then we're, our older folks are ending up out in the streets. In my department, we're seeing pretty much the same thing. We see a lot of families that are utilizing our HCV vouchers. We've had a lot of them on the program for a while, and that's, you know, we see that, once we open up our waitlist, we see that significantly show up real quick, once we open it. If we open it for, say, two weeks, I can see 1,500 people on the waitlist as soon as we open it up for that long.
And then you mentioned, we will be using, but your department will transfer over to that building and use that. I mean, we could have decided to stay where you are.
Yes.
What are, what are the advantages, I mean, how do you think you can become more effective, and what could become more effective by you being there? What does that enable to do or allow us to accomplish?
Sure. Well, number one, it's just, it's giving us more space than what we have now. That's, that's really one of the most important things, is that we're, we're on top of each other right now. But also, we're getting into the neighborhood where these services are being provided. This is more of a lower-income neighborhood, so that folks can come there, and they can, they can kind of be in their area, they're not having to go downtown. Also, folks that are living there, as far as the people that are living in the shelter, folks that are using the transit, it's real easy for them to use the buses from San Jacinto, from wherever they're living, that they can get to this, this location really easily, since it's right there at the transit center. So, those are, those are my opinions on why it's a good, a good partnership. I, I just, all of it just works really well together. We already do work well together, I just think it's just going to continue to thrive.
And then, so, and then the building that is ultimately being built is $10 million. The Guyan Saunders Resource Center is taking care of $6 million of that, $10 million loan in total, and then the city will come in with the 4 million, so. And at the end, the city owns the building, correct?
Correct.
So, there's a $10 million building that the city will own, which, which our cost will be about 4 million on that $10 million building.
Correct.
Good, good. And then one other thing, I mean, the mayor's talked a lot about, and I think it's worth noting, you know, crime and those types of things, the people that you dealt with in police, you know, we had nowhere to take them, and they were out there doing that. Kind of focus me on the other end. Being more effective in dealing with this community, what does that enable us to achieve, you know, when people are now coming out of this, because we've got a better program aligned?
So, yeah, I've been, honestly, I wish everybody could see what I've seen in the success stories, and it's, that's, that's the, really the key to it, is that, you know, we're going to have good and bad in everything that we have. Always, people always say it's folks that are homeless that are out there doing all the drugs. Well, I was a cop for a long time, and drugs are being done all over the place. They're not just being done out in the streets, they're being done in a lot of homes. And so, there are bad people that are doing bad things all over the place, but there are darn good people out there that have had some kind of a trauma, something that has hit them hard, that has caused them to be homeless. And sometimes it's just they can't get that leg up in order to move to the next step. They're not safe, they're only worrying about what's happening today. They may be, they may have an addiction, they may have something that's keeping them to where all they're doing is, "Today, I got to survive today." We want to get them that safety, so that they do feel safe, they can move forward, and recognize that there is a tomorrow, there is a future. I've seen those people, I've brought people up here to show you and introduce you to people that are the success stories, and that they've, now, today, they're working with us in this city right here, we're going to talk about prep here in the, in the next few weeks. But it's, those are success stories, those are real people, they're not just people that are slough aways just because they don't, they don't have the, the great things that you've had in your life, they've had hard things to overcome. And so, these kinds of programs help them to attain that. And I think that, speaking on those people's behalfs, they appreciate the fact that somebody's doing something, somebody's throwing out even a thin line to help them get out of what they're, they're in. It's, I wish I could do more, I wish I was, I win the lottery, and I could do all of this by myself, and just, just take care of it. But I have to do it this way, and this is the way that I think most citizens agree, that we've got to do something, and that they want to help people get out of this. Even if we have one or two people that are successful in getting out of this, and they're good, responsible citizens, and that they're getting married, they're having kids, and they're have a great job, it's worth it. It's worth it for us to do that.
Thank you.
Counsel, do we have any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Jason, is there any way that you can tell what percent are not Amarillo citizens?
So, so we've heard that a lot, so that's one of the things that we do ask when we do the point in time count, or I've even gone out and we've done surveys ourselves. Pretty much every time we do it, and with respect to the citizen, City of Amarillo, I always ask them, "Are you from our area?" It's, it's a, "Are you from the Texas Panhandle?" And it's literally over 75% that answer that they are within the Panhandle. So, meaning, folks that are from Pampa, Perryton, you know, all those different places around, that this is the hub where they come, because they don't have a lot of resources, they don't have shelters in those places, so they end up coming here. So, we do have some transient folks that come through, but whenever I find out someone's from Chicago, and I say, "Well, okay, you're from Chicago, how long have you lived in Amarillo?" "I've been here for 14 years." So, just because they're from somewhere else doesn't necessarily mean that they're not an Amarillo resident at that point, so.
Yeah, and I ask that, I had the pleasure back in 89 and 90, and I know our homeless population has increased dramatically. We were both young in law enforcement back then, but I had the privileges spending two whole days looking for a fugitive. And I learned an awful lot about the homeless population here during that time. And a majority were from, from this area, but the smallest amount, and I called them, when I made my report, they were called pass-through homeless. And they traveled with maps, they knew towns to hit at certain times during the year, that were the best for them to be, because of climate.
Sure.
And a lot of times, other things were resources, but those weren't the majority. And I just, I just wanted to know over, over this time period, whether or not we've seen an increase from that, and apparently, those, those numbers stayed pretty, relatively the same.
Yes, I would agree with that.
Thanks, Jason.
A lot, a lot of the problems is that, you know, folks tell a story that they've heard from such and such, from such and such, that there's a bus coming here from Albuquerque and dumping off 70 people. We always check into those things when we hear those rumors, and I've never heard of anything where they've dropped off a significant number of people from another city. Cities don't do that to each other, because we can then turn around and do it to the other one. So, that's, that's not a common practice, where cities are doing that to each other. Now, on the opposite of that, you've got your smaller towns that are going to help people get to resources, and I don't have a problem with that. If someone from Claude is unhoused and they need help, then of course, Amarillo is probably the best place for them to be.
Hey, Jason, just to reiterate, so, again, and I know you said this with Mayor, but to clarify, what percentage of the services that you provide, that you're, are paid for with taxpayer dollars? What percentage?
It's probably less than 2%.
Less than 2%?
Yes.
So not taxpayer dollars?
No.
Not, okay, great. That's what I needed. Thank you.
I'm, so, go right ahead, sir.
Do you have the results of your pit count?
Yes, sir.
Could you go over that with us real quick?
Yes, I can give you the, the general numbers on it, that we had 641 total, so all of them, the sheltered and unsheltered together, it was split right in half. 320 were in the shelters, 321 were unsheltered. So those are folks living on the streets, in cars, various things like that. It also doesn't count folks that night say they saved up enough money, or got enough money to stay in a hotel, those don't count, we don't even count those. So, whenever I was actually out there doing this one this year, and I ran into a lot of them, that we weren't even able to count, because of situations like that. So I purposely, I'm sorry, I personally think that the number is significantly higher. I remember, we're also not catching a lot of folks that are sleeping in their cars, so even though it was 640, it's probably at least 700 or more.
How many people, when you did the pit count, would decline your services?
That would decline services?
Yes.
You know, some. If I had to put a percentage on it, I would say probably 20%.
What is the capacity of Transformation Park?
The outdoor shelter?
Both.
You know, I'd love to, I'd love to talk with our fire marshal to see what their, their opinion is on it, but my, my personal opinion is that we could get 200 in the total facility.
Okay, so we're looking at possibly 200?
Yes.
In Transformation Park?
Right.
But we're saying there's 600 left out?
So remember, and those are, a lot of those are, half of those are sheltered, so it's about 320 that you're thinking of with the unsheltered. So, it's the 200 of the 320, so there's still another 100-plus that are not able to be sheltered there. Now, the good thing about Amarillo is that we have Salvation Army, and we have Faith City, so we still have beds that are available, and they're not full all the time. So, we've, we've just got to work with those folks to, hey, even though this isn't an option, but maybe this one is. So a lot of that's just going to be compassionate enforcement from our officers, from the city marshals, to get them to use the resources that we have.
Are we actually taking homeless people off the streets now?
Yes.
And moving them to Transformation Park?
Yes, we just did this, I think it was last week.
I saw the one on the newscast, but I'm, I'm talking about the, basically, the individuals throughout the community.
Right. So, right now, we've, we've capped it at 50, so that they can kind of get their feet underneath them. Remember, this is the first time they've run a shelter, anything like this. So, that staff is learning how to do that with a smaller number, so that they can ramp that up and add more, as they've got things figured out. I was there this weekend, just kind of seeing, and it's, it's a lot. It's a, it's a challenging program to run, and I appreciate that they've done this in a calculated manner, not just opened up the door for 300 or 400 people to come through there, and then it's just going to be a mess.
Thank you, Jason.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. So I'm excited that Mr. Fisher brought this up originally on the, the public comment, we had other comments. It goes hand in hand with the transparency that's needed on the check registry. So if we post an adequate check registry, we're gonna see community development spending roughly two percent of your taxpayer dollars that are property and sales tax on this, and getting ninety-eight percent of those monies into the community. Now, I don't know that that'll be fully out there for us to see because of the way the grants are handled, and how you do vouchers and all that, and privacy and whatnot. We definitely don't want to give Rich another job. But it, to the greatest extent of our ability, here's what's going on right now, Fisher. You weren't properly noticed on this agenda. And, and it's not that it wasn't a proper legal notice, it's, it meets all the legal criteria. But we didn't help our staff very much in the way in which this notice talked very specifically to a lease agreement, gave a name. I guess you probably would have had to have read the full lease to see the address, maybe you didn't see the address, that it was a different location. It didn't specifically mention like a memorandum of understanding, you know, where it would have spoken to a new construction facility that's twenty-one thousand square feet, and that, you know, community development will relocate forty-five employees and, and house roughly seventy-eight hundred square feet of it. That we're paying X dollars per square foot, and that this memorandum of understanding would then complete with a gift from this entity to the city for a long-term asset, that if we do this properly for the next ten years, we'll have that asset, and we will have done what I think is one of the, the most difficult things you're gonna deal with in a community, which is to combat homelessness. It's like, it's like mental illness. You're never gonna solve the problem of mental illness, you're never gonna solve the problem of, of, you know, animal overpopulation, you're never gonna solve the problem of homelessness. Now, we could argue philosophically, does government have a role in any of that, or should I just take care of asphalt and concrete issues? Maybe. But like, that's not what we're being directed to do from our state. That's not what we're being directed to do from our federal government, otherwise, they wouldn't send us the money. And so in the caution that we have in exercising that we do appropriate our fiduciary responsibilities and making sure those monies get spent rightly, that's our job to you, the citizens. So can we do a better job than we have for decades? Yes. How do we do that? We think creatively like this. We, we create a day shelter and a night shelter, and we realize that we as government aren't real good at this. Like, if we're the ones running it, then it's gonna be about half the, the productivity of if we have our nonprofits and our faith base and our community volunteers there, that already are doing this work, but that we come alongside them, not in front of them, but how do we come alongside them? Well, that costs money. And so to the tune of four million dollars over ten years, so four hundred thousand dollars a year for us to lease this space. Am I, you know, supporting, or are we supporting one entity over another? Well, I mean, you could argue that. But, but I have an entity here that, that we're able to support by putting our staff down there right next to them. And so I believe we can justify the lease expense pretty easily. And I think that it puts us closer to the problem. And so if any of you guys have ever worked with either a homeless population, or incarcerated individuals, halfway houses, substance abuse, trauma, anything like that, you tell me if you can affect that problem from, you know, a, a distance. It's always the proximity, it's always the consistency, it's always the eye-to-eye contact that actually makes the biggest difference. So I want to say a few things here. One, I wish we had put an MOU in here. It's not too late, though. We're out here and we're having a good public conversation in front of all you guys. So an MOU, a memorandum of understanding that further outlines what we're doing here, I think is very helpful. We can easily attach that to this. Counsel can give direction if we're comfortable. Staff could go ahead and put this together, black and white, who knows, ten years from now, maybe we've forgotten exactly what we said we would and wouldn't do for each other. And if we look at just a lease, we don't necessarily have everything in writing that we could have. So I think, Mr. Fisher, if you had been able to read that and see that, it probably still would have ended up getting pulled off. I think you would have still questioned it, you know, and that's your strength, and, and you're, you're making us better out here in public. And so I don't fault you on that at all. Mr. Path, if, if you want to redirect that MOU, you could, but I think that's a direction that, that counsel would see as a benefit for community development moving forward.
Yeah, two, two things, real quick for clarification, just so no one walks away with a misunderstanding. The, the funding for this is not coming from grant funds, this is actually from the general fund. So
Correct.
I want to make sure that's, that's clear. Instead, the federal government, to our understanding, does not fund these type of programs. So this is a, an additional part that, that we're looking at funding. So, and secondly, if we can provide, if you can give us more guidance on what to put in the, MOUs are meant between two parties. So I think, are you talking more like a, like a statement of, of stance, I guess, or what we're looking at, what the purpose of this is?
Sure. We, we are saying a lot of things here. The, the lease speaks to some things that are technical, and how much, you know, are we, so here's a good example. I had one citizen say, well, you're, you're gonna start paying rent on day one, and they're not even, they're, they're not even gonna complete construction for ten months. Well, no, actually, the lease speaks to that. It's upon the issuance of the, the certificate of occupancy. So once the CO is issued, then, then we can start paying for this. But you, you had to read into that to know that, right? So that lease is speaking to that. What, what isn't getting spoken to as directly as I think we could, is probably the arrangement that we, we have of community development, housing, you know, the staff in there, leaving the Sims Building, and maybe you don't need that type of information in there, but I'll leave that up to staff. But talking about the, the GSRC, what their intentions are ten years from now, you know, that it is gifted to the city as an asset, the, you know, being able to put a paragraph in there to the, the staff's recommendations on this, why it's beneficial to this unhoused community for them to be closer to them. And then I would say, really, it's, it's probably more so in the, lessen the money that's being spent, because that's in your community development budget, and we'll make sure that you're funded when we go through budget cycle this next season. But it's more so, I think, the understanding that our citizens need to have at a very, you know, layman's level.
Yeah. I think a few things we could do there. One, I think, Ms. Riddlesberger's done an excellent job today of laying all that out for us. So we could, we could either add this all to the minutes, or we can have, we can have a separate document that Mr. Riddlesberger can put together with, with, with management to spell this all out, and a separate document. I wouldn't, I wouldn't put that in the lease necessarily, the lease is a, is a lease document, but we could have that for our own records attached to this meeting for future reference.
Okay. And I don't, I'm not saying that it needs to be attached to the lease.
Yes.
I, I think the lease is a standalone document, and I think it, it services its purpose. What, what I'm saying is, I think if, if we were able to walk this back, you know, on Thursday, when we would have put the agenda together, maybe we would have been able to put, you know, a brief synopsis of how we got here and what the purpose of this was.
Yeah, I think we can put together some kind of memo on, on this very thing, to kind of summarize the, the history, the reason, the intent, the purpose, why this has come together, and have that in our, in our files, records, available for the public upon request.
If I missed this meeting, and all I was reading was Facebook, what I heard was that the city now is spending four hundred thousand dollars a year to pay somebody rent on a private building that we're not gonna occupy, and it's only worth three hundred and fifty grand. Well, that's nothing near the, the truth of what we've done here, right? It was assumed or, or understood that way based on a cursory review of, of what we, we put on an agenda. Now, we have a much more in-depth discussion here. However, staff wants to summarize that and put it together, I have confidence you guys can do that, and that'll help us in the future.
May I?
Yes. So, just so I'm clear, we're doing this kind of just as a historical perspective, right? Because I don't want, if we put something in this that becomes restrictive down the line, five, ten years, things change, the sustainability, how you looked at the, the program is gonna change. So we're just doing it from a historical perspective, right? Yeah, so I, I would tell you that this, this MOU, if we call it that, or, or this, this memo.
Just a memo, yeah.
Needs to describe more specifically the intention of both parties, and how we're walking this out for a lease. Right now, the lease doesn't necessarily speak to these monies being paid towards a debt issuance that this, you know, entity is taking out of its own. So we, the city, are not taking on debt. But this lease is, is paying, and, and Brian, you correct me if I'm, if I'm wading in the weeds here. But this lease is paying for a rental agreement over the next ten years that puts us inside of this building, because that's where we're gonna be the most effective. Now, if there was a default, then we wouldn't have any place to, to be housed there, and we would, we would go a different direction. So I'm not saying that we couldn't worst-case scenario this thing, and something changed. But the intentions need to be further described, I think, for our public to understand what it is we're trying to accomplish. Anything else from counsel? Okay. And Mr. Riddlesberger, thank you for, for that. Ma'am, I saw you raised your hand. So here's what I'm gonna tell you. Usually, when we do discussion like this for the council, if I allow any citizen to speak, I have to allow everyone. And, and sometimes it's not the most helpful moving forward. So thank you for being willing to offer a comment. And if you would like to, I'm, I'm glad to visit with you maybe at the break. Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, do you need anything else on item eight L?
I moved to adopt resolution number zero five dash two seven dash two five dash two as presented.
Second? Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item eight T. So I pulled this one off. So do, do we, would we like Mr. Kishuba to speak to this one, Grayson, or would you rather this go to facilities?
I, I think depending on the questions, this is a park and recreation project, so he can speak to, to what's being done, and facilities can speak to some other aspects as well.
Yeah. So let, let me start, and then we'll see, you know, maybe which way you want to direct this. Counsel, item eight T. Flip to that if you would. Okay, consider award construction of parking lots at the city of Amarillo Parks, right? Item considers award, and it says down here Sourcewell. And then below that, it lists the parks. So this is basically what I looked at on Thursday. And, and so when Grayson and I were working together to, to put the agenda together, I asked a couple of questions on this one. Is this the funding that council has approved? Yes. So council came together and said, we want Parks and Rec to continue on capital improvements, let's put monies in their budget on an annualized basis that allows them to go and borrow money, so that becomes a debt service, and let's go and improve and make a, a big impact in all of our Parks and Rec. And you're seeing that all across the city, and, and I think that that department is doing well. This three point four million dollars is included in that. So I have no problem with how these monies are being spent, that they're going to Parks and Rec, or that they're even ready at this time. What I was confronted with is, I actually thought one of the contractors in town was looking at another project, the municipal court building, and that they didn't get noticed, and they didn't note a bid on it. And so specifically, what I want to talk about on item eight T is the, the Sourcewell project. And I also see Mr. Reynosa here, and so Jerry and I have known each other for a, a good long time. I greatly respect him and, and his company. He does quality work for the city, and, and he's a huge asset. So I, I don't have any issues with which direction this money's going and, and who it goes to. We appreciate all of our contractors, but being a fellow contractor, I understand how difficult it can be on you having to bid on work, and maybe you didn't get a full set of prints, or, you know, maybe you had to negotiate it, and then the fairness in procurement. And so one thing that I had engaged with Mr. Path on was, you know, what is Sourcewell, and how does this work? And so my concern here is, is in pulling this off, I, I need more information on it before I can vote for it. And if it's not ready, I mean, I'm, I'm great if there's not a sense of urgency to bring it back when it is ready. And so the scope of work, for whatever reason, the, the plans that were emailed to me, they won't open. There's just nothing when I open them. And so there's no plans attached to the attachment. Then I am able to get the PDFs that show the overlay on the parks of the, of the future parking lots. So I, I almost want to either talk about like what this project is and, and the construction scope, or just talk about procurement and limit it to procurement. And did we properly advertise this? Because some of the, the complaint that, that I've received is, is that they didn't know anything about it, and, and I don't know, I don't know enough about Sourcewell to know how that's advertised.
Sure. So a couple, we can take a couple of directions there. Yes, we could have Michael Kishuba and probably Facilities talk about the project itself. And then Facilities can also speak to about cooperative purchasing. I sent you, I sent you some information about cooperative purchasing on, on, on what state law calls for that. So it is a perfectly legal, we follow all the laws with using cooperative purchasing, using Sourcewell. We have buy boards, Sourcewell, text buy, DIR, there's a number of assets we use there, and that's one of the, that's one of the allowable uses, allowable what means and methods of doing public procurement. So I'll have Michael and Jerry come up, I guess, and speak to about, about the project itself. And I apologize, you weren't able to open those plans, that was, it was a big, it was a big document, and so.
Yeah, and it could be mine, I don't know. But, you know, I understand that the plans are, are either in design or, or already designed. So let's just go with, if you don't mind to just describe maybe what we're doing, is this your presentation?
Yes, yes, sir, it's mine.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah. Michael Kishuba, Director of Parks and Rec for the city of Amarillo. Just wanted to touch on this briefly. Obviously, we've presented this in the past to council for debt consideration. One of the things that we've been looking at, and what we've seen, is with a lot of our youth sports, we're, we're running into traffic issues and parking issues specifically. Last year, it kind of came to the forefront where specifically in the fall, we were, cars were being towed, tickets were being written because of some of the traffic violations that were occurring at the site. This is something that we've kind of seen is an increase in sports, and I think with the improvement to the turf quality that we've seen at both Rick Klein, and also that we're working at at John Stiff, I think we're gonna continue to see parking issues. It's not uncommon to go over to John Stiff on a weekend and just, I mean, the, the traffic, the parking is an absolute challenge. So when we had brought this previously to council, there was three projects that we had really identified. John Stiff North, that really serves those north fields, the three fields that we've recently fenced and started to renovate. It also serves that cricket pitch up there, and also serves potentially special events. The south field would really serve those south areas along, I believe it's fifty-fourth. And we'll, we'll talk on it here in a second. And then the other one is Rick Klein South. So when we do events at Rick Klein, it's not uncommon for us to have a baseball tournament, a cross-country run, and a whole bunch of soccer going on at the same time. So right now, we've got parking, that's a dirt parking lot on the south side. If it rains like it has the last couple of days, that becomes very unusable, and it also poses a lot of accessibility issues for people that want to use that space. So the three projects come in at three point four seven. When we look at it, so this is kind of a, a rough layout of the north parking lot, so you can see up there, just in that undeveloped area south of the fire station. Those three fields that are shown on the map there, they have been fenced, so it doesn't show up on, on this graphic, though. The goal, and you can kind of see the access that ties onto Chippewa. The reason we did that is, we've also built recently a, an ADA parking lot on the north side. That was something that was identified by park patrons, that users, that we did not have enough ADA spaces to actively support those fields. So we built that ADA parking lot on the north side, it has twelve ADA spots, van accessible, and that serves kind of that, that area. The area that, you can see kind of on the bottom is a picture looking south, so that is the undeveloped area that we're looking to put that parking lot in. Currently, it's just a field, but it's, it's south of the fire station. That parking lot, we estimate, there is about two hundred and ten spaces plus or minus. And again, you can see kind of the approximate cost at the top. John Stiff South, this would be a parking lot that would be over to the west of those fields. Again, those, you can see that parking lot that currently serves those facilities, it's just not adequate when we have larger events. So we're proposing building that parking lot in the undeveloped. Part of the reason we're doing it in the undeveloped is number one, it's easier from a construction standpoint, but number two, it also doesn't damage the infrastructure that's currently in the park, irrigation, trees, things like that. So you can see kind of a, a view of that. Again, it's just a big open field at this point. One of the things we have been working on, like we did with the ADA parking lot, is we're already working to make that connection to this new parking lot. So you can see there on the south, on the bottom of the page, there's a, a new sidewalk, ADA sidewalk that will connect to that. They actually just poured that concrete today. So if you go out there, there's So if you go out there, there's actually fresh concrete. I believe that's, is about 170 spots. And then the, the largest project is the Rick Klein complex and it comes in at about 1.8. Again, that is a large parking lot, 450-plus parking spaces. Right now, again, that's an undeveloped spot, so it's basically a dirt parking lot. You can see the picture on the right, that's this morning, how much rain we've got. And so it really poses a lot of challenges when we've got multiple events that need to use that space. Primarily, baseball and softball have used that parking lot in between. There is some parking on the north side for soccer, but it's not enough. So a lot of the soccer users, football users will start parking on that south side. So we've seen a significant need. We've been working as quickly as we can to move these projects forward. We'd be happy to answer any questions from our side.
So that's very helpful. So in my discussions on Friday, I, I think I understood that we had existing parking lot and this was some parking lot repairs, but th, this doesn't seem to be any repair. This is all new construction? Okay. So some of our conversation, I think on Friday afternoon, had to do with a sense of urgency or the ability to get this through Sourcewell versus going through typical procurement. So Mr. Danforth, if you can tell me, you know, like our, what's the status of the plans? Are they, are they fully completed? And then, you know, why, what is the advan, the advantage of Sourcewell versus like just putting this up for a, a regular notice bid on bonfire, let's say?
Well, typically, Mayor, the way this works is when you do come to us with a sense of urgency, that this needs to move quickly, utilizing a Sourcewell contract or any of the state-controlled purchasing contracts allows us to save not only weeks, but in many cases, months. We did have a complete set of plans. Michael and his crew had, had developed these plans, talked to us about it, asked us to give them some input on it. We gave them some input on the plans as far as the design went. Do this type of construction to increase the longevity, so we're, we're going to have something that's sustainable, that's going to be there for a while. We had looked at multiple options. I know he had looked at multiple options on the, especially as it refers to Rick Klein. What could we do there that would work? As you can see, the drainage across there, there's some challenges. Going in there and putting gravel parking or, or refurbished asphalt or anything like that was really not an option. It wa, it was going to sink into the ground in, after the first rainstorm. Part of the problem that Michael's got is the problem you created when you did all these lighting projects. Now these fields are actually usable to a large degree for longer periods of time and it actually drawn people to the parks at a greater rate than what they were in the past. Rick Klein in particular has been substantial with regards to that. So when Michael approached us, really the best talking to us and to purchasing as well, what can we do to get this going as quickly as we can? Because he really doesn't have an off-season that is conducive to construction. In other words, asphalt plants in Amarillo shut down in December and January. You just, good luck getting asphalt. So the work needed to start as quickly as possible. So what can we do to get the work going as quickly as possible? Well, one of the options that's available to all municipalities in the state of Texas is a, we, a generic term is a by-board contractor, state-approved contractor. State-approved contractor, basically what they have to do, Sourcewell, by-board, text buy, all of them, I think there's like five or six that we can utilize. They have to abide by state-controlled pricing. So in other words, the cost per square foot or the cost per square yard, that's controlled by the state. They're approved by state legislature and they're also audited by the state purchasing agents to make sure that they stay in compliance on that pricing. So what that gives us the ability to do is to reach out to the contractors that we know or on those contracts. Currently, we know of four and you have approved these contracts in the past. Obviously, the police department, that's on a text buy contract, the remodel of the fourth and fifth floor. That's a text buy contract. The lighting on, on the sports fields was actually a by-board contract. So we've taken advantage of those in the past and, and in talking to Michael and his group going, well, how quickly can we get started? Well, when we were about, I would say about 70% through the design process, that allowed us to reach out to the ones that are the contract providers here in town and say, all right, with that being the case, who has the capacity, who has the ability, and who has the skill sets to do these kind of jobs? At this point in time, in, in the communications, talking to Tri, Tri-State, they were ready and prepared to start moving on this right away. So they actually started putting pricing together at 75% of the design. That allowed them to get to the point to where they stayed within the state-regulated pricing and gave us the ability to get this guaranteed maximum price on these three lots to move quickly forward. When we do guaranteed maximum pricing, and, and Mayor, you understand this, a guaranteed maximum price, when we look at that, if we get into this and we see that there's some values or maybe we can get a better price than the state price is, that gives us the opportunity to have a conversation with that contractor and go, can we bring this price down a little bit in this area and see how it affects the whole thing? Typically, you don't see a whole lot of variance, but occasionally we do. In other words, state-controlled pricing is the average pricing for a product across the entire state of Texas. So you're looking at concrete, we can put concrete down in Amarillo cheaper than you can put it down in Houston. But the average is, our average is pulled into that, so you get a medium price that's controlled by the state. So that, basically, does that answer your question with regards to Sourcewell?
Yeah, we're getting there. I, I think I need a little more education, so let's, let's go to the scope of the project real quick. How long to do this project?
We've got the, the advantage of combining the three of them together, and you can appreciate this as well. We're doing a lot of dirt work, a lot of heavy equipment. The advantage is, in particular, for, for John Stiff, having that heavy equipment, moving from the north lot to the south lot or vice versa, I don't have to pay mobilization fees. I have some value that I pick up in that, in that process.
Right.
And so if I can phase that, I can move quicker through the projects. And I'll let, if you want, we can have Mr. Reynosa come up and go through some of that, the way that they put that together. But that basically was the, the value that we saw in combining the three, that we could move equipment from one job to the next. The same with the paving equipment, you could go from one job to the next. You don't mobilize, demobilize, you don't pay those additional costs.
I, I will just utilize some of my own experiential knowledge here, like could be a 12-month project to get all three of them done. I, I don't think it'll be 18 months, but it's probably not six.
Yeah.
So, so let's just say it's 12 months, you've got a year, and then, you know, if plans are ready right now, then, then you could let them out, you know, on a bid. You could do a typical procurement. Would that be a 30-day turnaround?
No, typically, what you're looking for is we have to hit a time to advertise in the newspaper. That has to go for two weeks. And then after that, it's typically four to six weeks, depending on the complexity of the project. Then after that, it goes into the bid openings and the review. Typically, we do a best value bid or, and take a look at that, so that takes another two weeks on top of that. Then you award and then you come to council. So it's, it's not, it's not a four-week process. Typically, it's an eight-week process.
How, how long ago did you get the preliminary bid? How many, how long have the plans been finished?
Actually, we had a meeting with Parks, Michael, it was three weeks ago, looking at the plans at 75%.
Okay. So, so we've, we may have had a month there that if we had just put them out, we, we could have saved ourselves that month. But by trying to go through Sourcewell, and I understand the legal component in there of you're, you're fulfilling your legal obligations of noticing the public for public monies and public projects through Sourcewell. How, how many bids did you take on Sourcewell or how many contractors are on that?
Right now, we go off of what we're aware of here in town and, like I said, we've got four contractors that we're aware of. The contractors have to make us aware of it. We don't go out and hunt them. So if they, if they make us aware that they're on a contract purchase, all they have to do is notify purchasing saying, hey, we're, we're this type of supplier. We can bring an advantage to you as the city. Then we, we typically reach out to those, those individuals to bid projects.
Okay, I don't, I'm not following you on that, on kind of who we're aware of. So like, I guess more specifically, how many contractors did you reach out to?
On this project, we reached out to Tri-State because we knew what, the other, the other three contractors are currently working on city projects.
Okay.
So we knew what their workloads were.
Okay.
Tri-State had just finished up Transformation Park, so we knew they had some availability.
So even though we have like a guaranteed price that's approved by the state, we don't really know that this 3.4 million is, is the best bid, right? We, I mean, we didn't take any other bids, right? And I appreciate that we've got a good working relationship with Tri-State and want to keep that. And I also know in, in the urgency. Now, for me personally, I, I don't feel like the direction from council was we've got to have this thing done in six months and we want to blow through, you know, our typical procurement procedures. We, we want three parking lots done ASAP. I don't believe that was the direction that I remember. Now, maybe staff took it that way, but in the, in the look back, I'm only three weeks difference right now. And, and if you're saying that, you know, to go through a, a procurement process in order for us to make sure we, we, you know, we have covered all of our bases, that, that the monies are adequate, and I don't know anything about Sourcewell. So I don't know if it's like exactimate, where, you know, they give you a price per square foot or per yard and you just kind of agree to that and then, you know, you do your own takeoff. I mean, I also don't know on designs, but with all that, is there an urgency on a 12-month project? I mean, we're going through seasons already, so, so Mr. Kishuba, argue for your, your point there. I mean, I, I don't have a season starting in September that I'm going to be in front of.
So to that point, Mayor, I think that the challenge that we've run into is we've heard very clearly from a lot of our users about the parking issues. Obviously, we heard about the ADA issues and that's why we used, utilized our concrete contract to go ahead and put that north parking lot in the ADA one. So we're, if we hear a, a demand or a need from the community, we're working as quickly as we can to expedite that project. Now, the, the challenge is, and I'll, I'll go to John Stiff South, because of all the issues we ran into last year, we're actually working with one of our user groups right now to try to space them out in the park to try to avoid some of those issues. So instead of it being more convenient for the group and for the parents and having them all in one location, we're actually having to spread them out all through the park to try to alleviate some of these parking issues. Now, again, this is spring and spring is a little bit lighter than our fall. When we get to our fall season, now we've got football going and soccer going as well. So I think our biggest concern is come fall, that's when a lot of our user groups are much more active. Spring is obviously active, but fall is our much more active time when you've got multiple user groups trying to use those spaces. So in the fall, we want to have the luxury of spreading them to the north side because we'll have football up there. So we'll have to concentrate them on the south side of the fields. So that's where we start running into the issues with parking, congestion, things like that. And that's kind of why we were trying to expedite this project as much as possible.
And in addition too, this is also being paid by bond funds as well, so we're trying to be cognizant of our, of our bond timelines with that too. And I'll just say generally, as a city manager, I've worked for council for 12 years, I've, I've never known there not to be haste from a council. And so I think there's always the expectation that cities work faster, work, work, get things done quicker, so, so I think that, that's, that's the assumption we always work under. I think from my observation, that was a direction kind of provided by council was to move quickly. And so if we misunderstood, we apologize, but I think that's always been our, our understanding is we should move quickly on projects.
Well, I definitely appreciate efficiency and I think, you know, we're just looking at the education on Sourcewell and why we didn't, you know, maybe go out for a competitive bid. Yes, sir?
I don't see the emergency of getting this done right away. I think we need to get back to getting procurement quotes like we should. It looks to me like we're doing an end run to get something done quick. I believe every contractor in Amarillo should have the availability to quote on this project. Getting one quote is not acceptable to me at all. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you, yes, sir.
I'll make a point, and I don't know if you guys have not, but I've gotten complaints about the parking, which I've taken up with Kishuba. People get pretty frustrated about not having parking. As far as, and I'll take it from my business, every contractor does have the ability to be on this Sourcewell, because we have a similar thing in, in insurance with preferred body shops, right? So if it takes it to them, it's quicker, it's easier, that kind of deal. We don't have to get bids, we don't have to do that. They work on a set price. It's very similar. So every body shop has the ability to be on our program, they just choose not to be. So, so even though there may be four that we know of, every contractor has the ability to be on there if they meet certain standards. Is that correct?
Yes, as a matter of fact, we reached out to several contractors in the city to ask them to get on this, to help us perform at a better pace. There was a lot of contractors and actually, Mr. Reynosa was one of the ones that I reached out to and say, man, if you would get on this, this would help you and it would help us control the pricing, which is always the goal, to control the pricing that we're getting for materials. And he was one of the few that actually got on, on the program. Now, he selected Sourcewell, he could have been with by-board, he could have been with any of the other co-ops.
Right.
We, we use them all, obviously, because you've approved them in the past, but.
Well, I would say in, in the contracting world, I mean, I know this very much, time is money. So, I mean, I don't know when it's not. I don't know when time is not money. And, you know, and I have no idea, I'm not a contractor on this deal for asphalt, I have no idea what this price is that we got versus what it could be. I have no idea. But I do know that if it, if it goes quickly, one, we're addressing the citizens' needs, right, that they've complained about, that we're how far ahead that we are on this in the design phase, that we can go ahead and do that. If these, if these resources are available to staff, I don't understand why we're, I, I guess I'm lost in this communication of, of why we're even having this conversation? So I'm just kind of lost. Now, to your point, Tom, of like, can we get a better deal? I don't know, maybe. Like if that's your like, hey.
I mean, that's, that's my thought is, when you go to one contractor and you ask this one contractor to give me a bid and he says, yeah, I can do that.
Yeah.
I would rather have, you got four, let's get the other three or let's put it out for a bid for everybody.
For clarification, it's, it's not, it's not the, he didn't give us the bid. This was a already set price by, so it's already been procured.
Okay.
And so, so, so the contractors, either, either they can meet the price or they don't get the job.
But what you're, you're dealing with is a government-set price. Do you trust the government to give you the price? I don't. I mean, who wants the government to control pricing? That's a bad deal wherever you go to.
Well, apparently, Texas Legislature does, because they, they put up these systems.
Does that make a brat?
But they don't set the price. It's no different than, again, I'm going to use it, it's my industry. We don't set the price, they do. The contractors set the price. It's what, what can they do to make a profit and still be, you know, still be able to do business? Because the contractors wouldn't get involved. And if it was super fat, every contractor would be involved, like I want that government deal. Like it's, it's way overpriced, right? So there's a check and balance to that, to say, there's some ability to get it done quickly, but you can't overcharge us because no one's going to do it.
For clarification too, the, the state didn't set the price. I mean, this was procured. This was a procurement process that Sourcewell did and that sets the price. And so that, the state's saying, you've procured it, this is the price. And so if I'm speaking wrong, Jerry, please correct me, but that's, it went through a full procurement process statewide, so Jerry, is that correct?
That is correct. They, they do look at the pricing for those contracts performed within the state of Texas. So it's the contractors truly setting the price. It's not, it's not an individual or the government. They're taking these bids of all of these informations, all of, off of all the contractors in the state of Texas that report their bids and they're looking at, all right, this is the price for this scope of work, similar to what Don's saying on the automotive side. It should cost this amount of money to replace that front fender on that car. That's what I'm going to pay. We actually go into that scenario and, and Mr. Sherland, to address your concerns, we absolutely go into that because we take a look at, and, and I'm sure Mr. Reynosa will come up here and tell you, when he submits that price to us, he knows that facilities will be looking at that cost to see if it's in compliance with, with what we normally pay here in Amarillo. If it's not, we're definitely having a conversation.
Let me, let me get Mr. Reed in here real quick. Casman?
So, we didn't use this to avoid the bid process.
No.
Because in the, in the cooperatives, there is efficiencies built into the system, right? I know when I was on the Canyon School Board and we were looking at buying buses, we went through a cooperative and it saved us about $6,000 a bus, as if we went out.
That's correct. And we use the cooperatives on our fleets as well.
And so it's just, it's a, it's a financial tool that we have in our toolbox to allow to allow us to do projects, uh, more efficiently, in some instances, not all of them, but in some instances. And this is one that you decided fit that, that criteria.
Yes, when, when Michael and I had the conversation and he brought it to facilities, it was like, Jerry, we've got to address this, we've got a bond. I'm getting citizens that are getting ticketed and towed. We've got to move quick on this. And so that's, when, when you make that statement to me, when you say, I've got to go quick, the only way to go quick is to use a contract purchase. If you don't, and we go through the bid process, that takes some time. Like I said, Tri-State was involved when we were at 75% design. So we were able to get them started. We didn't even have to wait to 100% design. We could get them started and giving us some input. And actually, uh, they did bring some things to the table that showed us some cost savings. And so we took advantage of all of that in combining the three projects together.
And there is an expense to us having, I mean, we've been trying to lean our department by quite a bit. So purchasing has become a leaner department under Mr. Lindley. I think he's here today with us as well. Um, so if, if, I know you're not talking about doing way of cooperative purchasing, I'm not saying that, but the more, the, the more we go away from that, the more I may have to start adding staff or delaying things unreasonably. And so to where you may say haste is an issue. And so, so we've been trying to become leaner by using these tools, which the state under section, under chapter 271 of local government code has given us access to for better efficiency. This is the closest I can almost get to act like a private sector business is by using this option available to us.
Right, and, and we do see the benefit of it. It's not that we're against, um, you know, Byboard or anything like that. And I think if we're buying, um, you know, 100, um, light poles, then I think it definitely, uh, suits to go out on Byboard and buy all, buy all 100 and you can get a value and you can compare that and, and you don't have to go through that typical procurement. Um, as a, as a fellow contractor, I do see the need to properly advertise projects that require a general contractor. So like, you've got a lot of different things here, um, you know, in designs and scope of work. And so, um, Mr. Renosa can speak if you'd like to, but I'm not necessarily asking you to. Uh, I know you didn't come prepared. But for me, I, I like, uh, competitive bidding, um, on behalf of our taxpayers. One, it shows that we are taking our time, doing our due diligence and going through the process to make sure we're getting the best bid. And, and Tri-State may still have the very best bid and they may get awarded this project. The, the urgency for me, I think if we had a deadline we were trying to meet, um, uh, that, that's great. Um, we, we have a 12-month project that could turn into a 14-month project with, you know, rain and snow or, or any kind of delay. And so for us to have another six weeks to turn this out to an RFP, RFQ, whatever we would go for, um, and then come back, and then I still don't understand the Sourcewell not to exceed. I, I haven't seen a contract. I've, I've asked for scope of work, let me see the bid, let me have things. That way I'm comfortable knowing I can at least tell my constituents, no, I looked at it and, and that's, that's what it should cost. I don't have any of that, so it always makes me a little bit more skeptical of the process. I'm only, I'm not questioning the people involved at all. I'm not even questioning the prices because this may be, uh, a good value. But the process here for me, it was on the agenda. I don't know when you knew it was a Sourcewell project, but I think you and I might have figured this out around the same time. And so like, I would have been better to have known that was the direction staff was moving with it. Uh, because I put my trust in the process. When I get my agenda, I know, okay, well, this wasn't the, the budget, we funded it. So that's what I want to know. And two, it went out for bid and these guys got the bid. And if I want to look at how many bidders and who was the low bidder and what did they score and rate, then it allows me to trust that process. When we've not done that, then you're asking me to trust Sourcewell. And I, still currently, right now, I don't know how that functions. I mean, can I sign up on Sourcewell and you guys will contact me, uh, to get a job and I can help you value engineer and everything is a not to exceed? Or am I giving you a number and did Tri-State actually give us a number? And so if they did, like, where's that number coming from and how did Sourcewell audit that, right? I mean, I still, I just haven't, haven't gotten any greater education here today. I can't walk out of here and tell you I understand any more than I did when I sat down.
I would offer that I do feel this is an administrative matter. And so I think this is one thing that I think you've hired myself as manager and my staff to work through. And you have given the guidance on, on, you wish for a park, for parking lots to be done. You've given us guidance on, on a, on, uh, we're going to pursue funding via bond. And so I do feel that given the state statutes have given us, uh, options of bidding, uh, proposals, major risk, uh, design build, cooperative purchasing. I think you then tasked us through our purchasing department to, to carry out, uh, the most efficient way of accomplishing this. And so, um, I guess I would think I would need, if we were to move away from this, I think I'd need some guidance on which matters would be cooperative, which would not. Um, I think I'd need some guidance on that, so we can meet your request better. Because one thing, we also, we want to make sure that our contractors know that, that if we're bringing a proposal to you for award, that, that it's, it's, it's going to go through. And so if, if, if we have issues where, where, where there's question on what the work we do upfront, whether it's through bidding or cooperative purchasing, that it may not get past the council, we, we need to provide some assurances to our contractors through that process. I just think I'd need some guidance from the council.
Well, let me address that real quick and then Councilman Sherlin. That's not how this process works. So like, I, I don't ever want to convey to our contractors that if you've gotten on the agenda, that you can have some assurity that it's going to go through and that the council's going to support it. Uh, I have definitely learned over the last four years, I make no guarantees until we are out here and the council votes, because I'm just one vote. And, uh, that goes for P and Z and everything else. I mean, we have so many people that come in here with their agenda item, not knowing that council wouldn't have a question and, and vote it down. And so as a contractor, we assume that risk. Until you get that contract signed and it gets through this body, you, you don't have that project. Um, and, and I like that, that's good business. And I, I want to keep that good working relationship with, with all of our contractors. And I don't mean any disrespect to the process, but, um, I, I can't abdicate my authority or, or this body over to staff because we gave you a vision. It, it is a handoff back and forth, back and forth, and that's what they appreciate. And so, um, yes, I think I should always be asking for more, uh, more supporting documents and data and that, that's what I've been asking for. And I apologize that I can't open the plans and maybe that would have helped. But, um, Councilman Sherlin, you had a remark.
I would make a motion that we table this item and bring, bring it up next time when we have a little bit more information. Uh, how, how many times have we used this to bid? Have we used it before?
We use cooperative purchasing probably 75% of the time. We, we use cooperative purchasing most, most of the time, yes, about, I mean, I get, I mean, I hate to say it.
So we, we really don't know for getting the best price, we're just going what the state says?
Once again, it's a procured price.
Okay. Uh, I would continue with that motion to table this item.
Well, I think we need to have more discussion. Because I think there's a misunderstanding that, that when, when these are set up, I mean, we five did not put these processes in place or these procedures, right? Maybe there's some heartburn with that of like, well, hey, we didn't do this. That's put in their lap. They, I mean, they've been doing this for, for a long time. Uh, just because we don't understand it, I guess I'm still having trouble with that or apprehensive. This is done all the time. We did it with the lighting. I know that we did that lighting, to your point, like, when if we can buy 100 light posts and we can do it. You know, it makes sense. Um, but these, these prices are, are set such that it is competitive. Like it's, that's just the way it is. In fact, it may be leaner than what if, than if we put it out to bid. And, and I get what you're saying is, well, but we don't know that. Well, we don't always have the time. Everybody complains about government, government being slow, like we can never get anything done, we can never get anything done. This is a way to do it a little bit streamlined. Every contractor has the ability to be a part of this. If they choose not to be, then they miss out when our staff chooses to go this route. But they can get on it the next time. Like, they've got to meet certain criteria and it's good criteria. It's, they've got to be rated a certain way, they've got to do things a certain way. They get, so it's, it's the better contractors that are in there. Now, I don't say that, say that the ones that aren't in there aren't good. I'm saying, but you have to meet certain standards. You know this in building. There are certain builders that you would choose because they do quality work, certain ones you won't, or subs. Very much the same way. So to put a halt on this, I guess, just doesn't make any sense to me because we don't necessarily understand the way this works. We've been doing it for years. We've been doing it for the two years that I've been up here. And so I just, I guess I just don't understand why the question now.
Right, and, and I, I know we have a motion, uh, that's out and, and, uh, I, I would like to, to ask if Mr. Renosa would like to speak to it because it could have action that, that, you know, I don't want him to not have an opportunity to speak um, before, you know, we see if that motion gets a second.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Well, I mean, who is he?
Tri-State.
Okay. The numbers are out there for public now, so I do have a problem with that. We, we responded to Jerry's office very quickly, two to three weeks. And, uh, to get on these contracts, it is not an easy task. The resources that it takes to get on these, uh, Sourcewell Byboards takes a lot of time and to maintain those contracts. So it's, uh, it's something that we just don't throw a number together and throw it at you.
So a couple of things you can educate me on, and I appreciate you, uh, being candid and coming forward. You bid this, so these are your numbers?
We put them together through our Sourcewell process, yes.
Okay, so that is once again, not necessarily like the education I'm looking for. So you, you performed a takeoff?
Sure.
Okay, you, you used your subcontractors, you took sub bids.
Correct.
You formulated your own bid and you turned that in?
Yes.
Okay. And so what does that mean that it goes through Sourcewell?
Well, we, we have, there's a manual with all the line items. It's a 4,000-page, uh, document that captures every construction line item you can imagine. So once we give that, uh, not to exceed amount number to Jerry's office, we do not exceed that. We, we'll make it work to that, to the required numbers from the manuals.
And are those, are those per units?
Yeah.
So Sourcewell has a value per unit?
Yes, for asphalt by the square yard, cubic yards. Uh, hourly rates, it's, it's massive, yes.
So you took that, um, and you went and you entered in all of those units? And so you formulated that with their, with their numbers?
We can provide that for you.
Okay, so I want to make sure I'm real clear and I understand. So you performing your estimate with your numbers is proprietary? And I feel like if that was presented here to me here today, I don't know that I would, um, be comfortable with your number advertised where we may not approve it and we would want to put it back up for bid. That's not what I've been educated on. What I've been educated on and still understanding with you here, these are public numbers that are given by the state. So this, this isn't your, this isn't a Tri-State number. So how you arrived at that number should be the scope of work, which was given on the plans. So it'd just be a per square foot takeoff or a square yard. So help me differentiate, do you feel as a contractor that though this bid is proprietary? Or, or do you understand that this is a Sourcewell bid and you just happen to be the contractor that we reached out to?
Well, I mean, we, we do this numerous times, Mr. Mayor, and, and, uh, this is the process we've always done for, for many years, so...
And I, I'm struggling just because on, um, on this particular one, uh, I, I have a motion to table and if we second it and we table this for two weeks, what I could get is all of that data that you, you now have public, right? And I could see that, I could understand it, and then we can put this back out. We could also verify that we've got other contractors that can get on this and, and, and it's all fair for everybody. So does this, does this do anything in a negative way, you know, for you for a two-week delay?
I prefer it not to be, because I mean, I know we jumped on it quickly because Jerry's office pushed us to get it out quickly, so we, we responded quickly.
My question is...
That's part of the process of, of being in these programs, we can respond quickly.
My question is, if we do postpone, if you say, you know, if there's a second, we vote to table it, what's the outcome? I mean, you, do, do we learn more and decide not to use it? Well, I mean, we've just burned a bridge with a local contractor. It's like, I'm never doing that. Y'all burned me. Or do we learn more and say, we've got a comfort level and yeah, let's do it? So I mean, I guess I look at, you know, what, what are our options here? I mean, if, if you want to table it, uh, I'm, I don't want to. But if we, if we table it, what are the outcomes? Do we pull it?
Can, can I give you some additional information that's relative actually to this meeting? You just approved the municipal court job to redo that parking lot?
Mm-hmm.
That was a competitive bid. We didn't do Sourcewell on that. Tri-State was the low bidder on that project.
Yeah.
Doing the same exact takeoffs, doing the same, everything that we've asked him to do on these three lots, he did on that one and ends up being the low bidder and gets the job.
And, and so once again, uh, I'm looking at an agenda where I see, uh, a good contractor. You know, Tri-State's being awarded, no problem with that, they perform every time. Uh, is it funded? Yes, it's funded through this source. Okay, so I mean, I move forward. Why do we have Sourcewell and, uh, you know, bonfire on the same, uh, type project, you know?
To answer your question, Mayor, it truly was the conversation between Michael and myself and him telling me, I've got citizens getting ticketed, I've got citizens getting towed, council wants to get this done, it's a bond project, how quick can we go? And the, and the answer to that is the quickest option that we have available to us as a city staff is to use this contract purchase.
So I, I do want to ask one final question and then, um, move on the motion. Um, can I have the takeoff and the, and the, the bid sheet? Can I see what, what has been turned in?
Typically, you know, I don't, until you've approved it, I don't share that. After you approve it, I do, but it's, it's up to Mr. Renosa if he wants to share that information.
After the approval, sure, yeah. We've always done it that way.
Okay. Um, and then it's a not to exceed? So it is a cost plus? So how do we arrive at that number?
It's, it's not a cost plus. Now, we'll take a look at the numbers as far as the line items that he's got bid and see what that competitive price is here in this market. And as Jerry, like I said, can verify, there's been more than one occasion that I've come in and said, Jerry, I, I can get concrete cheaper than that. And Jerry's been able to, to address those issues.
And so am I.
So by, I mean, it, this is same as Byboard, text by, which I know y'all have awarded multiple, multiple construction contracts to other contractors, the same process where it was just a single contractor going through the process, same way we do. We, we, they, like, uh, Mr. Tip said, that everyone has that availability to get on these programs and these, and these contracts. They're not easy to get on, they're very difficult, very, very time-consuming. So, uh, the three or four that are here or the, in the city of Amarillo that, uh, participate, that's their choice, the others choose not to.
Sure, I understand. Well, um, I appreciate you being willing to speak to it. Um, you know, I, I, I am asking for additional documentation. So, um, I am going to second the motion to table this for two weeks. And then I would like for council to have all of the additional documentation that they can. Um, do we have any further discussion on this item?
Well, Mayor, I, I would just say there's two issues here. There's this, this issue we approved today and then there's the bigger issue of trying, and to me, they're two separate issues. Um, I, I have no problem go ahead and, and authorizing this. I think, you know, we have a local businessman who in good faith negotiated with us. I think we had staff that felt like, uh, you know, they were following the instruction and maybe they misheard something, but they were wanting to get something done quickly. You know, at the end of the day, I don't know, to me is, but, but to me, it's two separate issues. Uh, we had a gentleman, again, a businessman who worked with us all the way up to this point. I think we owe it to him to go ahead and pass this, we need it, there's no question about that. And then let's address the issue overall. Uh, if, if, you know, education as well as, you know, is there any guidance we need to give staff on this? Or do we feel like that? So, uh, I, I would prefer to go ahead and take action to approve this today. And, uh, and then, and then the separate issue would be, yes, looking through this whole process so we can become more educated on what's the best way to do it. And at the end of the day, it's what's best for the taxpayers and the, and the community. And Jerry's been doing this a lot longer than I have. And so I would, you know, I have a certain level of trust that when he's making these decisions, he's going to use that. So, but that's, that's just my thoughts.
Yes, sir.
Is the vote needed to table or no?
Well, the, the motion and the second, so, um, we'll call that vote.
Oh, it is a vote?
Yeah, we have to vote, yeah. So we'll call the vote and then, um, if it fails, we'll, we'll redirect. So all in favor to table item 8T? Please say aye. Aye. All opposed?
No.
Okay, motion fails. Would entertain a motion on item 8T?
I, um, move to, um, approve item eight T as presented.
Second? I have a motion and a second to approve item eight T as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. Uh, motion passes with a three-two vote. Thank you guys for entertaining that discussion. And so I would, um, quickly go back through and ask staff, um, I think it'd be very helpful for staff to, um, have a discussion. If you'd like to start the discussion with, with, uh, staff individually, or I mean, with, uh, council individually, or if you just want to put it on an agenda, um, we could deal with it in the next session. But I think we, we should discuss, uh, value-based, uh, bid procurement, um, the, the metrics that we use, um, how many people sit on these boards? Um, what's their qualifications? And, and, you know, what's the parameters, the percentages that we give for our, our lowest bidder, uh, versus our, our highest bidder? You know, I mean, how if you don't have any history with the city, can you ever get awarded a contract if forty percent of your value-based bid is your historical, um, you know, past? And so, um, I'd like to discuss it all. Um, I'd like for, for council to be able to look at buy board, Sourcewell, all of these other ones. Um, and then I think it's important that we do highlight that, just like we've started highlighting funding. Very important for council to see, yes, it's funded, it's in budget, it's out of budget, um, we did it on a bond. I think we should also know that the procurement is either gone through a hard, hard bid, you know, proposal, or it was a subjective proposal, it was our value-based bid. Or maybe it was buy board. And so I, I think if we could have a good discussion on all that, it'll greatly help us in the future. All right, so that completes our consent agenda. I'm gonna have a fifteen-minute recess. I appreciate you guys weathering the storm with us. We'll be back at five forty-five, thank you. Into your chair, please. We're gonna go ahead and call ourselves back to order. It is five forty-five and we are now moving into, um, section nine, our discussion, and then we'll roll on from there to our non-consent. Item nine A, do I have anything that council has questions on, uh, before we move on? Perfect. Item nine B, accessible Amarillo Task Force, Mr. Donnie Hooper, if you'll walk us into this.
Okay, thank you so much, Mayor and Council. Over the past several months, we've been tackling some pretty sensitive and very important issues in the city of Amarillo, uh, and challenges regarding accessibility in Amarillo. And just as we recognized earlier in the proclamation that we did with the group that was up here today, they are still here in the audience waiting for this presentation here as well, because, uh, we wanted to kind of give you the fruits of our labor presentation today on what we've been working on, uh, over the past few months. So why accessibility matters in Amarillo, as you see, their accessibility supports our residents' dignity and independence. Illegal parking is accessible, uh, in accessible spaces creates some barriers, and education and enforcement works, must work hand in hand. Community involvement is a key to long-term change. So with all that said, because of all that, we formed the Partners for Accessible Amarillo, we call it the P4AA Task Force. Uh, we set that up again, uh, a few months ago and started working with a group of people. We launched that in February twenty twenty-four. Our city staff members that are on this group include myself, Jacob Diaz, the city marshal, Stephanie Coggins, the city secretary, along with Kristen Wolback, uh, from OEI. And we started getting together with the Sister Bear Foundation. It's Ruth Brown, Julie Granger, Catherine Granger, they're here today. Uh, they even have some other folks with them as well. And we started to meet with the purpose of aligning ourselves, uh, together to, for enforcement, some education, advocacy, uh, programs to promote accessibility citywide. I forgot too that Leila is here, and, and if you saw Leila in the pictures earlier, that's their service dog that they have with them. Throughout these meetings, I've totally fallen in love with Leila, she's my best friend right now. In fact, we were having a discussion just a moment ago during the break. So great, fantastic group of people that over these past few months, I've, I've earned a great amount of respect for, uh, not only for what, uh, they're dealing with, but also their heart and what they're trying to get done here in Amarillo. So the task force focus areas that we started looking at was, uh, clarifying legal authority and enforcement processes. There were a lot of times in these meetings where we talked about whose responsibility is this? Whose responsibility is that? What does ADA take care of? What do we take care of? Uh, what can we do as volunteers? And we had those conversations in depth and came up with some, a path to move forward, including evaluating and revising city programs and the volunteer framework that we have in our marshal's office, researching accessibility best practices throughout the United States, uh, building community and stakeholder advocacy, and designing public education and outreach strategies, as well as developing a reporting mechanism to support enforcement here in Amarillo. I personally, just on a personal note, have a, have a deep passion for this. The last twelve years of my father's life, he was in a wheelchair, and I, I learned a lot, uh, taking him places, watching him, uh, struggle with the different things that he was going, uh, through, and so it gave me a, a deep passion. I shared that with the group as well, because I think you have to have experienced this in order to have, uh, that deep level of passion it takes to get some changes made and some things done. So I just wanted to share that as well, uh, as we talked about that as a group. What we currently have right now in our, is a parking enforcement program. It resides in our marshal's office, the city marshal Jacob Diaz, uh, oversees that. He also has a volunteer coordinator, coordinator that oversees the volunteers in this group. I will tell you that participation has always been a little bit of a challenge in that group. Uh, through our partnership, now that we've formed this and we've started meeting, we've started to see some result, results immediately. Uh, we trained twelve volunteers, uh, back in through March and May, which was a lot more than we had trained before, and they've contributed over a hundred hours and issued about sixty-four citations and warnings throughout the city of Amarillo. This is, this is basically geared toward, uh, parking, uh, cars that are illegally parked in certain areas. The goals was to expand our volunteer base, so we've already started working on that. We'll have some more training coming up, uh, very soon where we can expand that even more, we feel like, uh, using our reporting data to identify hotspots throughout the city and supporting enforcement citywide. What they generally do, the volunteers will go out and they'll go just patrol around, look for certain areas. We're actually starting to hone that in now through some of the technology that- through some of the technology that we have available to us, to be able to find, where are those locations that we're having the same difficulty? Is it in the same place? Does it move around? Is it just in store parking lots? Is it in other places? Is it downtown? So what we've tried to do with that is in our, first of all, our public information campaign, talking about it's not just a space, accessibility starts with you, focus on areas to educate residents and businesses throughout the community on what this is and what we're trying to accomplish. Promote legal, ethical parking behavior, provide reporting tools for parking violations, and build empathy and awareness. We feel like that tactic alone is probably the best enforcement method we have is education, people learning how difficult it is if you pull up and you're in an accessible parking spot and you can't get your door open to get out, what that feels like, educating them on how wide those parking spaces should be. Social media campaigns will take care of that, dedicated page on the city of Amarillo website we're working on, and we're currently working on a GIS-based reporting tool where we can use that for parking enforcement. This is one of the things I'm most excited about. Kristin and her team have been working on that to bring it to life. It's to empower residents in our community to have a way that they can report where they see trouble areas, where cars are parked incorrectly, or they're parked without a placard, or there is an area that has other issues with that, maybe parked in a fire lane would be a good example for that. This will be a GIS-based reporting tool that'll be on the website. Residents can be reporting those issues. They're going to be logged and viewed by the marshal's office. So this is not something that is an enforcement tool. This is not an enforcement tool for the public to tattle-tale on somebody else to get them in trouble. It's for us to collect data. The more data we have, the better we're going to be able to see in our mapping areas, those hotspots and where they're at, so that when the volunteer groups come in, we can hand them these hotspot areas and say, here's some things this month you might want to go start patrolling. We can go collect more data. It gives them a more specific purpose to accomplish the goal that they became a volunteer for in the first place. We're very excited about that. We're just on, we got to see the other day a demo of that in Kristin's department, and I was very impressed with the ease of use of it and how well it's going to be, I think, received by the citizens of Amarillo. So our next steps is to launch that public campaign, social channels, expand our volunteer recruitment and training programs, leverage our data to guide enforcement, and evaluate and adjust programs as need, and continue stakeholder collaboration. I think we're going to continue certainly meeting with the group that we have here, because they have been very educational for us, for one thing, and I think we've been able to share some good things. And I would like to go ahead and have either Julie or Catherine, they were flipping a coin of who is going to get to come up and speak a little bit as they come up to the podium, and just talk about their take on this, what we've been working on, just kind of share their thoughts on the program as well, because we spend a lot of time together, and I think that it's going to be very valuable to hear from their side, for you as a council, what they've experienced as far as this task force is concerned.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
So I'll just kind of start with sharing my story, and I know some of you may have already heard this story, but my accident happened when I was 16, so seven years ago, and I never thought I would be living life from a chair. Unfortunately, that just is what comes with any kind of neurological injury. It can happen to any one of us, and so when this did happen, I wanted to become more independent. I was stripped away from all of my independence from start of my injury, and I relied on somebody to do everything for me. And once I realized my next step for becoming independent would be moving out on my own, I got an apartment and very quickly realized how careless people can be in our community, which is unfortunate, because I strongly believe we live in an amazing community and a lot of good-hearted people. I just think they're not educated or realize the extent of their actions can harm somebody else. And I would come home from my, to my apartment and not be able to get into my apartment, because they were blocking either the ramp, or they'd be parked in the striped area next to the handicap spot, and so I wouldn't even be able to access my own apartment, which is really unfortunate, because anytime I would try to leave my apartment, I would have a lot of anxiety thinking about, well, am I even going to be able to safely get into my car or back into my apartment when I come home at night? So that was a big issue that we honestly learned early on, and accessibility starts with each and every one of us, and Donnie is completely right. If you're not directly impacted by it, you just don't realize it. And so I think that's why we are so passionate about this, is to educate more people in our community, because it does start with education. So I'll let my mom kind of take over and.
Yeah, so I'm just thrilled to be here today. I've been working on this for about six years, actually. I met seven times with different individuals in the old city building, and once here, and then since then, Donnie has just been such an amazing individual to work with, to get this task force set up. So it really means a whole lot to us, to me personally, for her. But again, I think it's not just our individuals that we serve as a nonprofit. We are going to be serving a lot more individuals in our community. The growing elderly population that we serve are that are living in our area are going to be in a benefit from all the things that we are going to be able to accomplish. So thank you, Donnie. Thank you, Tom, for listening. I know you've been a part of that. Tim Benson was my old volunteer parking enforcement partner. Thank you for your heart. I appreciate everything that you've done to get us here as well. Thank y'all.
All right, thank y'all very much. And I guess while they're still here and have a microphone, if y'all have any questions for me or them, we could take care of that now.
Questions, Council?
Thank you. My brother-in-law actually has been in a wheelchair most of his life, has a side entry van, and I know exactly what you're going through with the challenges and struggles of doing that. So is there anything we can do about that? I mean, it seems to me that, that, you know, there are certain handicap places that are for vans, and it's very challenging when those are used by non-vans, which I'm sure they may not know or be aware, but, you know, I don't know if there's any kind of enforcement that can be done on that or not.
The more, the more we talked about that, and we talked about that in depth, we feel like education is probably the key to that, because we don't really have an enforcement tool for that. Now, if someone's parked without a placard or something, we can easily take care of that with a citation. But some of the other things outside of that are one of the most challenging issues for us. Those are the ones we're trying to tackle, and that's what we're going to continue to be working through with our public education campaigns, social media, the reporting tools, all those things we're doing is to solve those issues that are the most challenging.
And who regulates our controls, handicap, getting legal permission for handicap accessibility?
Yeah, so all of that has many components. Most of that is done through the ADA group. There's a, there's a group out of Lubbock that can actually enforce that. We also have.
What I'm talking about, the, the permission to park in those places.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, so I mean, do physicians give them? Do other people, is there any, any stipulation that you have to meet to actually get that?
Okay, so I have just one little tidbit to add to that, because I am not exactly sure what the criteria is, but I think they kind of just hand them out, unfortunately, to anybody who comes to them and asks for them. My boyfriend actually had several knee surgeries, and so he did ask for a temporary placard, and they gave him a permanent plate. So it's unfortunate, because he doesn't, you know, just park there whenever he wants to, but if somebody had that option and they did have that at their disposal at any time they needed, they probably would, you know, use that as much as they wanted to. So I do think that that needs to probably be looked at a little more. I know that you have to go to doctor's offices and almost get like a prescription to take to the DMV, is that right? And then every like five years, you have to go back in and renew the placard, but if you have a plate, it's, I mean, lifetime, so.
Yeah, the, the blue placards, or if you have a plate, are permanent, and so those you just basically take back in and they replace them. If it's a red temporary one, those are usually only good for six months, but it does have to come from a physician.
And then outside of the parking issues, are there any other like top issues, particularly as it relates to what the city oversees, that are challenges or things that, that are prohibitive outside of the parking?
The parking, go ahead.
Well, one, one thing that I would like to just bring up are, we have a significant amount of faded signs and missing signs, which, as a volunteer for your program, we cannot write the ticket for those places. If there is not a sign there, we cannot write it. And I saw one just the other day at Starbucks on Grand. It's missing the sign, and someone's parked there, but there's nothing that we can do about that. So I feel like as the partnership evolves and grows, I think that's one of the things that, you know, as a nonprofit, we can maybe visit with a manager at a business and say, hey, would you be okay if we replaced this for you? You know, and I think that most businesses would be on board to allow us as a nonprofit, and I've got lots of volunteers that would be willing to be able to go do those things. So with their permission, I feel like as a nonprofit, we could do that.
Sure, and that's part of the education piece of it, but there's also, we have contacts. So if we have someone who's blatantly just ignoring what they need to have, we can turn that in to the authority that would take care of that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So, excuse me, I know you were in the office a while back, and, and, you know, it's just kind of a struggle to get to, I'd say staff that, that was, was ready to go, and so I really appreciate staff in doing this. I mean, it's, it is, it is definitely where, I think with our city marshal's office and with Mr. Hooper's leadership, you know, they said, hey, we've got a citizen here that is willing to do the work. What can we do to help? And, and so we're glad to partner with you guys, and we appreciate your passion for it, and so you'll help a lot of people out there, and we're glad to work with you. So.
Thank you very much, Cole. I appreciate it.
Yeah, I appreciate you staying persistent and staying on it. You need the tenacity to get anything done, so.
I've been a long, lifelong, you know, person in this community. I care about it. I want to see good things happen, and I'm super excited to have the support of you guys, because again, the education, people don't know unless they've experienced it. But if they, if we put some things out there and they knew that ticket was $514, I guarantee you, most people would not do it. And if people in the community see this and they're, they're personally impacted, they want to say something, but a lot of times they don't, because they don't like confrontation. But this will allow them to be able to self-report, and it'll be a way for us to be able to monitor those places that are problems, because we've been able to fix those problems. I've seen it firsthand, being a volunteer. We've gone to apartment complexes, it doesn't happen. The word gets out, and that people don't do that anymore. So it just really is a matter of being able to have a program like this, and to be able to have enough volunteers, because we got to a very critically low number of volunteers, and I felt like the program was failing at one point. And so now this is going to help us to be able to get more volunteers through you guys. So thank you very much, Cole. I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. Let's go, let's go make some changes.
We'll look forward to the next meeting with them and look forward to seeing Leila again.
Hey, thank you guys for coming. Appreciate you. I am going to go ahead, Donnie, without going to nine C, I'm going to take nine F, take it out of order. I know we've got some of our seniors that spoke here at Public Comment, and, you know, the meeting's running long already, so I would like to go ahead and do nine F, which is an agenda requested item by Councilman Sherlin. So Councilman, I will hand this over to you.
Now, this is surprising, isn't it?
Yeah, no, the leadership is not surprising.
Anyway, thank y'all for allowing me to make this presentation. I am here today to bring the, forth the needs of our senior citizens in Amarillo, Texas. I've been involved for a number of years with some organizations in Amarillo that has to do with seniors. As you can hear from the public comments, there is a lot lacking in our city for seniors. I put together a short presentation, and every councilman today should have received a study that was done by the city in 2017. Y'all should have received the email. It's about 77 pages long. I wanted to give you plenty of time to read it, because this is just a discussion item today, so I want you to read it and see what was recommended to the city in 2017, because a lot of those needs and things that were mentioned has not changed. In fact, it has probably intensified since COVID, because COVID really did a job on senior citizens. I got a short presentation here. I want to bring up, Stephanie, if you'd change to the next slide, please. Okay, here's the cause of the problem we have with seniors. It says increased social isolation. During COVID-19, seniors were among the most isolated due to their higher risk of severe illness. Part two, prolonged separation from family, friends, community activities led to increased loneliness and social withdrawal. Number three, as restrictions lifted, many seniors were left with fewer social ties or less confidence in re-engaging, interesting, increasing the need for structured activities. So these are the things that, that's the cause, and what has caused it. Now, if you'll change slides again, Stephanie, please. Decline in physical and cognitive health. After COVID, reduced movement and stimulation during lockdowns led to faster physical decline and cognitive stagnation, a decline, e.g., memory, alertness. This happened during COVID. So many of our senior citizens were locked in four walls. They didn't have a family, or family couldn't come and see them during this process. And now it says activities now serve as a way to rebuild physical strength, mental sharpness through gentle exercises, games, and learning. This is why we need a facility. We can bring the seniors together to visit with each other, talk to each other, play games, stimulate their minds, make them productive parts of society again. There's so many seniors today that could give so much to the city of Amarillo, but we don't know who they are, where they are, because we don't have a common location for them to come. I mean, we've got several smaller senior citizen facilities. Today, I'm talking for all senior citizens. Now, I've been active with one particular for the last three years. I'm president of that association. I am willing to stop, to give up a bit of the presidency. I'm willing to give up my board positions if we can get the city to participate with our senior citizens. I don't want to do this and hurt seniors. I want seniors to get everything. So if somebody thinks there's conflict of interest, there will not be a conflict of interest. I will step down. I will give everything we need to. Number three here, mental health recovery. Many seniors experienced anxiety, depression, or grief during the pandemic. Engaging in activities, especially those that are social, purposeful, helps improve mood, reduce stress, and rebuilds mental resilience. If you noticed, the hardest hit group during COVID was seniors. And a lot of it had to do, I think, with their mental health. They were isolated. They were by themselves, and as a senior sits at home by theirself, they become depressed. They don't have anything to look forward to. Seniors have been there. They've done the things our young people are doing today. Just think if we had a place that we could bring young and old together to talk back and forth, to let the younger people ask questions, ask the people who've been there and done this for years. That's what I'm striving for. Number four, routine and structure. The pandemic disrupted daily routines, especially in seniors' living communities or among those who lived alone. Scheduled activities help restore a sense of normalcy, purpose, and motivation in day-to-day life. We need to get that structure out there. They gotta have a reason to get up. They gotta have a reason to come to some place that they can actually work with each other and work with younger people. I've got in my mind, I would love to have a location, which we've been working on, that people can come and they can play dominoes, they can learn computers, they can learn all kinds of things to do, but it's going to be up to us helping them. It's hard to get funding for senior citizens. Why? I've asked that question hundreds of times. It's easy to get money for kids. It's easy to get money. It's easy to get money for parks. It's easy to get money for baseball fields. But at the end of the day, it's hard to get money for senior citizens. And guess what? Who's the one that paid taxes for the last 50, 60, 70 years and are still paying taxes but at the end of the day, barely making it by? I know seniors in this city that eat one meal a day at home by theirselves. We should be ashamed of ourselves. These are people who are paying taxes. These are the people that paved my streets 50 years ago. It's time for us to step up. Now, also, there's a technology gap in catch-up. While younger generations moved to online platforms, many seniors were left out due to lack of tech access or literacy. If we put a little computer room together, we can have all kinds of classes teaching seniors how to pay their water bill online, how to pay their electric bill online. That's all we're asking, to bring them up to date. In-person activities are now especially important to bridge the gap and provide inclusion. A lot of seniors don't feel like they're included in society anymore. They've been pushed out. But today, we can open that door. We can make the change here today or next week or two weeks from now when we can bring it up before council. The next slide, please. Community rebuilding. Many community programs and centers shut down or downsized during COVID. As they reopen, there's a strong push to re-engage seniors, to rebuild social networks and strengthen the community ties. Right before COVID, we lost the Amarillo Senior Citizen Association that was downtown. It went bye-bye. Since that time, we've had a few smaller ones come up, but nothing as big as what the Amarillo Senior Citizen was. At its high point, it had 1,500 members. It could have that today. As you heard from Don when he gave his presentation earlier, 15% of the Amarillo population are senior citizens. That's important. As they reopen, there's a strong push to re-engage seniors, rebuild social networks, and strengthen community ties. We need to get our seniors involved. They could be involved at Transformation Park. They could be involved at Meals on Wheels. They can be involved in how many programs we've got across the city. We can involve them. We can use them. We can make Amarillo better going forward. But you know what? The first thing we've got to do is make the commitment to take care of them and not just leave them out there to take care of theirselves. I firmly believe that if we take this action by this city, by this council, I think we could go forward. As of the latest available data, approximately 14.8% of Amarillo population is age 65 and old. This figure is based on an estimate of the U.S. Census Bureau, Census Bureau's American Community Survey from 2019 to 2023. This percentage is slightly below the national average of 16.84 for the same age group. In terms of actual numbers, this equates to about 29,742 senior residents in Amarillo, Texas. That's a big number that are not being taken care of. Other sources provide similar, though slightly varying estimates. For instance, neighborhood scouts report that 14.8% of Amarillo population is over 65, while world population reviews indicate that 13.5% of residents are senior citizens. These slight differences may result from varying data collection methods or reporting periods. Next slide, please. The reason we need to support seniors. I'm going to give you the reasons from here on. Here we go. Next slide, please. Economic returns. Seniors aren't just recipients of care. They're consumers, volunteers, caregivers, even business owners. Supporting them can stimulate local economies through increased spending on goods and services, job creation in healthcare and senior services, growth in age-friendly housing and transit sectors. That's another thing that Don had brought up in his three minutes he was given. Next slide, please. Preventive investment saves money. Cities that invest in preventive care, accessible housing, social programs for seniors spend less on emergency services and long-term institutional care. Helping people age in place is far cheaper than relying on hospitals and nursing homes. If we look at this from the economic side, we're crazy not to do this. I mean, we've got the answers. We know what we need to do, but we need to do it. Civic engagement. Older adults often contribute thousands of volunteer hours to their communities, whether mentoring, teaching, or helping in public institutions. This social capital is priceless and entirely renewable with the right support. Next slide, please. Demographic reality. The senior population is growing. Ignoring its planning to fail, ignoring it is planning to fail. Cities that adapt early will handle aging populations more smoothly, which others, while others scramble. Next one, please. Equity and dignity. Investing in senior is about fairness. After decades of contributing to social society, they deserve support in return. And when cities take care of their most vulnerable, everyone benefits. Next slide, please. Okay, that's the end. Do I have any questions? Anybody like any questions? What I would like to do, if there's no questions, I would like to bring this forward to the council that they could put it on the agenda at some point in time and vote on this item. Now, I do know that the council does have some money that is set aside that we haven't spent yet this year. I would like us to consider some of that, but the main thing is, I would like to see this budget money for our senior citizens. I'm not saying any particular one. I think the council could make those decisions of how to distribute money. But I honestly believe we've got to start tackling this problem. As we tackle Transformation Park today, I'm wanting to tackle the future of our seniors who are still supporting the city.
What are you proposing exactly?
I think we could maybe take some of the money we have left in our budget that we set aside.
Working budget.
I think we've got money left there. I would like to see this when we go into budget process, that we look into a budget, and I think we could actually set up a public-private partnership. I have visited with some local people in town who would be willing to donate into that kind of situation, and those people can pick the organization they want to donate to. But I think if, for instance, if the city was to give a half million dollars and we get a match of a half a million dollars, there's a million dollars down the road that we're helping seniors. And I'm not spending that much of taxpayer money. I think we could sell this with a public-private. That's what we've done with Transformation Park. I think we can do that with senior citizens.
Okay, so Ms. Storrs can weigh in. Do we have 3 million left in our annualized working budget? Not our one-time spend, but the tax rate that we've set aside still currently, ma'am?
I'm pulling that up right now for you.
Okay, it may not be quite three. But as she looks on that, so did I hear you correctly? You are proposing like a match? You're saying like you want the city to lead and then we would allow private entities to match? Or, go ahead.
I would say that as we go into budget, if we budget that way, a match, public-private match system that we could set up together, and I think that would help us. I would also like to ask for immediate help from our council budget that we're fixing to go in. I think, what, we've got three or four months left of the budget year this year?
Right.
Which I think we could do a lot with, our seniors. I think the senior organization throughout the city could really benefit from the help. As we heard earlier, funding for 501(c)(3) is tough right now. It's hard to raise money because money's tight.
So...
Now, can I say one more thing? I will say, we've investigated, went to Lubbock. Lubbock fully finances their senior citizens. They provide the buildings. They provide everything. Now, I'm not asking for that because I don't know if we could do that, but I think we could start.
Let me see if Mr. Path can direct us, because I know we can't give public monies to a nonprofit, you know, in that form. But like, what can we or what should we direct this conversation toward?
Yeah, I think I'm needing some clarification. I think, is the request to give half a million dollars for senior citizens or the senior citizen center?
Senior citizens.
Senior citizens.
Not one particular organization. I'm talking about senior citizens throughout the city of Amarillo.
So with that, it's rather broad. Is there a particular program or purpose or activity? Or, I think we would need to identify how that money would be spent, whether it's through recreational programs or through some kind of, I'm not sure. We'd have to kind of brainstorm how to do that, I guess. I want to, where do we send the money to? How do we assign this money? I guess, does that make sense?
Well, I think your senior citizen association would apply. As they gave money, what was the APR money they had a few years ago?
Yes, sir. That was the ARPA funding. We had done kind of an application process for the senior citizen groups to apply for.
Correct.
So, yes, I'm following where you're going down that road.
Yep. And that's what we did with APR money.
Yeah.
They could file for it. They could ask for funding that way, and the funding was given out to different organizations, I believe. Family and Catholic Services got some money.
Yes.
United Way got some money.
Yeah.
And...
I think a legal services group got some. There was a handful of them.
Yeah, there was a handful of them. Now, my question was, at that time, how do we guarantee if you gave it to the United Way, it went to seniors? Or the same way with Family Catholic Services? I think when we look at things, we need to look at it from a senior standpoint, that this is totally a senior organization. When you give it to United Way, who gets money from everywhere? I'm not saying anything bad about United Way, but I'm trying to fund senior citizens.
So, yes, I was unaware that we'd had a program with ARPA funds, and so it sounds like there is a mechanism using ARPA funds that they could apply, and then we would vet the process probably through the city council and then see if the purpose met a public purpose or not. So I guess that's kind of what you're directing is, is to pull funds to, we don't have any more ARPA for that, and so it'd be general funds.
Correct.
But you're looking at general funds like we did with ARPA.
Correct.
And we did go through a process where they had to turn in their actual expenditures for reimbursement so we could verify that they were specifically used on senior citizens.
Correct. And so you're saying that the city itself would not be doing programs? We would be taking applications for entities who would do programs?
Correct. You're basically doing the same thing. You're doing it for Transformation Park, only you're doing it for senior citizens. There's no difference in the two. If you want to look at them left and right hand, I mean, they're the same thing, only one of them's for homeless people, the other one's for senior citizens.
Well, and the truth is, we're doing the same thing for neighborhoods that we've identified as, you know, whether it's the barrio and other ways, and it's a public-private partnership. And I agree with you. I think that's the best way to handle it. I mean, a couple of questions that I have, I don't have any answers, but maybe a couple of questions that we could focus on is, because I heard in the presentations earlier today, you know, I don't know if we want to try to help on focusing on where the biggest gaps are. In other words, I heard transportation, I heard nutrition. You know, I'm not familiar enough to know where is our biggest need and where could we get the most impact, you know, for this? And then, like you say, at the end of the day, you know, what and how can the city do to help that? Do we need to be the solution or do we support the solution? Generally, we seem to be better at supporting the solution than being the solution, but I just wonder what, you know, because I know there are lots of organizations that say they're doing things for seniors. I'm not familiar with them to know how much they're actually doing, but I just wonder if we can try to determine through senior input, where is the biggest gap? And if we're looking at something, where can we spend this money to best fill the gap that would be most beneficial to the senior community? Because I would imagine there are lots of needs, but, you know, what are the gaps where we could have the most impact?
And Mayor, I did verify the city's ongoing working budget currently has a balance of $3 million.
Okay, great. Councilman?
Thanks, Tom, for that presentation. You know, there are a few of us up here in the dais who fit that category. And we do wonder down the road where we're going to spend some time. And so that, my question is, are we asking a bigger question as to what the city's involvement should be with our senior citizens? And, you know, there used to be a senior citizen center here downtown, if I remember correctly, right? And, I mean, is that the greatest need? Is finding a central place that senior citizens get to? That would be more appropriate to put city funds in to? Being that what I heard today was a lot of getting together, socializing, getting them out of the house so that they're not held up and lonely and depressed, so that they have a place to come, play games, and have meetings with their friends, doing those type of things. So, you know, I think less is on to something there that maybe we need that, a little bit more information. I think it's a good spending of our dollars that we have because we're all going to be there.
Councilman, do you have something? Okay. Okay, so I'm going to recap, make sure I'm hearing what you're saying. I agree with you. These are our longest-standing taxpayers. And, you know, Amarillo's 14th largest city in the state of Texas. Texas may or may not be the seventh-largest economy in the world right now. It's either seventh or eighth. We can afford this, right? We are directing, funding different places, and I think we're painstakingly trying to spend every dollar correctly, and that's why these meetings last so long. So, $3 million, I think if you were to take a half a million and say, staff, honestly, we don't know. We have a vision. We want to go there. Where we want to go, or where, you know, Councilman Sherlin is leading us, is we want to put the seniors back in our budget. We want to make an investment into those senior citizens that have invested in this town for 50, 60, 70 years. Much like we did on the TMRS COLA increase where we said to our retirees, we want to invest in our retirees because they've paid the most in running this city. And some of these citizens are doing the same, right? 30-year career down here plus and a senior fixed income, and maybe they are eating one meal a day, you know? And so... And so I think when we talk about like unity, you know, what, what Ms. Gonzalez prayed earlier today, this is a great way to unify it. What I've seen is I've seen leaders like Don Collins just go and get a rental that he probably pays for at Mr. Gaddy's and puts 100 people in a meeting room where it's hard to hear. And just so you can consolidate, you can get everybody together. So you can see each other and you can brainstorm and come up with your idea. I think a center is probably the thing that is, that is missing the most. That we don't have a place for our seniors that we can provide. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean ASCA, you know, I know they were gifted a building. But that, you know, wherever this is, I think if we gave staff funding and we said, look, let's put a half million dollars into the budget and let's let staff go figure out what's the best usage of this funding? Is it transit? Is it food programs? Is it recreation? Do we already have a building somewhere that we could convert for less money? Or is it actually investing in another building? Maybe, maybe ASCA needs to, you know, sign that over to the city, you know, and kind of do the same type thing that we're doing with Transformation Park, whatever that looks like. I am probably the most excited, though, to hear your challenge because it is hard, it's funny. I think outside of the city limits, we do fundraise for ta, for our senior citizens. I think we have a lot of good organizations that, that do make sure that rural and smaller communities take care of those seniors. But then here in the city, I, I think we, we take for granted, you know, our good neighbors. And so if you were to say maybe up to another half a million dollars, so a million dollars total out of that budget, we could match, I think that would allow for a Don Collins to go to all of these private entities or not, you know, foundations philanthropic and say, hey, if you give me $100,000 right now, I can get another $100,000 from my, my city budget. And then we could see where, where this dollar amount lands. If we don't get that much, then I don't think there's a lot of, you know, talk about a, a building that needs a lot of work. But then it goes towards transit or food or whatever, and then recreation and stuff. And so I, I love this, I appreciate the leadership. I would want to know from staff, where are we kind of walking that line of supporting a, a nonprofit? We don't want to support a nonprofit because we can't support all nonprofits and these are public monies.
Yeah, so, so we'll need to, need to look into that a little bit further. I think we've got some, some guys, I think Mr. Sherlin, I think you and I are meeting tomorrow for our regular meetings. So I think this would be a good opportunity for you and I to sit down and kind of brainstorm some of these ideas that have been talked about today. I'd like to bring in a, a Mr. Guy on with us in that meeting as well. So some of those departments that, that we've mentioned here are under his, under his oversight. And so I think that one direction that council is talking about is, is we directly either fund some kind of project or program or we also likewise, or we could, or maybe do both. We could do, where we do an application process where those who have, who, this is what they do for a living, is that they have programs, ideas, and they do matching programs and so, and so. Instead of us trying to create a program, if someone's already doing it and doing it well, then we, we invest in that. So there's some ideas, I think, with that. And I think going back to the ARPA program, the mechanism we did, that would be a good idea for me to look at. And I was unfamiliar with that, so we can take a peek at how that was operated. Maybe we can duplicate that here as well. So I think you and I are meeting tomorrow, so let's, if, if the council's good, maybe Mr., Councilor Sherlin and I can talk more about this and brainstorm where this might go.
Council, anybody that wants to redirect this? Do we all feel like we would support a decent size of these available currently in your budget monies moving towards a seniors program?
Yeah, you know, one thing I noticed when I was kind of looking for this, at one time, Parks and Recreation actually, and I, I don't know if this was a program or just a website, but it was called Neighbor Hub and it was designed to be kind of a central place of resources for seniors. I don't know if it's been updated, but I, and I don't think Michael Keshiba's here. But again, I don't know what their experience has been. That, because the other thing I just think that, I just wonder if there is someone fulfilling the role of helping people connect to the services that they need. I don't know if there's an organization that is doing that or directing that for seniors or who that is. But, you know, it looked like we were trying to be that to a certain extent or, but I don't know. Maybe Michael Keshiba would know more about that. But it seems something that, that Parks and Recreation was focusing in that several years ago.
Yes, councilmember, I believe they had that somewhat up and running until around the time COVID hit. And then so many services were put on pause at that point in time. And I know they were working to relaunch it. But I think Michael Keshiba could get the council some really good information about that. We do have one position inside our, our Parks and Recreation budget that is to support senior services. And we do have several activities that we host and facilitate through the Warford Center. They actually renovated a section of the Warford Center to run certain senior citizen activities through. But I can certainly get Michael to get some more information to council on that website that was truly meant to link seniors with all the available activities in the area so they could kind of pick and choose what they wanted to do through that.
I'll agree with the Warford Center.
Yes.
It's really good in the morning for seniors. It turns to a kids deal.
Later in the day.
And in the summer and in the afternoon. I think we, to make this thing really work, we've got to separate the two. The Warford Center was intended for one thing. And what we tried to do is fill up their off times with seniors.
Yes, sir.
And I think what we actually did, we did that.
Yes, absolutely.
But it doesn't serve the whole senior community. Now, I do think if you had a senior center, you could still run buses out to Warford for swimming activity. The thing is, the city needs to be involved in the senior program all the way or not try to mandate it.
And I do agree with you. I think they are bursting at the seams out at the Warford. And so trying to share that space has been a little bit tricky. But we will certainly get you all some more information on what we're currently doing and from Michael Keshiba and that team. And then I'll work with Grayson to get him up to speed with how we utilize those ARPA dollars and kind of go from there.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Council, anything else on this gap? Okay, Councilman Sherlin, appreciate you bringing that forward. Appreciate the leadership. We're going to move back up to 9C. Mr. Hooper, back over to you on River Road wastewater update.
Okay, great. Before we get to the actual slideshow, Stephanie's pulling it up. I want to have a, some recognition of some of the team that's here today. We've been working very closely with the Kimley Horn team since 2023, all the way through 2024, and discussing the wastewater facilities, what we're going to need to be doing. There's been a tremendous amount of work that's been done so far. There's also been a lot of input that's put into this presentation as well. As I think we've actually had probably around seven complete run-throughs of the presentation where we're making sure that we got everything in here that we need for this. Jeff James is the principal and senior vice president of Kimley Horn. He's here, wave your hand, Jeff, because he'll be available after this to answer questions. They're all over here behind me somewhere. Did Jeff leave? Okay, Jeff's still here, he didn't go home yet. Kenny Frye, who's a shareholder and civil engineer with Kimley Horn as well. Now, I've been working with him for about 19 years in my career. He looks like he's about 20 years old, but he's actually older than that. Kenny does a great job. And then Taylor Towns is also here, project manager for Kimley Horn. We've spent many, many hours with these professionals, experts, on what we're talking about today on the subject of wastewater. Also with our staff, of course, Floyd, our historian, and knows everything about every piece of bolt, everything that's been done at the wastewater facilities over the past years. Michael Price, our director of utilities. Shannon Tolleson, our assistant director. Jerry Danforth, facilities director, and interim director of CP&amp;D. And then William Johnson's not able to be here today. And also Jackson Zahara, our city engineer, has been involved in this process as well. And I want to recognize them and let you know that there's been just that, that group plus about 10 more in our weekly meetings that go through this and just really go down into the weeds with everything we need to do. Today, today is a high-level presentation for you. An overview, recommendations, and plan for replacement of the Hollywood wastewater treatment facility, changes to the functionality of the River Road wastewater treatment facility, discussion of the history of both facilities. We're also going to talk about the historical regulatory changes and requirements that we've on. We've gone since these plants were put in operation, one of them over 100 years ago, one of them in 1965. We'll talk about the maintenance process and ongoing projects that we have currently. We'll also discuss growth projections, which really will take up a good portion of this presentation, talking about where we're headed, why we're planning, why we're doing the things that we're doing, mainly based on growth currently and future growth that's predicted. We'll also start discussing preparing for future needs and discussing the next steps for you today. The other thing I would tell you is before, before we go into the presentation, all the numbers that I've heard, I've heard 2 million, 500 million, 300 million, 600 gazillion. I've heard all these different numbers of how much all this is going to cost. And I'm here to tell you right now that all these experts sitting behind me, everybody in this room, there's no one that knows what this project is going to cost. We're going to talk about some estimates as we get through this later on. But I want to remind you of this, this piece of the presentation that we talked about last time. We've identified what the master plan or what the needs are. And really, this project here, it fits a master plan, it fits specific needs, it fits a special project, a public concern, a council initiative as well. It fits all the above while there's an identified need to tackle the issue of our wastewater treatment facilities. We are currently in the ballpark conceptual estimate based on known data and information related to this project. The estimates that you're going to hear later in this presentation are simply just based on the similar-sized facilities that we're going to be talking about. Some of those are in today's dollars, some of them are in dollars from 2011, 2018, 2023. It's hard to find this size of a plant that's been constructed like this year right now for current pricing. So our experts have taken those numbers, everything that they've found, to give you the best guess estimate today. We will be working on our PER, the preliminary engineering report. We're in the middle of that right now. In that, there's been a cost-benefit analysis that's done and you'll hear some of those numbers today as well. And you remember, we talked about, you know, taking the car to the body shop and I gave my wife the estimate of how much it was going to cost us to get that fixed and I was completely wrong. We're at the body shop estimate right now at home. We're, we're taking that under the hood when we get to the OPCC and we start talking about what is actually going to take place whenever we get into the plans of this. And we have a pretty complex design that's in front of us and looking at this. And then again, as I mentioned before, the only time you're allowed to know the actual cost of this is when we receive the bids for this. The only thing different about what I told you in the drainage presentation a couple of weeks ago is we're adding one element to this and that's a C-MAR contract that would, would happen sometime between the PER. OPCC is going to have to be, or our design's going to have to be at around 30% when we would engage a construction manager at risk for this process. Now, this one is deserving of that because of the cost of it. Our ballpark across the street, same thing, had a C-MAR contract with that. When I was at TDM, we had a $400 million building we were building, we used a C-MAR contract for that. There's plenty of advantages for this, but basically it brings a construction manager on the team early during the design phase where they can be engaged, they can be involved, instead of them coming on after design is complete. They'll also collaborate with the city, with design engineers, with our subs. They'll guide the cost, scheduling materials, and constructability of the project. And that, that construction manager will set a guaranteed maximum price, not to exceed unless the scope of the project would happen to change. And that construction manager then would manage the entire construction process, assuming the financial risk and staying within that guaranteed maximum price. So that's the only thing different about than what we talked about in the drainage piece. And I wanted to kind of share that with you as well. We want to provide you a brief history of each facility. I think a more detailed description for the Hollywood plant than we will the River Road plant. Wastewater treatment plants were a term that was used back when these plants were constructed. We've gotten away from that now. I'll apologize ahead of time, there's terms that they use today such as resource, water resource recovery facility. That's one of the industry standards, a reclamation facility. I've been doing this 29 years and I'm going to call it a plant about 30 times in this presentation and they've been trying to tell me, quit calling it a plant, this is a facility. So when I struggle with that, you'll know why. Our Hollywood wastewater treatment plant was constructed in 1963. That's when they began that. It was commissioned in 1965. When it was built, it was built for 4.5 million gallons a day. You can see in the aerial photo there, that was actually a true photo that was scanned in because of the big crease that was in it when it was folded over. But the one clarifier is the circle that's on the left side of, that you see in the picture. You have two aeration basins to the right of that. Then you have two funnel clarifiers to the right of that. The anaerobic digesters are not available in that picture. It's off the, it's actually off to the left, I believe. And then there are 10 sludge drying beds that you can see in there as well. This was the original Hollywood wastewater treatment plant facility that was built and commissioned in 1965. In 1977, we basically doubled the size. We went from 4.5 MGD to 8 MGD. And you can see now on the right side of that, it's a different, the picture's orientated differently, but there's actually two trains in there now. We added another primary clarifier, we added another aeration basin, a roughing filter, two funnel clarifiers, and a sludge thickener. You can also see the playa behind, and I'm glad that we found this photo the other day because back then in 77, that's where we discharged the water to. You can see that playa is completely full there. We'll talk about regulatory changes that have occurred throughout the years. Back then, that was okay. That's another regulatory change that we can't do now. This picture here is from the 1992 to 1995 construction project that we had. It's the largest project that took place out at the Hollywood wastewater facility. And I color-coded the things on the left because as I go through these, I'm going to, I'm going to color-highlight them for you. The first one's the Headworks building, you see that highlighted in green now. We also added the solids building, that's the one that's just below it in the photo. We also added the large building in the middle, that's the aeration building. We added two primary clarifiers, you see those over there. And then we added five aeration basins, two funnel clarifiers. Then we have in the top left, the three effluent filters just came into play. The two digesters that are over on the bottom right, and then you see the basins up there at the top as well. So all of that was done, starting in 92, took them three years to get to 1995 on that. And that, if you think about this in terms of how big that is, that added four MGD to our plant. That's all that added, brought us up to 12 at that point in time. And Stephanie's highlighting that centerpiece there. That's the original, or that's the plant with the two modifications as you see right across there. Thank you for that, Stephanie. And it shows just how massive of an improvement that was to get an extra four MGD to the plant. This is a current aerial of the wastewater facility. This is since 1995, we've had a couple of other updates as well. We remain at 12 MGD total. We added the sulfur dioxide building, screw pumps, the Excel pump station, and the sludge pads, bio nutrient removal, digester improvements. And then we changed our discharge as well. This is where the discharge changes with that Excel pump and all that. Now we're discharging to tangle wood and Excel at some point in time post-1995 is when all that occurred. So it's a little bit different when you look at the River Road wastewater facility history because you see that Model T right there. That Model T was actually the most popular vehicle that was on the market whenever it was built. It was built in 1922 and most popular vehicle, you can do the math, that's over 100 years ago when that original wastewater treatment facility was built. The first improvement came to that, there was an expansion that was done in 1927 and went to whopping half a million gallons a day that it could take in out at that facility. Then the second expansion happened in 1955 and that's when we bumped that up to 4.5 MGD. The third one's in 1983 where we went to 12 MGD. Then the fourth one in 1992, we extended to 16 MGD. That's the last capacity expansion that we did out at River Road. 1997, we hit some digester improvements, effluent reservoir in 2002, and digester improvements in aeration basin took place in 2021. This is just very high level. In between those dots, there's a lot of things that have happened. There's a lot of improvements is made, there's a lot of OEM that took place, a lot of maintenance that took place between those. But that kind of gives you a high level of how that plant began and where it is at today. So I want to talk about the River Road and Hollywood treatment facilities in the summary. These are the things that we have discovered in looking at where we're at now. And the first thing is that both facilities consistently operate near 75% capacity. That'll be very important in just a minute when we start talking about TCEQ regulations. And that's a very critical piece moving forward as well when we talk about growth and potential growth. Neither facility can be shut down for regular maintenance or repairs for extended periods. So what does that mean? It's difficult for us to go in and modify or add on to or build something extra because the flow never stops. It's going to continue coming into that plant regardless of what we do, being at 75%. No capacity expansion improvements have been made to Hollywood or River Road since 1995. Now, that's actually a positive thing and I'll tell you why in a moment. Both River Road and Hollywood have reached their final life due to the age of each facility, the regulatory requirements, capacity challenges. If you think about even the concrete that exists at these facilities, yeah, concrete lasts forever, right? But not in this environment. When you have this highly acidic, and Shannon can come up here and explain this all day long on how the, the waste that we bring into these plants affects the concrete and those basins and everywhere else that's in there. But it's a challenge for all of that infrastructure, including the concrete. An evaluation of multiple options has been analyzed by the consultants, staff, and management. We have spent many, many, many hours going back and forth, what works, what doesn't work, evaluation, evaluation, evaluation. The only path forward that we can find is to replace that that we can find is to replace that Hollywood wastewater treatment facility because of some of the reasons that I've mentioned above, mainly the capacity, maybe mainly the ability that we cannot shut that, either of those facilities down. So how did we come to this conclusion? In August of 2023, we completed the Hollywood wastewater treatment facility master plan element that was called the condition assessment. That assessment is a very thorough and look at and a deep look into the plant's wellbeing. It's a trip to the cardiologist, and they're looking at everything, not only the heart, the valves, the veins, everything associated with that plant. Assessment's critical for deciding and carving a path forward with plant capacity and growth is the major consideration in that. August of 2024, we selected Kembley Horn for Phase One of the Hollywood wastewater treatment facility project. This included administrative SCADA and laboratory facilities. It included looking at the wastewater system master plan, making sure that everything we were looking at is going to line up with that, or if adjustments needed to be made, looking at our discharge permit, major amendment, and also the preliminary engineering report, which is underway now, the PER that we talked about in the other slide. A cost benefit analysis has been completed, and we're going to discuss in that as we move through this presentation. So that's done 2324 to current. Expenditures to date for Hollywood wastewater treatment facility since 2023 include the preliminary engineering report, removing sludge, bar screen replacements, dissolved air flotation, blowers, clarifiers, rehab, belt press filters, and more. There's a lot of things that have been occurring out there since 2023. This council gave us $19 million. We've expended $4 million to date, but I want you to keep in mind too that additional expenditures have occurred, and they're in queue right now with this project. So as those invoices are paid and expended, that number goes up pretty rapidly. But the total expenditure to date is at $4 million. I want to talk about regulatory changes because during the same time that we gave you the history of these plants and their expansions that they went through, regulatory changes occurred, and some of them were very significant. And why is that important to this presentation? Because the design approach for these facilities, if you go back and think when they were designed, pre even EPA, pre TNRCC, pre TCEQ, they were built with that technology in mind and those regulations in mind. History of regulation changes, I'll show you that the Environmental Protection Agency didn't come into existence until 1970. You remember Hollywood was built in 65. And then, of course, you know, back into the 20s for River Road's original plant, which has now been changed and modified. But even 55 was way before 1970. The Clean Water Act of 1972 is what got us on the path for regulation for wastewater. There were a lot of other things attached with the Clean Water Act, but wastewater, of course, fell into that category. We started to having some challenges with environmental regulations. Texas Natural Resources Conservation Commission came into existence in 1993, and that lasted till 2002. If you remember, the River Road fourth expansion for 16 million gallons was prior to TNRCC. It was completed in 1992. So it was prior to even them being in existence. Hollywood's major expansion in 1995 was under TNRCC when we went to 12 million gallons. So with that said, and we had a joke in the industry that we used to call that train wreck was the Texas Natural Resources Conservation Commission because it was a booger. It was really tough to deal with some of the regulations. So along comes TCEQ. They come in in 2002. They're still a regulatory agency in Texas. We're thankful for that. A lot of the reason we don't have to deal with EPA on a lot of issues is because TCEQ is in existence. We have a great relationship with them. I know that in my past city that I worked at before here, I had to replace the wastewater treatment plant. TCEQ was wonderful to work with throughout that entire process, and they continue to be our partner as we go through all this. So again, the design approach, the expansions outdated, difficult to operate under current regulatory requirements when we have the old technology and the old facilities in place. You've heard of the TCEQ 7590 rule. This is one of the reasons that we're here today as well. The 75% rule basically says that if the average daily flow hits that number, the permitted design flow for three months in a row, that we must initiate engineering, financial planning, and facility expansions and our upgrades. That's what we're already doing. So we've already hit the 75. We're already in route with all those things. We know we're going to get 90. We know we're in route to hit 90. Now, if the average daily flow hits 90% of the permitted flow design for three months in a row, we have to obtain authorization from TCEQ to begin construction on facility expansions and upgrades. That deadline is the first one that we're going to tackle here in a little while when we start going through our timeline. We have to start getting things prepared and get it to TCEQ for an August date so that we can meet that 90% rule. Growth projections, this really to me is the theme of the majority of this presentation is about growth. I think historically, we've expanded our wastewater treatment facilities, and we've done very well with them ahead of growth. That's why I heard it, I said it a minute ago, that we haven't expanded in all these years. It's a positive thing because there was some really good planning that took place back in the day where they said, we don't want this to grow for five years. We want to have enough growth to last until 2026 is what the number was that I saw that Floyd and I were talking about the other day, that somebody during that process said, in 2026, which was a long time away, you're going to have to start planning for expansions and changing things with what you're doing with wastewater. So right on target, we're a little bit early. That means that we've grown quicker than what those predictions were back when all that was occurring. So let's take a look at these maps. I'll show you this. This is really cool how we did this because it shows the existing city limits. You can see the, whatever color that is, I guess we'll call it pink. That pink color in the middle is what it looked like in 1960 when we had a population of 140,000. River Road was at 4.5 million gallons. Hollywood was at 4.5 million gallons. You move forward to the 1980s, our population grew to 150. You see the changes there. We went to 12 MGD and 6 MGD respectively at both of those facilities. So that's a 7.5 MGD upgrade on River Road and about a 1.5 MGD upgrade from the 1960s at Hollywood. We were also during this period of time in the 80s, we were spending a lot of our time acquiring water rights, preparing on the water side for future growth. And I think that's important to note here as well. So let's fast forward to the 2000s, and I apologize for these maps blinking. We had, we looked at several different models that would blink or wouldn't blink when we put them on the screens, and I guess we, I missed it again. Population went to 170,000 in the 2000s. We expanded another four MGDs at River Road from the 1980s. We added six MGD to the Hollywood plant to make it 12. And this is where we still sit now, at 16 and 12. So 28 MGD is what we can treat. But you see the population difference and how much we've grown. This is the 2025 prediction that we have, and it's based on a lot of data that we have. So we know we're going to have growth. We, we're, I'm sorry, 2025 is where we're at, with 210 is our current average population that we feel that we're at. And it's time to take the next big step because if you look at 2050, and you look what the projections are according to all of our planning documents, everything that we have in place, you see that pretty much fills everything up. We even know that that top left little backwards upside down L you see that's open space there on the northwest side. There's discussions going on right now about growth in that area that's not even represented on this map. This is that growth projection on a graph. You can kind of just see how it plays out. You look back in the 1990s at 150,000. Historic growth occurred around 2012 up into the time we're at now, where we're again setting somewhere close to 205, 210, 208512 was a prediction, and then 253836 is what we think we'll see in 2050. That's 25 years from now. All of this data that we have here is based on our comprehensive plan. It's based on known incoming developments we have. It's based on proposed target industries that are wanting to come to Amarillo. And these are, these are very good numbers. Now, getting into predicting growth is just like anything else. One little thing can change this, but we always want to predict out what we think is really going to be happening 25 years from now and start targeting to that. We really can't serve Amarillo and its current needs right now being at 75%. So we need to be preparing for those future needs. And that's exactly what we're going to talk about here. We've talked about the history of each of these facilities, but let's talk about the future needs now. Our progress to date on this project, we talked about the preliminary engineering report. There's a completed cost benefit analysis has taken place. The conclusion that we came to, not just with Kembley Horn but as a group, is that we have to build a new wastewater treatment facility at Hollywood Road. We would need to maintain our River Road wastewater treatment facility until the Hollywood Road plant is constructed. Why do we have to build a new one? Again, go back and talk about what we mentioned before. We can't stop the flow coming in. We have no room to expand, at least at that facility there, and we have to continue to operate that plant where it's at. We would also need to build a new lift station that would pump the sewage from River Road back to the Hollywood plant as part of that overall master plan. Remodeling constraints that we've discussed, and we talked about early in the presentation about how we've gone through every, I think we've, I really feel like we've uncovered every stone that we could think of when it comes to what can we do and what can we not do. Can you expand the plant? The answer is probably yes, but you're only going to meet the needs of today. And the needs of today are, it's full. So you have to start thinking how we can get past that. We have no capacity to take the plant down. Even after capacity upgrades, there'd still be structures and equipment that have reached their end of life service. Again, some of these things have been in there for many, many, many years and have not been upgraded. A remodel of the existing facility infrastructure doesn't expand to meet the current needs for growth or future growth. Rebuilding with expansion would not have the same life expectancy as a new facility would. So again, as I mentioned, we've really evaluated every need that there is. I want to talk about this as well because that's a, that's a picture of the 100-year floodplain. You see the outline in green there? That is where our Hollywood wastewater treatment facility is located. If we continue with that model there, we're still going to be in a floodplain. We're still going to have future permit violations. We're still going to be permitting additional expansions would be really challenging in that environment we have there. The 23 rain was a 500-year rain. That's the 100-year floodplain boundary right there. So key considerations for a new Hollywood wastewater treatment facility, we already own enough property around that. If you go back and look at that previous slide, all that green area to the top left there, we own all of that, every bit of that. We already own enough property to comfortably build a treatment facility beyond 50-year needs. No additional acquisition of property which streamlines our process. Existing TCEQ discharge locations can receive additional flow from the new wastewater treatment facility. In other words, where we discharge now, we can discharge in the future even with a new facility. Existing treatment facility can remain in operation while the new facility is being constructed, which allows us to continue to take waste, which is very important. And it's really something that's, there's no way around that. We have to be able to do that. Our engineering recommendation is to build a new Hollywood Road 2 with capacity to meet both the current and the future needs. There's a lot of numbers that have floated around about that, how many MGD that needs to be. That will not come out until we finish with our PER and also when once we get into the scope of work of what we're doing and more evaluations that are ongoing right now before we can actually say to hit that 25-year mark, this is the MGD we need to be at. We have a pretty good idea of what we need to be at. But again, until we really do more work, we're not going to have a totally 100% solid number on that. River Road wastewater treatment facility, as I mentioned earlier, would have to remain in service. Our collection system solutions would include new pipelines, River Road lift station, various lift station upgrades as well in order to serve the growing community. These are just the minimum infrastructure things that would have to occur over the next five years. We hope that we can get a little bit more life out of River Road so that we can extend out the time that it would take to build those new pipelines. This is a map that shows you kind of what that would look like. And just focus on the right, that red big arcing line that goes all the way from River Road to the Hollywood Road 2. That would have to be a part of all of this that would take place as well with separate pricing associated with that. So when we get into preliminary cost estimates, these are the things everybody wants to know. And again, I'll caution you, there have been a lot of numbers that have been floating around. We still don't know the exact numbers for these, and there's no way we can give you one of those today. All we can give you is our best estimate at this point in time. I know these are sticker shock numbers, but we want to be transparent about what we've been, what we've been working on and what we're doing. So combined facilities and infrastructure estimates look like this. The new wastewater treatment facility estimate, these are estimates, they could be lower, they could be higher. 1.5 billion to $2 billion range, that would just be for the treatment facility itself. Infrastructure with around 500 million to the billion dollar range as well for a total project of $2 billion to $3 billion. And again, estimates only, we're not going to know until we get 30% of our OPC, or 30% of our design done to be able to get an opinion of probable costs. We know at this point in time, we do not have a set of, we do not have an engineer on board to start designing this. That's one of the next steps that we're going to be taking soon. So the next step's going to be to create a database of assets out at River Road. This is on your agenda. This is actually on the non-consent agenda for action today, where we can go evaluate River Road and all the assets that are there, analyze the useful life, and give it a risk score, and determine functionality and capacity of that facility so that we can recommend rehabilitation projects to keep it in operation until Hollywood is built. With that in mind, we think that we are comfortable with a five-year number, that it'll last five years for construction. We're hoping that that number will be even bigger than that and greater than that. Now, we'll wait and see when the assessment's done. That's on your agenda for approval today. Another item that's on your agenda for approval today in non-consent is the environmental site assessment for funding opportunities. This would be for that land that we own just northwest of where Hollywood is at now. This has to be done on any project that you do where you're requiring, requiring any funding. You have to come in and do a site reconnaissance, environmental hazards. You have to find out if there's not an old burial ground there or something like that. Stormwater flow path analysis. You have to coordinate with the Texas Historical Commission and the archaeological site survey that has to occur. As with any major project like this, you're going to have to do this when you're seeking funding. So that's on your agenda today. Where are we at now? We're at the plant size and phasing recommendations right now. That's what we're talking about today. Next will be design, opinion of probable costs, the C Mar, TCEQ permitting. And I will mention too, that in order for us to stay on track with this, TCEQ would have to review a permit. It's about an 18-month process. We have to have that submitted in order to meet our timelines by August. So we're going to be working diligently to start getting the permitting done. You remember the 90% rule? We know that we're past the 75. We're on the way to 90. That's part of that process that we have to get into the hands of TCEQ. So we do have a sense of urgency about that one. And then, of course, update expectations. Just know that today is a high-level overview of this. We want to put it into your hands a little bit. We, we will be coming back with multiple updates on this. We will be able to get into the weeds with you. We will be able to talk about design. We'll be able to talk about value engineering. We'll be able to talk about all the things that are, are topics that we generally would like to discuss with the council. We're just not there yet. But we wanted to get something in front of you today as requested. Funding sources that we're looking at right now are multiple. We're looking at every avenue that we can think of to help Laura and the team come up with ways. We have our grant team looking at this. We have our consultants looking at this. We're looking at the WIFIA grant, or WIFIA financing that you see on the left. We're working with the Texas Water Development Board. We're looking at Federal Emergency Management Agency grants as well as low-interest loans. We're looking at Water Resource Development Act, Bureau of Reclamation, and local funding, of course, which will include rate studies and bonds that we could issue. And Mr. Path and I were having a discussion the other day about this slide, and basically what it's going to come down to at some point in time is what's the best interest rate? Is it a bond? Is it this? Is it that? Granted, it's a combination of all. But we're going to not leave a stone unturned in this process as well. The interesting piece of this is that where we're at now in the process, and y'all are on a two-year term, we don't know if we're going to be actually looking at this council actually voting on the construction contract for this. That's how far out we are on this and getting that done. But these will be things that you will be instrumental in when we start looking at the funding sources because we have to have those in place. So our next step, as I mentioned your agenda, the two things that are in there, the environmental assessment and the River Road assessment. We're looking at trying to get an engineering contract in place. We will be discussing that with you during the budget cycle that's just around the corner. Our funding applications, that was a slide I just showed you. We need to get those in place in the 2526 budget cycle. We need to get our construction manager at risk on board during the 2627 budget cycle. Then construction, the goal is to break ground in 2027. But if you think about where we're at now, we're probably talking about post June or July of 2027. That's why I mentioned that about the two-year term. So we're hoping that we can get as much of this done as possible. We'd love to break ground before then. It's just going to be a mighty process to get there. So I know that's a lot of data. We have a lot of experts that are here today. I'm not the one that can answer all these questions, but we bring up my favorite slide, and that is the slide where we talk about questions. I'm sure you have some that you would like to ask of us, and we can bring up any of our experts that we need to bring up.
Has technology changed in how we treat wastewater, or is the, is it kind of the same that we've always?
No, it has changed a lot over the years, absolutely.
Okay. And then, will the new facility, I guess you said currently, we can't go in and shut down to service our current?
Correct.
So will the new facility be set up to be serviced, or?
The new facility would be built while we were still operating the old facility, the Hollywood plant. So during construction, we would have to continue operating it. Is that answering your question? Is that going in the right direction?
Well, the new facility have that same issue where we can't get into?
Oh, well, no. I think we would design that for future growth. At some point in time, you could have that. But yeah, we have trains you can take out, or trains you can add to it. I mean, it's going to be built, like the footprint for now, when we were building that back in 65, it had room for expansion. It had the ability to do that as we were growing. We've reached a point now where we really can't being at the 75%. But the new facility, yes, would be at the 75%. But the new facility, yes, would be able to be expanded on if growth was more than what we predicted to be. Does that answer?
Yeah. And then I guess we're setting this up for the potential to have expansion X number of years down the road?
We would be designing this for 25 years to get us through the next 25 years.
And then, then it could be easily expanded?
Yes, yes, sir.
Instead of having to be replaced?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And then, when you look at the Hollywood Road wastewater treatment plant, and we were adding things over the years, was that, was that technology-related? New things that came up, or what caused the change, I guess?
It was to treat the amount of inflow that's coming into the plant. So you had the additional trains to take on more inflow into those facilities. I'll give you a good example of, we talked about not being able to shut the plant down. The renovation that I went through, and I know Mr. Path went through one as well when he was in Paris, we actually were designed for bigger than what our intake was into the plant. So we were able to shut down certain trains while we were able to rehab those, rebuild them, then shut the other trains down, rehab and rebuild those because we had the capacity to do that. We don't have the capacity to do that at Hollywood.
And if you do not meet deadlines, what's, what's the consequences? Fines, I'm guessing?
Sure. I mean, once we get to, you know, the 75% rule and the 90% rule are put in to satisfy TCQ, our permit with TCQ, they work with you as long as you are following those steps. Like I said, with 75%, we need to start working on the engineering. We're already doing that. So TCQ is going to be on board with our processes as we move forward. But they'll, they'll come a certain point in time, if we say, no, we're done. I think we're not going to do anything else, that they would have to start, they would have to start enforcement.
I'm just thinking about the River Road. So that gets, we put a lift station in there at River Road?
River Road would become a lift station at some point in time.
It would become the lift station?
Yeah, it would be converted into a large lift station that would bring everything back to Hollywood.
And then, so it doesn't get disconnected? It just brings everything into Hollywood?
It doesn't because still, all the flow of everything that goes to River Road's still got to go to River Road. And we've got a way to, we have to get a way to treat it. And we're landlocked at River Road as well. Though there's really no room there to expand that facility.
And one other thing for city manager, you've been through this before in Paris, correct?
Correct. Yeah, we built the plant in Paris, yes.
So what about from your perspective? I mean, you've done this before. What are you, what are you looking at? What are you seeing? What are your, your thoughts on, after doing it before, what we need to keep in mind here?
Well, I think, I think what Donnie's talked about, he's done an excellent job tonight, him and his team tonight putting this presentation together. Very proud of this. And so I think right now, we are very early in the process. We, like as Donnie said, we've not even started the design yet. And so part of this process, obviously, we're going to be working with engineers to determine what, what do they recommend, and what can we afford, what makes sense? Is it, is it 25 years, 30 years? Those aspects have come into that play. Another big part of this is we're doing a rate study. And so that's going to be the big piece that citizens are going to be concerned about. Citizens, they, when they flush their toilet, when they wash their hands, the water goes away, and that's all they're really concerned about besides the bill. And so that'll be the big part for, for the future councils. I think in November, we're planning on having the rate study back roughly then. So we'll be, need to be looking at, how do we start phasing that in? Because whether it's a bond, low-interest loan, there's not, there's not really any free money out there. So we're looking at either bonds or low-interest loans. That all equates, that all equates to debt. And so we'll be looking at, how do we start preparing our citizens, our ratepayers for those increases? And in Paris, we did it through a number of, about six years worth of phasing increases. Every six months or so, we would increase the rate incrementally to get ourselves activated to the final, final payment amount. Another big piece of this too, we'll be looking at, how do we phase this project? Going back to the bond regulations on how you have to have so much money spent within so many years. In Paris, we, we had too big of a project to spend the money, money fast enough. So we had to phase the project in two phases. Otherwise, we would have run, run across regulatory requirements for bonding on not getting enough money spent fast enough. So we phased that project. So we're looking at that here is, are we looking at multiple phases in order to account for our bonding, or we're looking at multiple bonds with that? And so, so those are all pieces we'll be looking at in the next couple of years with this. And again, we're still, we're still early on this thing. We're still, this is the idea so far. We're still learning about how many clarifiers and how many basins and everything we need to do. And so a lot can change. But we wanted to get this in front of the council. I know the citizens have been talking a lot about this. So we wanted to educate you all where we're at. Since we are spending money on this process right now, we wanted you all to know where we're at, that we are working on this, and we are moving forward to get this thing done.
And I want to add to that just a second. With the CMAR contract, that's one of the things we've already been discussing is it allows you to phase the project. I mean, we can, in other words, while we're still in design, we could be at 60%. But we have, we know what we got to do for clearing and grubbing and earthwork and trenching and things like that. We can go ahead and phase that piece of the project and let it and go while we're still working on other pieces of the project, which will be critical moving forward in this one.
And part of the process, we will get to the point where, where, like I said earlier, the engineers will give us the recommendation. We'll have to sit down and decide, can we afford that or not? And then what pieces, what pieces are nice to have versus required to have? And so we did that in Paris. We had to identify, because we reached a point where we couldn't go any further in our funding. So we had to reach a point to where we had to decide, okay, we can do without that for the next 15, 20 years, and then add that in later. So that's going to be a big component, probably in a couple of years, I guess, is identifying how much is too much, how much is nice to have, or can we go all in and get it all done now?
And then what I'm hearing is sooner rather than later, we're going to start stair stepping the racing rate increase because we have to start paying for it now, even though it's several years down the road of being built if we're going to have the capability to build it.
We'll see. So the consultant we're using is the one I used in Paris, and so they will guide us on that process. And this, this is what I did in Paris. We might do some different here. But I do, I do, it's going to, I do feel that we'll have to be looking at stair stepping our way in. But again, depends on timing because we have to be able to make our first debt payment as well. So that will also determine how slow or how fast I go to that stair step. Because when that first debt payment is due, I have to be able to pay that payment. So we have to raise enough money to get to that payment there before that point.
Thank you.
So, Donnie, great job on the presentation. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
You know, when you bring the other presentation back, if you can include the slide that says, hey, we figured out a way to bring this in 1.5 billion dollars below the projection?
We'll put it in there. It'll be the first slide.
Be a key slide that we'll want to see. Couple of questions. How many MGD was in Paris? What'd you, what'd you build?
I'd be lying. I've, I'm too much Amarillo now, so.
Okay. Do you remember how much it was, or any?
I don't remember now. It's, it's a much smaller plant than what Amarillo is, so.
We saw one that, believe that was built in, and I'm going to probably not get the year right. It was around 2018 or so that was up in the Colorado area. That was 25 MGD. That was 800 million.
Okay.
And that was several years ago.
Okay. Yeah, because, you know, biofuels, like a study or a pro forma, I mean, I think that's all very practical and helpful when you're talking about 200, $250 million, you know, facility. I think when you drop a $2 billion price tag on something, does the biofuel even have any kind of appeal? Is that something we should still be looking at?
I think that, we talked about that in some of our meetings, and this is when it comes to design. I think we would look at all of those options, absolutely, to figure out what we can get, the best bang for our buck. And I think Jeff would probably be the one to speak to that if, if he's willing to. He's, he's kind of an expert on that. But I think when it comes to the design, we would certainly entertain it. I mean, that was what the direction we're going to give him, absolutely.
Yeah. Jeff, if you don't mind, tell us a little bit, just like, what would a pro forma look like on a 20 MGD facility if we were running that? You know, what kind of a percentage offset would you expect?
Great question. Right off the top, I really don't know. Every treatment facility's a little different. Amarillos would be customized just for you guys. There's so many different factors that go into it, regulatory, et cetera. I mean, how would you want to, you know, utilize some of the benefits of a wastewater treatment facility, right? You've got some clean water that currently today you discharge and you sell to Excel. You have some bio solids that currently you dispose of. So I mean, there's multiple opportunities there that's absolutely worth evaluating. You know, what does it translate into the bottom line? That's one of the reasons you'd go through this process.
So if we had some entities, and they, they're not around right now, but I'm sure after this meeting, with hearing some of these numbers, they'll be back, right? For sure. So, you know, they were talking about $150 million. And, and we've done this plant, and it can do this. And, and they were, they were wanting to get maybe in line in front of our existing facility to, you know, and they, they had high promises. You know, I didn't have anybody write us a check, of course. But, you know, they could fund it. You know, they'd meet all the TCQ because there was, there was a potential profit there on the biofuel. Does that, does that ring true with you as the designer, the design professional? Have you seen that around the country, or?
You know, I mean, it's definitely happened in other places. I mean, that'd be up to your staff on how you wanted to evaluate that, and where does that kind of fit into your long-term vision for your treatment facility?
You know, if you were to take the approach of, hey, we're going to go ahead and we're going to build the facility with the future growth component, but maybe not try to pump everything from the north side all the way to the south side, like, could we look at a viable option of allowing a third party to come in, get in front of what we currently have? And, and would that reduce our solids and our ratios enough to where, oh, yeah, this is going to be a 20-year solution?
I don't, I don't know enough about that project. I know what you're talking about, but I didn't see enough of it. But I think that it's not going to change our capacity needs at all. I mean, you're still going to have to build what we have to build regardless of what they're pre-treating in front of it. Does that make sense?
Right. Yeah, I think the pretreatment's a really good way to coin that. I think if there's value in the pretreatment process, you could allow a third party to come in without subjecting your city to a potential loss or a hazard, like where if they fail, now we're, we're responsible. So you would have to maintain your abilities to, to run. It would just prolong it. And, and so you guys look at all of those potentials, right?
Yeah. If you ask us to, I mean, we'll look at whichever options you so choose.
Yeah. I think we, we up here on this side would love for you to look at all options. And then I personally would really appreciate the ability to work with a design professional that has the ability to design as you go based on potential affordability. What's very frustrating is when we design to a 1.5 billion dollar or $2 billion expectation, and then when we get affordability back, let's say we get a rate pay study that says, hey, you guys can really afford $600 million. You know, well, did we, do we have to start over? Do our plans, you know, are they too far beyond to where like, oh, well, we can't really go and work on that? So do we have the ability to build this in layers? Not necessarily phases, but I mean, they would incorporate phases, but in your design process to where we wouldn't lose millions of dollars of your expertise in, in, you know, if we need to move this back to a $600 million deal, what does that look like?
You know, I mean, that's why I fully agree using the CMAR process. We're currently designing a 30 MGD facility right now through that, evaluating many of those same principles. The city wants to know how much it's going to cost. They need a certain capacity. But then you don't want to get over your skis before you get to that point. So that, this process lends itself to that type of evaluation as you go. So there's no wasted time, no wasted cost.
I think the, the approach that we've, we've really focused on is what are the needs? I mean, we're treating 28 million gallons a day right now. That's what we're doing right now if you combine both plants. So that's, that's 16 in the 12, right? We're already at 75. So what do we have to do to meet the current demand that we have, the projects that we have that are wanting to come in now that we can't allow? And also thinking about what that growth component's going to look like and what we need to prepare for the future. That's, that's been the focus, is what MGD gets us there. That's what we're working on now. I know the cost is going to be a big thing, but I'm not sure that we can phase that to just meet the 28 MGD now and be in the same boat we're in, and maybe grow by 5 MGD. But now we've solved a problem for two years, and we're coming back here again saying we still haven't solved the problem. So we're, we're designing for what we think we need to put in your hands. There's still going to be plenty of conversations that take place with that, and he's right. That's the beauty of having the CMR in there to evaluate all of these processes, to evaluate all these costs. We're hoping that it's going to be less than what the estimates are. Again, as I mentioned, the one plant we found in Colorado, done seven years ago, 800, about the same as, I think it was 48 MGD, and it was 800 million.
Okay. Do you have any rule of thumb? Is there any averages?
I, I don't that I want to share with you because every, again, every facility is completely unique. It'd be, I wouldn't be doing a service to, to even give you something like that today.
And I understand the caution in that. And then, like, on the ratepayer study, do we need to get like the full rate pay study back in order to have an idea? Or do we have enough data collected where we could get a preliminary opinion?
So I've been in communication with Nugent Consulting, and they're still, they're still a long way from that. So I, I had asked them for an update a couple of weeks ago, and they, they've got all the data, but it's going to take them a while to sift through this. And so it's, it's going to be a few months before we get some data back.
Okay. Well, we appreciate you guys being here. We like starting the conversation. I think what we would say on this side, and council, you can redirect this if you'd like, for us up here, I mean, we're, we're going to have two years to work alongside of you guys. You guys are going to be critical. We want a great working relationship. And so we want to have a direction that has as many contingency plans as, and potentials as possible. And we don't want to waste a dollar or an hour of your time. And so we never want to have that conversation where we say, yeah, we're not going to be able to use any of those designs unless we pay for 100% of it. And so this is not an all or nothing approach. This is an affordability for a community, and, and we, we have a task, and we will solve it. But we may have to solve it within the budget that we, you know, that we can afford. And I know you guys do this for a living very well. And so we're thankful that we have you guys on the team. Look forward to working with you. And Donnie's an excellent leader, and he'll keep the, the ship going in the right direction. But I think that's our direction today is, is, you know, we've kind of gone from 300 million to a potential of 2 billion. And, and we want to make sure that we keep all potential options and outcomes viable.
And one of the, one of the things we're, we're going to do is we'll come back to you during the budget process, certainly, to start talking about engineering contracts. And we'll have more details to talk about during those, those times as well. One of the things we're cautioning staff on moving forward is, I mean, I heard the presentation where the 300 million was given, and it was really not based on a lot of factual data. We're trying to be really cautious about throwing those numbers out because we just don't know. Trying to be better at that, even with the drainage presentation I gave you, really cautious about preliminary estimates because we don't want to feel like we're misleading you or the public when we're giving you those numbers. And we want to make sure they're as accurate as we can, we can get them to you. So, well, there'll be plenty more discussions. The next one will be coming up during the budget process.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Appreciate you guys. Thanks for staying. Everybody okay to go through the rest of the discussion? Anybody need a break? You need a break? We're going to take a quick one. 10 minutes. We'll come right back. We're going to catch third-party posting, and then we'll do non-consent. We're going to catch third-party posting and then we'll do non-consent. All right. We said it'd be a short one. So it's going to be a really short one. Man, I can get everybody going. So if I can get everybody to head back to your seat, please, we're going to go ahead and get ourselves moving again. We still got lots of work in front of us. All right, I appreciate you guys. I know you're hanging there with us at 7:30 and surely by midnight or so, we'll be out of here. We're going to work on being efficient on these agendas and still trying to get to everything staff needs. So I love the hard work that we're all pushing for and this is what it takes. But eventually it'll get a little bit more streamlined. We've got everybody back. Call ourselves back into order, into session. Item 9D is third-party inspections. Do I have Chief Shoals or?
Going to be me. Again, y'all get stuck with me one more time and then I'll be done. The good news about this program is it's not going to cost you a dime. Are we done? Any questions? Yeah.
So moved. Let me get a second and we'll go home.
This item is referencing a policy that we have developed in building safety and, and Mr. Shoal is here as well. To address some items for, for builders, contractors utilizing third-party inspections. Should there be a time that they need that? If we're unable to get to inspections in the building safety department within a reasonable amount of time. I will say, starting the presentation, I'm very proud of what we do over there. We generally hit our inspections within 48 hours. I was telling mayor in a, in a conversation we had a few weeks ago that in California, they actually went to the legislators there, the builders associations did, and said, hey, we need change. It's taken 60 days to get our permits issued or get our inspections done. If we could just get it cut down to 30, we would at least be profitable. Well, we're usually doing ours in 48 hours for most of those. They did a really, really good job over in, in building safety. The purpose of a third-party inspection policy, and this is an internal policy that we have modeled after some policies that we've looked at across the United States that have these in place, some of those in the Dallas Metroplex as well. Where we can establish guidelines for the use of third-party inspections. We can support timely inspections when staff is unavailable to get there and do that or workload prevents it. There could be some other things that prevent an inspection from occurring as well. Sometimes it'd be delayed because of weather. Sometimes a concrete truck won't be, only time they can be there for the contractors at 5:00 AM. We obviously don't have inspectors out at 5:00 AM. That would be another scenario where these would be possible as well. But ensures that qualified, and that's the key word, independent inspectors would uphold code standards that have been pre-qualified by the building official to ensure our communication awareness of the project needs and tensions are understood before the project begins even. And the intent of the program, it's very important to know that it's not to circumvent what we do in building safety. That's not the reason for this at all. We're still going to exist. We're still going to do our inspections. We're still going to be the ones that are handling all this. It's not to replace that. It's to give an option when we can't perform and we can't do it. I would give you an example of that during the building boom that took place a few years ago. There were some times that we were out three or four days on an inspection because we got a little bit behind. Or even during COVID, there were some challenges with that. We've done really well since then. So when are TPA, TPIs allowed? Only when prior approved by the building official and prior to the issuance of a permit. There are some unique circumstances, I mentioned, where there could be a scheduling conflict or something like that, where the building safety is unable to perform an inspection, that we would allow that to happen. But a TPI is not to replace our city inspections. Prior authorization has to be granted before the project begins. I'll explain that just briefly. You're going to come in with a set of plans. You're going to look to get your permit. You need to tell the building official at that point in time, I am planning to use third-party inspectors if necessary. Here is the list. Here's all of my qualified people. Here's all their certifications. Start doing your vetting process now because I want to use them if we run into a jam on this. And I think it would be smart, once we have this policy in place, for builders to do that because that way you've taken care of it ahead of time. We're not looking for them to come in at the last hour and say, hey, we forgot to do this and forgot to do that. So we're going to use a third-party inspection for the, for the inspections the rest of the afternoon. That won't work. Still needs to go through the process at the beginning so that Johnny can have a chance to make sure that they're qualified and they can do the inspections. It's not to replace quality assurance prior to concealment. We will do that at the city. Final building inspections will be done at the city. COs will be done by the city. Any follow-up or required inspections will be done by the city as well. All the third-party inspections again have to be pre-approved exclusively by the building official before they can happen. Qualifications for a third-party inspector, pretty easy. Texas Division, Department of Licensing Regulation, International Code Council certifications as well. They're not difficult to get if you're in the trade and you can take the time and spend the time to do it. Or you could be a Texas licensed engineer. You could be a Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiner's Plumbing Inspector, have a plumbing inspector's license. And I might mention too, you can't hold both. You can't be a licensed plumber and be a licensed plumbing inspector. You can do one or the other. And that's an integrity issue the plumbing board addressed many, many, many years ago. I had a building official that worked for me years past that was a master plumber, had to give up his license to become a plumbing inspector. He could still go back and get it back, but he had to do that to be an inspector. Minimum of five years inspection experience in a specific trade. And you have to be able to demonstrate too, to the building official that you know the city codes. And we're not going to allow anybody just to come in there and say, hey, I'd like to give this a try. It, it's going to go through a process. They must be independent from any stakeholders, corporations, partnerships, owners associated with the project. Can't be anyone who's benefiting financially from the project. And even in a, a meeting we have with the mayor talking about this ahead of time, getting his ear and, and ideas and things. He said, yeah, we got to make sure that that doesn't happen so that you don't have someone doing their own inspections. Making sure that they didn't create a subsidiary of their LLC that can now come do their inspections for their LLC. This takes care of that. It's in the policy as well. We need to make sure that they're independent, have insurance as well, million dollars liability of errors and omissions. That's E and O insurance. City has to be listed as an additional insured and inspectors must sign an affidavit of independence as well and they've got to be bonded. Proof of all the requirements listed above must be submitted prior to the issuance of a permit for them. And then scheduling and conducting third-party inspections has to be done through the city software that we use now. All the builders are used to using that. Pre-permit meeting is required where you meet with the building official and building safety staff to talk about their, your, your request to be using third-party inspectors. No, no TPIs allowed if city can expect, inspect within two working days without prior approval from the building official. We wanted to put that in there at the last sentence because as I mentioned, you may have a big concrete job and that concrete truck has to be there at 5:00 in the morning because it's going to be 107 degrees that day. And they want to get that work done early. We would then allow, if they were on the list, pre-approved, then Johnny could say, yeah, you can go ahead and do that. Send us the reports when you get finished with that job. The reporting itself is pretty self-explanatory. We'd have to review all those within five days. Then inspector has a little bit of risk involved with that because if they continue with the project without our review, then it's going to hold them up. If we have to go back in and take some walls out or something like that to look at electrical or something that they showed us, but, but covered it up without us seeing, if we had a question about it. And again, I, I put this in here several times, pre-parting, pre-permitting meeting is not, if it's not scheduled, you're not going to be able to use TPIs. So that's pretty much it in a nutshell. What we're going to do next, and we wanted to present this policy to you, we'll be meeting with the builders association, presenting that as well to them. And we'll get any feedback that they may have as well. So we'll take questions if you've got them.
Questions, counsel? Okay, so I know I've been trying to steer on this one a little bit. And then, you know, Chief Shoals is in the back so he can tell you all the things that I've been doing wrong out there. We, we did.
You want me to bring him up?
No, let's not yet. So we, we did kind of a, you know, an informal pilot where I, we just said, on this one, I want to try to, let's use the engineer, have him come over, see if he's willing to do it and then, and we've learned. So, you know, at one point I had the engineer draw the stamp and stamp the design that I was trying to have that engineer come out and look at, you know, like, so that's not good. I mean, I don't think you should inspect your own designs. As that engineer, you're being financially compensated. To do the design, you need an independent third-party. So you and I are really getting down the road a little ways now. When we were three, four days behind or, or out on schedules just because we were that busy, I think this was, was a greater need. Now you guys have improved the customer service and the responsiveness of the building safety department greatly. And so I think we have less need for this. When you go talk to the builders association, I think they may be like, yeah, sounds good. But I mean, right now I'm getting what I need. I just call Johnny or I call over there, I'll talk to Brad or whoever. So, you know, our, my, my building community tends to be loud complainers when, when we, when we need something. But then, you know, we, we always take on more than we can handle and we're, we're going too fast. And so if, if there's not a paper we don't have to read or not something else we've, we don't have to invest in, we don't. So you may not get like a, a big demand right now. However, if we put something like this on the books and we build it and construct it and we, we get familiar with it, then when the need does come up, we're, we're more able, maybe when we are doing AI or, or, you know, digital inspections, you know, which we, we, you may see one day. I don't know. But here's a few things I'd like to tweak if, if you're willing to. And if not, then, you know, counsel can redirect it and, and good enough is, is good enough. But what I was hearing was a couple of things, a really good rigid structure of, you know, come and tell us who you're going to use, put them as your list of preferred inspectors. Let's make sure they're licensed, bonded, insured, and that we all know what we're doing so that when we get out in the field, we don't, we don't end up with somebody that nobody knows that said it's fine and you've covered it up and we're telling you, you got to tear it out. So to avoid all of that massive miscommunication, I like your structure and I like your guidelines. The one thing that you are saying though is, is if we can't perform, so if the COA cannot perform, then you get to use this. Well, what I, what I did hear in there was, you know, there's an urgency mechanism on, on behalf of the contractor. So contractor makes a mistake. They thought that the superintendent requested the inspection. He said he put it in, but he never hid it. Something happened on his device. You, you know, the, the list is long in why the inspection didn't get called in. But it's 4:00 in the afternoon. Pump truck is coming at 5:00 AM, 20 guys standing around. So they make the phone call to Johnny. Johnny, can you send somebody over here to inspect this? I'm sorry, I can't. You know, hey, then can I get engineer out here or let's say Robert Downey or whoever at that point, they'll, they'll come look at it. And I'll pay my own inspection to get that so that I can, you know, continue. That's not a lack of the city's ability to perform. That's a lack of the contractor in his ability to schedule appropriately, right? And we do this. So in that customer service mechanism, can we change the language to where as long as the chief is allowing it, he still has the latitude to allow it? It requires that phone call, but you know, if you are going to cover something up, better to get it inspected, photoed, stamped, and then have to explain to your inspector the next morning, hey, I called, I asked, I couldn't get you, so we, we moved forward. But I did everything exactly like your third-party inspection wanted. It's much less confrontational, I'd say, and combative out there in the field than, than the city feeling like, well, you just blew through my inspection and you didn't honor our, our authority. So what could you do for us on the building community side of giving us a little bit more? I'd say just the ability without, because why go through all this? Why, why put all this on and go make these relationships if the only time I'm ever going to get to use it is when you can't get there? Like, what about when it's my fault? And I, I just wanted to call the third-party engineer to come and look at it.
Yeah, so I think we've covered that already a couple of ways. First of all, the code does allow the building official to make the final decision on anything code-related. So I think we could go back and look at that language and see what that is. And, you know, I, I think, I think on Johnny's part, and we were talking about this, I'm speaking for him. But I think his concern would be if it continually just happens over and over where it's not an accident anymore. It's not a, it's not something, it's just continually this person doesn't pull their permits, they don't do it correctly. They, and then they all at the last minute call Johnny and say, well, we need to use an engineer on this. That would become frustrating for him and he would have the latitude to be able to say, no, I'm not going to accept a third-party inspection of that. However, if there's a situation that's just because of circumstances or because, yeah, you forgot, but we've got a $10,000 pour that's happening in five hours, that he would take that into consideration if it was someone that was, you know, working with them on a regular basis and they had a good relationship. We want to provide, this whole thing is to provide better customer service. That's what it's there for anyway. So I think if we take that approach, I think we're going to solve that issue. So I think if we take that approach, I think we're going to solve that issue ahead of time.
Okay. So one other quick question, and I don't know if this would be the format or not, but, you know, we have our construction advisory and appeals commission. But, but that is set up in a way that's almost like a, almost like a zoning, you know, board of adjustment type thing where, man, we are just seeing things differently. We've walked this thing out for months and finally I've got to take it to these guys that are in the industry to help me get through, you know, the disagreement. And it's kind of an umpire type thing. Does this third-party inspection allow for like a third-party appeal? And, and this would be a really good thing. So if I've got a city inspector that he would like to have something done and I, my engineer's saying, I don't need it, and, and the engineer is really the authority, you know, he's got his stamp on it and he's the expert. We are also the, the authority having jurisdiction, but not, not the one liable if, if the engineer says it's okay. Do we have like, can we put a third-party appeal in this? Do we already have something like that where it just speaks to the education that goes to the community now where, you know, anytime we've, we've got an issue here, you can use the umpire. These guys are licensed, bonded, insured. We allow them to do inspections. So if you think we're wrong, like ask one of them. And because we do get into discrepancies out there, usually it's in like a plan change or something like that where, right now it's really good with Chief Shoals. But I don't know that he's going to be here 20 years from now and I would love to have something that's policy that we left behind where, you know, if you don't have a responsive chief, do I have a third-party appeal where, hey, I just went to appeal it and that's why we covered it up? Now you still have the CO mechanism, so I better not be wrong, right? But then if it was a technicality of, well, your plans didn't show the door swinging in, it shows it swinging out, so you're not able to sheet rock those walls and I'm just having to get a red line put up, do I have the ability to appeal to that third-party if we had a discrepancy of that door's not allowed to swing out? Well, my engineer says it is, you know, and so like my boss is telling me to do it, the city is telling me not to do it. Who, who do I listen to if I'm the contractor? And that does happen from time to time.
Yeah, that's, that's a pretty large hypothetical. There was a lot of different components moving around there. I think that we have that covered. Shake your head, yes or no, Johnny? Covered already with the CAC process regardless of whether it's a third-party or not. But if we want to reinforce that with language in this policy, we can do it.
Okay. I really appreciate you taking this to the building community and seeing what they can do and what they, you know, where their comfort lies. And then I think it is a little bit of planning for the future, you know, when, when you, maybe you hit that massive building boom.
We hope that's what's going to happen and we've talked about that. We hope that we get back in the situation we were in before where we're, we either need more inspectors or we just need more time. That would be great.
Okay. Any other questions, guys? Y'all good? Okay. These guys, they're, they're on it. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Nine E. Ms. Laura Storrs, check registers.
Good evening, mayor and council. Just wanted to bring a quick update on an item that was brought up, I believe at the last city council meeting. And so we're going to go through a couple of options that we've researched. First off, I did want to state that this is something that is an important part of the Texas Comptroller's Transparency Stars program, and it's something that our finance team has researched for several years. And we're not able to participate in the program for various reasons and then kind of got support from our city manager to pursue that program. However, we went through a financial software change and went live on January 1st of this year. So this is really good timing because we have a brand-new financial system and it produced different reports than what our old ones did. So we have two options here to kind of meet the request that was asked to put the city payments out on the city's website. So we do have a check register. So I listed some pros and cons here. First off, it's a very easy to produce report. There's not a whole lot in it that is confidential, so there's not much redacting that we would have to do and it's a very quick turnaround. So as soon as we got a bank statement reconciled, we could produce it and get it posted online. Now, the con on that is it does not include our wire transfers. That is a manual process that we do through the bank and then we book through a journal entry. So it does not flow through our check register. So we also have another report that we can produce straight off of all of our bank accounts and it's a general ledger report. And the pros on it is it includes all forms of payments, including your checks, your ACHs and your wire transfers. It's a very easy to produce report. The cons on it is it's just slightly slower to produce and we do have to do more redacting on that for any kind of confidential information that's out there. So I've discussed with the financial team on kind of their recommendation for a process like this, and they are wanting to put a policy in place. And, and I'll just quickly read this. So meaningful transparency leads to greater accountability. Emerald citizens work hard to earn every tax dollar they send to the local government in an effort to ensure open and honest communication with the public. The city will publish information about how and where those dollars are spent. The bank account ledgers for all operating bank accounts with expenditures will be posted after a full reconciliation of the bank account has been performed on a monthly basis. The city will redact any confidential information and will remove deposits. So here's an example of what the report would look like that we could produce. And so the city does have a handful of bank accounts and we would anticipate focusing on our main one, getting that turned around and following up with all of the other city bank accounts, just bank accounts, not necessarily investment accounts at this point in time, but to get the payments out there because this is where we're actively paying our vendors from. So with that, I will see if there's any questions from council. As I mentioned, we just went live with this new software and I think this is going to give us a little bit more ability to produce these reports in a timely fashion. And so this is something that we could look at turning around probably within the next couple of months. And then on down the road, we would look at pursuing the Texas Comptroller's Transparency Star program for financial reporting that's going to take a few more steps and you have to go back quite a ways. So we could certainly bring more information about that at a future meeting. Questions on this?
Counsel?
Laura, the only, my only concern would be like on the redaction of confidential information, is that going through a process? I mean, that would be my concern is, oops, we didn't redact that and we-
Yes.
-let some information out.
Yeah, and it would be a similar process to what we do anytime we get a public information request. So, and as I mentioned, going back to the cons on the one statement, or I'm sorry, on the general ledger report is, it is going to be slower to produce it because we are going to have to have a few set of eyes on it to make sure that we're redacting any kind of confidential information on there.
So is staff leaning more towards the check register? I mean, obviously we want, we need to do this.
Yes. Oh, I mean, I think staff is fine with doing the general, general ledger report, knowing that it would have all the information, but there is always, there's more risk with it, I guess. So yes, I mean, if, if council was good, certainly the check register would be a quick, easy thing to put out there, just knowing that any kind of wire transfers that we do would not be showing up because it doesn't run through that part of the financial system. It would have all the checks and the ACHs going through it as well, though.
But the general ledger would be more transparent?
It would have every payment out, so every form of payment going out. Yes, sir.
You said originally that it would slightly be longer to get the general ledger report. You didn't, so-
Well, it would take time to redact it and to review it.
It would take time, but-
Yes, sir.
-we would have every bit of information.
Yes, sir.
And I think the citizens deserve to see where their money is being spent completely. And I mean, if it takes an extra little bit, I think it's worth it personally.
What is it that, why is there more to be redacted in the general ledger versus the check register?
It's just the way the report is produced. There's more data in it and there can, there's potentially more identifying information. There was some reports that we pulled and there were like employee numbers, I'm sorry, like employee ID numbers on it. Well, that's confidential information, so we would have to redact something on that. So in the general ledger report, there's just more expansive information that's captured through that than just a regular check register.
And so, I mean, is it 1% of the transa, I mean, how many transactions would there be to have redacted?
I, it, well, it would vary from month to month.
Is it 10s, is it 20s, is it 100s, or do you know?
I don't know. Off, we could certainly pull a month's worth and we could do a sample and see, but that definitely could change by the next month.
Yeah. And are the redactions pretty consistent in, in the same expense or would it, could that information vary each month?
It could vary each month, but I think we will start really seeing patterns. You'll, you'll see very similar information being repeated, that we would certainly continue to evolve our internal procedures to be identifying that very quickly. But again, Stephanie might could even weigh in a little bit on this because we, we produce this information for public information requests right now. And we do have a process where it takes multiple sets of people kind of looking through for redacted information. Stephanie, if you want to expand.
Yes, it's just, it's a very manual process anytime we have to redact information. And so on something like that, Councilmember Simpson, we'd have one person go through and redact it and then another person go through and put another set of eyes on it to ensure that nothing was missed. So it's just, it's a manual process that can take some time.
Few questions. I see your hand up, sir. Now that we are at a much smaller audience, we may, we may have an open discussion. Ms. Storrs, why no deposits? Is it just because we didn't ask for them or do we, do we, should we go ahead and show revenues as well or?
It's, I think deposits are very challenging because we have a lot of departments that group their deposits together and then it reports and we don't have any kind of detail on that. So just, it's a very generic number that's on there.
Okay. Let me come back to that one. Like a monthly delay, what would be an expected kind of delay? So if, if it was, you know, February, am I seeing December or am I seeing January?
I would say you're probably seeing December.
So you think it's a full month delay probably?
Yes, at least.
Okay. And then what is redacted as an example?
So if there were bank account numbers in it, we would have to redact that information, any kind of financial institution information. If there was a personal identifying number, we would have to redact that.
Okay. And so like on the check registry, if I'm doing business with the city and they're paying me, I should never expect for that not to be publicated, right? So like, that, that wouldn't have my account number on it, but it would if it's a wire transfer?
Yes.
Okay, so we would need to go in? Okay.
Yes, we would certainly be wanting to protect those that we're doing business with. That's really what this is, is we are redacting any confidential identifying information on those that we are making payments out to, whether that's a bank account, you know.
If, if we wanted to kind of keep in step with maybe like Potter, Randall County, what's the difference in what you're, you're suggesting maybe from what Potter County already does?
I would have to look specifically at Potter County. If you look at various entities, some do check registers, some have a separate report that they produce that is just for ACHs. Some do a report, like a check register and then one that shows like wire transfers. There's, I've seen several different ways that groups do it. Some just do the check register and, and some don't, some entities don't do a whole lot of wire transfers. We certainly do on the larger items. It's a very secure way to submit money.
So my, my question would be if, if you and, and Mr. Path, if you think this is still time well spent, I mean, we're, you, you're kind of testifying that it's a pretty quick and easy report on the check registry.
Yes.
But then the GL takes a little bit longer. So this, this is work that we're already doing, except for the redaction, I would understand it to be that way.
Yes.
So what if we did a monthly check register report and we do a quarterly general ledger report? That way you'd be able to see both. So we wouldn't necessarily have to go and create a whole new form just to track ACHs. Like I don't want to go create work if you're already putting it on the GL. So just, the general ledger could be quarterly and that would give, you know, some of our citizens are probably going to dig through this and if we make an error, they'll be the first ones to let us know, I'm sure. But with these being reconciled, then we will have already reconciled them and be, you know, attesting that this is not an audited version, but everything that we've ran in-house, then you're going to have your audit company that's still signing off, you know, at the end of the year. Plus, we would have all our little mini auditors out there that are doing their job too. So I think if, if that's something that, Mr. Path, do you think that's something we could do quarterly? Okay. All right, Mr. Fisher. Question?
Well, if you, if you look at Potter County, please, right?
Come on up. Come on up. What's, what's Potter County do?
Well, Potter County, they seem to have a pretty good system. The, the big thing is, is combining the GL with the check registry and that's what Potter County is doing. Because if, if you can have both, you could do totals and see if they match up with the budget. Because if we don't, and if we have two separate reports, so we have general ledger and then we have this check register, then we have to assume where these checks went. But if you have it like Potter County, they have what they, it says vendor, date, and it says wire our check, vendor, date, amount, description, and it has a fund number. I'm not sure what that is, but it must mean like where'd this come from, what checking account, the department and the, and the, the department is a big deal, but we wouldn't have any of that with just a check register. We wouldn't have, wouldn't be able to associate that. If you had a separate general ledger report, you'd have to make a lot of assumptions. And that's what I have to do is make a lot of assumptions. Everybody wants me to stop making assumptions, but you don't want to give me the data. So when I got just the general ledger report for the ADC, it was basically I had to make a lot of assumptions. Even if you gave me the check register with a general ledger, separate general ledger report, I couldn't magically combine those to know exactly where that money was spent or what fund or what budget item that is.
So here in that, Mrs. Storrs, what, what do you think? Is there, is there an easier solution than what I'm proposing?
So in the example about AEDC, all the check register, they only have one checking account. The projects has an account and their operating has an account. So all of it is posted in the general ledger. So as far as what we're proposing to do on the city side is the general ledger would be the general ledger for the bank account. And so by default, everything in the check register would be in the general ledger.
And that's something that would be produced from the bank statement or from the software that we're using, right?
From our financial software. Yes, sir.
What I want to avoid is the, the creation of another document that we're having to go and pull different, you know, things. And then, and then it's just an Excel spreadsheet, which we could have, you know, had an error on or, you know, he would assume that it's not all correct because it's not directly connected to a bank statement somewhere. So, you know, short of just taking the bank statement and uploading it, like, that's really kind of what you're getting at, right? That would be, the preference would just be to see the bank statement?
What'd be good to, I think the more the better, but the general ledger report that I received on the ADC did not show who got money, which individuals got money. So when you go into general ledger report, you're just talking about categories like, and, and, and so we spent this on payroll, we spent this on streets, but who got the money? A general ledger report generally doesn't show, that's why it's called general. It's a general, not a specific ledger, it's a general ledger.
Okay. Can you go back to the, the slide, Ms. Stephanie, that shows the example? Would it look like that, Mrs. Storrs, for the, for the general ledger? You could at least fill in those same categories and, and produce that report on the general ledger?
This is an example of that, of what the general ledger report was.
I think it would be very helpful because I think it does tie to the fund. You already have them coded to the funds. Is that something that could be included as well so you would be able to departmentally see that?
To add the funds to it?
Yeah, I know I, I know, I know what he's talking about because I looked at Potter County's, it does show like 1,500, 1,200, you know, and so depending on if we're not creating a step for, for your staff and it can be produced. So what I'm really asking for is, is not everything that that report can produce, but, but this right here- but, but this right here, along with, um, maybe the source, so that we would at least have some sort of identifying understanding of, you know, that's the normal bill that we pay for sprinkler heads every year out of Parks and Rec versus, we don't know what this is, you know, and, and once again, I think with Mr. Fisher's candidness, he does make a lot of assumptions, and my goal is to limit his assumptions and give him data so that he can, he, he can satisfy himself in, in what he wants to see with his money that we're helping to manage down here at the city.
Yes, and let us do some research on that, because I'll give an example of one, and it's not on here, but, um, we pay, we pay a, we pay monthly electric bills to XL Energy, and we may have one payment for ten thousand dollars, and that may cross multiple funds. And so, um, I'll have to, we'll have to do some research. This could mean making a custom report through the financial software to add that in, but I can certainly do some research and then get back.
Okay. And I think if we can, if we can expand it to the point that you haven't had to create a custom report. So if there are certain things, like an XL bill for, you know, fifty thousand dollars that covered twenty different departments, you're not tying that to a fund, it just wouldn't be listed. But the majority would. So the, the purchase for an inventory out of, you know, Parks and Rec would be something that would be easy to track.
Let me do some research on it, and we will see. Yeah, we'll have the team look into it.
Wha- what would be your expectation on bringing something back to where council could have one more, uh, look at it and to say, that's good enough, and then we move forward? My, my hesitancy would be to give direction, wait a couple months, put something up, and then we all have, uh, kind of the, the moment where like, that's not what we needed, or that caused problems, and we didn't, we didn't foresee that.
So let us do some research, we'll try to bring this back at the next council meeting, if that's reasonable.
Sure.
Um, but it may be, yes, we can produce this, or no, it's going to take a custom report, and then at that point, I guess we could get direction from you all if y'all want to do a custom report through the software.
Okay. Mr. Fisher, you got anything else to add?
Well, I think deposits are pretty important, because to know where the money's being allocated also, and where the money's coming from, like, are we running this entire city on, on water bills? And I think it's important to know the categories that money that's coming in, the deposits, and where they're being assigned are pretty important.
Sure. Um, Mrs. Stores, what do you already do with deposits that can be produced?
I would have to pull an example of a report, but they're going to be coming in through kind of lump sum transactions, and so I know that these reports don't split it out, I think, to the, to the detail that, um, he's asking for. Um, so, I mean, we could, again, look into some sort of a customized report, work with our software vendor, um, if that's something that council would like.
Uh, I think if you were looking at something like that, it would be quarterly that we could look at, and even if you only broke it out to where like, look, I can group all these together under general fund, and then I can keep enterprises separate, but I can't get it broken down further than that, because there are interdepartmental services that are paying each other. And so maybe that's the part of the, the holdup. But I w- I would like if you could come back, and, and council, you redirect if you'd like, but let's, let's ask you to come back, Mrs. Stores, with a, um, quarterly ledger, wha- a look at that, of what that would look like, um, but a monthly check registry, um, up to the point of, uh, an expanded report, but not a custom report.
Okay.
Whatever you can grab without having to customize it.
Okay.
Not, no Excel spreadsheets.
Okay.
Um, and then, uh, a potential look at deposits. Yes, sir.
Would it be easier, could you just, time-wise, next meeting, so maybe we're not here until ten? Um, you could, like, if you put a report together like this right here, could you email it to us individually? And if there's any feedback that we could give you, we could say, hey, could you do this, or hey, could you do that? That way, the next meeting that you bring it, we've got a pretty refined report, and that way, we're not doing this back and forth of like, hey, I would like this, and could you do that, or what? That if you could put something like this together, then us individually could respond to you and say, could it be this, or could you could answer and say, yes, no, it couldn't?
Yes.
Would that, would that be better, more efficient?
Yeah, we could do that.
Use of time?
We, we could certainly do that. As we kind of do some research into this, we could pull some examples of the information that we could capture based on this discussion and get it out to city council for some feedback prior to the meeting.
And I'm just proposing, i- if that would be easier, and maybe
Sure.
More efficient use of time, next meeting that we have maybe a finished product that we've, it makes sense.
Okay. So we'll do a preliminary look at it individually, then we'll bring it back corporately for council and, uh, citizens to see, within month, month and a half, somewhere in there.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Fisher, appreciate it. Thank you, Mrs. Stores. Um, okay, uh, we have successfully completed discussion items. Uh, well, not yet. Nine G, uh, what are my future requested agenda items, council? Anyone have one? Okay. We're going to move on to our non-consent.
Hold, hold on.
Oh, okay.
Um, and I don't know if this is, oh, I'll just ask it. We're, we're in the process of hiring our chief of police, right?
Yes, we are in the process of getting a search firm found, yes.
Right. So, um, are we going to be getting, um, regular type of reports? Because, you know, when we look at consent and advise, it's hard to advise if we don't know where we're going.
Yes.
So I'm just wondering if that's something that we're going to be getting, um, as, as the meetings go on here over the next couple of months.
I think we can do that. Let me get with, when Mr. Freeman's back in the office, let me get with him, and we can put some together for y'all.
All right, thanks. Thank you. Okay. Uh, moving on to non-consent. Item ten A, uh, Mr. Hooper.
Yeah, so without going over all the details of this, this is what we talked about in the presentation. This is the River Road wastewater treatment facility assessment that needs to be done to see what kind of time we have left, uh, with River Road. This will be the same type of assessment we did on the Hollywood Road Plan as well.
Real good. Questions, council, on item ten A? No? Uh, would request a motion on item ten A. I know we had a good presentation earlier.
I make a motion to ex-, uh, to accept, uh, item ten A as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item ten B, um, Mr. Hooper.
Same thing, uh, we talked about during the presentation. This is basically a site assessment for, uh, the, uh, property that we own just northwest of the, uh, existing facility there. Make sure there's no dinosaur bones or environmental issues out there, and we'd be able to build on that.
Okay. Any questions on item ten B? Go ahead.
I make a motion, we accept ten B as stated.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on item ten B. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item ten C, uh, Mr. Kendrick, how you doing tonight, sir?
Good, uh, good, good evening, uh, mayor and council. Um, this was a consideration of a resolution, um, zero five twenty seven twenty five dash four. Um, this is to, um, consider setting the date, time, and place for a public hearing on a proposed annexation of approximately four hundred seventy seven point three six acres of land in sections thirty two, thirty three, thirty six, thirty seven, block nine, BSNF survey, Randall County, Texas, and to also authorize the city manager to execute the agreed service plan. The applicants on this, uh, annexation are Furman Land Surveyors, Inc., for Atterbury Elevators, LLC, and Josh Langham representing Larry Taylor, and this is in the vicinity of Interstate twenty seven and Sundown Lane. Um, essentially, state law requires us to set the time, date, and place for the public hearing on the annexation at this stage, and to also authorize the city manager to sign that service plan that staff and city management have been working on with the applicants for the last handful of months. We've reached a stage where they have agreed to sign that, and, um, state law requires that before we consider the annexation officially at the public hearing, that has to be signed. So that's also what this, uh, resolution does as well. We are proposing the, uh, public hearing to be at your next council meeting on June tenth at three P M. in this chamber, and we have the public notices ready to go. Um, if you approve the resolution tonight, we'll get those sent out and posted tomorrow. And on your screen now is a aerial of the landing question, that it's proposed to contain, um, future commercial properties and also the Kids, Inc., uh, sports park that they've been planning in that area. Uh, we'll get into all those details at the public hearing, and just one additional note, that service plan does not become binding unless you all adopt that, um, annexation ordinance at the public hearing and a second reading. And I'll, uh, take any questions, uh, you all may have.
Questions, council? Okay. Um, not a public hearing, so just setting it, so would request a, uh, motion.
I move to adopt resolution number zero five two seven two five dash four.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Kendrick.
Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Coggins, item ten D, uh, we want to talk about the mo- the mayor pro tempore.
Yes, thank you, mayor. And this is a discussion for council. Um, according to our charter, council may, um, appoint a mayor pro tempore, or a mayor pro tem to act in the mayor's absence. So the mayor is the presiding officer of all meetings, and the mayor pro tem would act in his absence. In your orange folders, you have two draft versions of this resolution. Just for a little bit of history on this one, we've done this two different ways in the past, and I am going to look to Brian to correct me if I say anything wrong. Um, we've, in the past, we've done an annual appointment of mayor pro tem, where you all would choose one person and appoint that individual to serve for a year. That's version A. Version B, this last time in twenty twenty-three, we did a rotational mayor pro tem, where it's set out by your place numbers. So place one would serve for the first six months, place two for the second six months, and so on. And so, um, I would answer any questions you have, or turn it over to you to discuss as the governing body how it, you would like to proceed on this item.
Thank you, Ms. Coggins. Uh, questions on this one for her? Uh, I have a, a couple of questions for you guys. If we, do we want to stay with the six months and go ahead and, and rotate it? Um, or do we want to go to a year? And, and if we did, in consideration of this, we can wait until we have, uh, the conclusion of our runoff, and then, um, we would potentially have two people that have never been the mayor pro, um, or we've got just one, and so like, it would be a consideration of maybe Tim Reed as the mayor pro tem, if you guys didn't want to do that again. Uh, if you wanted to do it again, though, what I would like is, um, to stay with the six-month transition, but I would almost want to try to keep, uh, um, Councilman Simpson, um, in the, the mayor pro tem spot. He's currently serving in that position, and allow him to do the first leg, if you guys are okay with that. That would put you on the last leg. And so it'd give you plenty of time, uh, to not have to go first, uh, and be onboarded and, you know, uh, whatever potential thing can come up. But it doesn't, doesn't have to follow that, we don't have to follow any suit. I'm just thinking out loud, and then, you know, Councilman Tips, you want to be the mayor pro tem again, or do you want to do a one-year with the potential of like you, or, or maybe you wouldn't be a, the mayor pro again?
You just asking me?
I'm just asking you right now.
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm good with either. I'm good with the six-month rotation.
Okay. But you said you were good with either. Hey, he doesn't care where we.
I emphasized the other one.
You're, you're good with being mayor, mayor pro tem for a whole year?
As long as Les doesn't get to go first.
Okay, well, I'm fine with both. Yeah. This is like, they don't, none, none of these guys care where we eat, but we're just not going there, you know? So, um, what do you think?
You know, I, I, I'm fine either way. I would not be probably interested in doing it a whole year. We could, we could go it, back to, uh, the six-month period, and, and either, either I could start again, or maybe, maybe we start at place two for the first six months and work back our way down to three, four, and back to one, but I'm, I'm fine with either, either way.
That'd be strange, starting at two.
Yeah.
Really weird. Well, just in the consideration of like, you're, you're still serving there, and so to give everybody their full time, if we keep you there, uh, you know, it works out equally.
I'm fine, I'm, I'm fine, either way.
That's a whole year. You sure?
Yeah, it is, it is.
Okay.
I just got to find a new batch of pastures, but I'll work on that.
Yeah, that is the, the, so just so you know, when you're the.
That's the funnest thing about.
When you're the mayor pro tem, you're responsible for the invocation.
Yes.
Um, so you're praying every council meeting if you can't get any of your pastor friends to come and lead the prayer. So, uh, any discussion that you guys would want to have, um, in, in doing it for a year and not six months? Everybody good?
Good with it.
Okay. Um, all right, so I would like to, uh, keep, uh, Councilman Simpson in that position for the first leg, and then, um, I would just go the other direction on the waterfall, and that'd put you last, if that's fine. But if we want to redirect that, we could do that later. Um, for right now, I think all we're trying to do is, is at least approve the, the format. So, uh, Mrs. Coggins, what would you need from us?
So the way that your resolution is drafted right now, it goes place one through place four. So if, if someone wanted to make a motion and just motion that, that you accept it amended place four through place one, then we could make that change administratively.
I'll make a motion.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion, we go in six-month increments, starting with place four, going, ending up with place one.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we are on to our last item, I believe? Yes? Um, this is our digital, uh, dignity rights ordinance. Mrs. Green feels like we've put this at the very end of a long meeting, just to make her wait to get to this, but we didn't do that. Uh, it just ended up this way. So, um, Rich, can I hand this over to you, sir?
Yes, sir. Uh, as, as, um, I'll, I'm happy to bat last and be done. Um, I took the, sorry, taking the, the concerned citizen feedback, this, the feedback from council, and getting feedback from Digital Rights House and some other cities, we were able to work with the city manager and city attorney to flesh out the last three pieces, which were the advisory board, the violations, and the whistleblower sections. Uh, as I'm sure you've seen, we took, um, Councilman Simpson's suggestion and added a council member and a council appointee to that board. Now bear in mind, that board will still meet in public on a quarterly basis, so nothing is being done, um, behind closed doors, if you will, so the public will be involved from the start. And then also, on the two items that were brought, brought up, section two point two. Uh, section two point two presently says, the city shall collect only the data necessary to develop, to deliver public services effectively. That's actually a pretty easy fix, like, we could change the language to just say, the city shall only collect personal data for effective delivery of public services. It's the same, it's making the same point, just a little clearer. The whole point of that section is to state, uh, is to ask the question, why are we collecting the data? If the data doesn't help us deliver a service, then why are we collecting it, right? Um, yeah, they call it data minimalization. Section two point six is a little more dicey. Um, what it currently says is, whenever possible, the city shall maintain publicly accessible documentation of all digital systems and initiative that interact with personal data. Uh, we could make a change to that. The point, and the reason it says whenever possible is, for example, you're not going to want me to go document the personal data in the narcotics investigation unit, nor am I going to want to document, document data in such a way that, that exposes us to cybersecurity threat, affects public safety, those kind of things. Um, I could take the, the whenever possible off, but I'll have to add something to the effect of so long as it doesn't compromise cybersecurity, public safety, or put that personal data at risk. And I would turn that back to council for, uh, your, your, uh, feedback on that.
Hey, good, good job, by the way, on this. I know you've really worked, uh, diligently for it. Um, I think originally, it kind of, um, some, I think, felt like it was just kind of a Um, I think originally it kind of, um, some, I think, felt like it was just kind of a pander, you know, going to be a, a soft piece of paper that sat on a shelf. And so we appreciate you, uh, doing this the way you have. Councilman, you want to go first?
Oh, yeah, I was just going to say that whenever possible, I think is going to be needed, uh, just simply for what you said. It's not broad or ambiguous. It, there's a reason it's there.
Right, and that doesn't mean we can't, we can't note that personal data is held in a system. Well, there's just a limit to how far we could document that. And, and I think we can be, we can be detailed in, in explaining, yes, there's data there, but no, we can't share with you how that's stored because of X reason.
Right, and then I would, I would defer to Brian on this to say, you know, legally, which is best, you know, on how to word that properly.
Either way. Would be fine. Um, we can leave it the way it is, uh, because, I mean, you're going to be tied to what state law is going to allow you to release anyway. So, I mean, um, that's why it says what it says. So, um, I'm trying to keep it simple, but we can add that to the backend because it does the same thing.
Yeah, and I don't think there's any issue with changing 2.2.
Other concerns, questions? Okay, um, I, I'm going to agree with Councilman Tips. I think whenever possible is fine. Um, I know we can get into, there's a reason lawyers are always busy. You, you can do this for decades, you know? So like at some point, you just got to say, you can't, you can't limit all risk. You want to minimize it. And we, I think we've done a good job minimizing the, the potentials here. So, um, would, would ask you to make that one change. Uh, I don't remember the chapter and verse of it, but you, you've got it.
Will do.
And then, um, leave the other alone and, and entertain a motion from council on this one.
I move to adopt ordinance number 8198 with the revisions and 2.2 is discussed.
Second.
Motion and a second from place four. Uh, any further discussion on this? All in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion finally passes with a 5-0 vote. We appreciate you working diligently on that. Would ask for.
Motion to adjourn.
There you go, I got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, you're adjourned. Thank you.